To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes, dependent on the number of speakers.
Good evening. Welcome to a regular meeting of the Burbank City Council, Tuesday, March 28, 2023. I would like to invite Rabbi Mark Sobel of Temple Beth Emet of Burbank to lead us in the invocation this evening. Will everyone please stand and then remain standing after for the flag salute?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Burbank City Council, and members of the Burbank community, and those watching us through the use of cyberspace. Master of the Universe, please bring your blessings upon those who call Burbank home, to those who are temporary immigrants to its businesses, services, and wonderful parks, schools, and hospitals. May you, Eternal One, continue to bless us by showing us the beauty of its flora and fauna, but most importantly, its people. Burbank, in the true words of my eldest son Ezra, is so happy days. We need those values. Heavenly Father, please bless the efforts of this council to continue making Burbank a city which others only dream of that being a city that thinks it's a small town. For Burbank bases itself upon your greatest principles, that all people are descendants of Adam and Eve, and that the sanctity of all life. Tonight we are in mourning. We mourn the loss of children again. Heavenly Father, please, before the evening is over, all who are here and all who ever venture into this chamber, let them look at that wonderful mural of Hugo Balin. Let them count how many children are in there, for he saw the truth. Without our children, we are a hollow shell. Please, help us to find a way to save our children. But now, Heavenly Father, I'm here to talk about Burbank. I thank you, O Master of the Universe, for your gifts to Burbank, her excellent schools, her outstanding police force, of which I'm a chaplain, her first-class Hospital St. Joseph's, and her fine houses of worship, which there are more than 50, and your divine intuition, which has helped the leadership of Burbank all these years, to guide the city to service people. We pray to you that it will continue, and I volunteer personally, anytime I'm able to, to help the council and to come before you to speak for it. I know it's been hard to get us, but the mayor knows my phone number from when he was a volunteer for me. Constantly call. If you need me, I'll be there. I'm especially honored, though, tonight, and God works in strange, strange ways, to be giving this invocation, because this is a time of great religiosity. Ramadan, the Muslim holy time of introspection, Passover, the holiday of freedom from physical slavery, and Easter, which commemorates the sacrifice of one for the all others of mankind, all coincide. Each holiday speaks to the responsibility of each of us to our fellows. In the words of the Book of Leviticus, 1918, "You will love your neighbor as you love yourself." The Book of Matthew, 7:12, "Do unto others as you would have others do unto you." And truly, the most dramatic in the Surah 262 of the Quran, "Whether they are the ones who believe in the Arabian Prophet, or they are Jews, Christians, or Sapiens, all who believe in Allah, Elohim in Hebrew, and the last day, and do righteous deeds, their reward is surely secure with their Lord. They should have no fears, nor shall they grieve." These words are the words of those who care for others. But let me be honest, there were those who would classify us by our differences. Heavenly Father, no matter what those people say, these are not true believers in you. I propose to you all, members of this most wonderful, feeling-giving city, that you ignore the hate mongers and instead, for all those you meet, use the words of the Book of Deuteronomy, 6:6-9, "Aim for God," that's true, "but by extension, each of us; for are we not all created in the image of God." In the words, "You will love the Lord your God with all your heart, all your soul, and all your strength of personality, and you will teach this to your children." I promise you, my fellow lovers of Burbank, that if you do this, you will be blessed and will create a Burbank that will live up to its foremost dreams for her and for all of us. Thank you all, and happy holidays.
Please join me in the pledge. Ready?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Councilmember Mullins?
Here.
Councilmember Perez?
Here.
Councilmember Tagahashi?
Present.
Vice Mayor Schultz?
Present.
And Mayor Anthony?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi, for those words. I would like to ask all of us to join in a moment of silence for the six victims, three children, and three adults of yesterday's school shooting in Nashville, Tennessee. It is heartbreaking, and it is a tragedy. Thank you. There will be six periods of public comment tonight. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone. You can call in now to get in that queue, 818-238-3335. There will be a first general public comment at the beginning, and then a second public comment period will be during a public hearing later on. If you want to call in for that, please call in after the first general public comment period. We have three announcements this evening, and a short video will play.
announcements for March 28, 2023. The following are announcements for March 28, 2023. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for one vacancy on the senior citizen board for an unexpired term ending July 31, 2024. The deadline to submit an application is Wednesday, March 29 at 5:00 p.m. If interested, apply online at www.burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. Vaccination proof or medical religious exemption will be required of all applicants. For more information, please contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov. In January 2023, the City Council unanimously adopted a resolution to transition from an out-large election to an election by districts. This district formation process determines which neighborhoods and communities are grouped together into a district for purposes of electing members of the City Council. The city will be hosting public hearings, community forums, and have two interactive mapping tools to gather community input. The first community forum is scheduled for Thursday, March 30 at 6:00 p.m. at the Buena Vista Public Library. For meeting details and more information, please visit www.burbankcouncildistricting.com. Starting next Monday, April 3, Burbank Bus will be extending hours and adding more frequencies to the pink and orange fixed route bus schedules. This will help improve the reliability of catching Burbank Bus during peak hours, mornings, and evenings. To view the new bus schedules, please visit www.burbankbus.org or call 818-246-4258. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
All right, we have three council presentations on the agenda this evening. First is the presentation of a proclamation declaring March 31 Caesar Chavez Day in the city of Burbank, and I want to welcome Mr. Roberto Ruiz, member of the Caesar Chavez Commemorative Committee, to join me at the podium. Roberto, how are you? I've got a proclamation here later. Let me, I'll read it to you. Okay, so we got a proclamation. I'll go through it real quick. Whereas Caesar Estrada Chavez was born March 31, 1927, in Yuma, Arizona, and died April 23, 1993, leaving an aspiring legacy for all humanity. And whereas Caesar Chavez, a veteran of the United States Navy, dedicated himself to fight for equality, justice, and dignity for all Americans as early as 1949. And whereas in 1962, Caesar Chavez founded and led for almost three decades United Farm Workers Union of America, which became a symbol of empowerment and hope for many workers, and under his stewardship, a broad coalition of unions, religious groups, students, minorities, and consumers joined together to pursue social justice. And whereas the values of Caesar Chavez include service to others, sacrifice, determination, nonviolence, respect for life, celebrating community, knowledge, innovation, and tolerance, in August 2000, legislation was signed to establish March 31 as Caesar Chavez Day of Service, which engages thousands of K through 12 students annually in service projects to honor him as one of our nation's greatest leaders. And whereas Caesar Chavez stated that "The end of all education should surely be service to others," and his "Never Give Up" philosophy and "Can Do" spirit are still thriving today. City of Burbank is home to Dolores Huerta Middle School, named after community organizer, labor leader, and civil rights activist Dolores Huerta, who, with Caesar Chavez, co-founded the National Farm Workers Association, a precursor to the UFW, and was instrumental in gaining rights for California's agricultural workers. Now I, therefore, Konstantin Anthony, the mayor of the city of Burbank, do hereby proclaim March 31, 2023, as Caesar E. Chavez Day in the city of Burbank, and encourage all citizens to celebrate Chavez's life and work by participating in community service projects. And I'll get you to hold that, and we'll get an applause. Yeah, and here you go. I'll give you the microphone, and you could tell us a little bit about what you do.
Sure.
My name is Roberto Ruiz. Most of my friends and relatives know me as Vetto Ruiz. I'm a member of the Cesar Chavez Commemorative Committee of the San Fernando Valley. I'm a lifelong resident of the valley, and more specifically, I have lived most of my 77 years in the city of San Fernando. However, I was born in a first-class hospital called St. Joseph's Hospital in Burbank.
I've heard of it.
Yeah, 1945. On behalf of our committee, let me express our appreciation for this proclamation that brings attention to an individual that dedicated his life to bettering the lives of a workforce that unfortunately is too often overlooked and not respected. I am, of course, referring to the farmworkers that feed our world. The Cesar Chavez Commemorative Committee has for 30 years annually organized events that help preserve the legacy of Cesar Chavez. Our primary event is the march or pilgrimage that has us walking in the streets of our community to culminate in a health fair and celebration of the cultural arts. This year, our march took place just Sunday, two days ago. This coming Friday, March 31, the actual birthdate of Caesar, members of our committee will be conducting tours of the Cesar Chavez Memorial, located in the city of San Fernando at the intersection of Wolfkill and Truman Streets, from 11 to 2. I invite anyone here that would be interested in seeing this impressive work of art created by the artist Ignacio Gomez. Additionally, I encourage you to view the documentary entitled "The Valley in the Struggle." You can find it on the internet, on YouTube, "The Valley in the Struggle." This 25-minute film explains not only the cause that Caesar Chavez led, but also the supportive role that some residents of the San Fernando Valley played since the union's beginnings in the 1960s. And again, thank you very much. We're very appreciative of helping us, and remember the individual that was one that worked for peace and justice, and we need more of that in this world. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Let me get a photo with you real quick. Let's hold this up. And I attended the march in Pacoima with our state senator Caroline Menjivar, but...
I was told, yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, let me know. We'll go to San Fernando next time. It's a closer drive, so. All right, the next presentation, a proclamation declaring April 1 through the 30, Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month in the city of Burbank. And I want to welcome up Mr. Eric Connor, Chair of the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission. Eric? Yeah, come on up, everyone. Yeah, come on up. I got a lot to read, so. Whereas the arts work to heal, build community, engage youth, advance justice, and create jobs, and California employs the highest number of people in creative industries, architecture, entertainment, fashion, media, and publishing than any other state in the nation, City of Burbank celebrates the role that the arts and creativity play in building community, amplifying the need for racial equality, and highlighting the power of the arts to change our lives for the better. Whereas the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission's mission is to enrich the lives of Burbank residents by celebrating our diverse arts and media community and to promote Burbank as a vibrant and enticing regional arts center, and the City of Burbank and Cultural Arts Commission partner year-round with local nonprofit agencies and businesses to advance the arts and creativity in the city and encourage community pride, as well as beautify the city through the Burbank Arts Beautification Program. If you haven't seen that, look it up. The Betsy Luke Creative Arts Center, located in George Isay Park, offers the community a variety of art classes for residents of all ages and hosts monthly exhibits in the art gallery, making art accessible to all. Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month in April is the fourth annual statewide awareness and advocacy event that recognizes the crucial role of arts, culture, and creativity in the lives of everyone in California. And whereas the city of Burbank recognizes that the arts and creativity support student success and lifelong learning, provide key job skills, and bring joy to our community while strengthening our connections. I, therefore, Konstantin Anthony, Mayor of the city of Burbank, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month in the city of Burbank. Thank you. Thank you so much for those lovely words. Hello, my name is Eric Connor, and I'm the current Chair of the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission, as well as a Burbank resident, parent with two children in the Unified School District, and I have a mouthy Australian shepherd as well. Apologies if he's ever barked at you on the Chandler bike path. Thank you so much, Mayor Anthony, and of course, to, I feel like my back's due to the city council as well, both present and past, and of course, the city staff who is yonder here as well, as I knock over a microphone, and the Parks and Rec team who, yes, yes, applause, please, I'm holding for applause. I'll wait. I'll wait. Who, on top of the myriad of things they do, they also have to deal with nine of us. And I am an only child. I don't know what a noisy house was like until I had more than one human kid. You guys have so many children you take care of, and you guys take care of us so well. So thank you guys so much, Parks and Rec, and of course, to you as well. So thank you guys for that. I did want to say, though, since April is Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month, did I say that right? Oh, yeah. I have a quick request for all of you here. No, it's not money. I mean, if you want, that's okay. If the Brown Act allows, that's okay. I do have a request for you. It's art locally. Yes, I'm using art as a verb. My high school grammar teacher would be very mad at me. There is a plethora of artistic and cultural events happening in and around Burbank. In most cases, you don't even need to get on a freeway to support your local artists and our creative community. And I put "our" in all caps, because it's all of our creative community. So, for instance, you're thinking, April, well, what's going on in April? Yes, I'm going to plug some stuff. "Susicle the Musical" is happening at The Colony, produced by the Conundrum Theater Company. Burbank Philharmonic Orchestra and the Burbank Community Band both have shows in April. Jane Austen on Scripted, Speaking of Happy Days, is opening at the Gary Marshall Theater. And the Youth Art Expo highlights our local student works throughout April at the Betsy Lukey Creative Arts Center. Every Friday night, you can check out the downtown Burbank Cultural Market on Paseo. Every week, there's live music at Urban Press. There's also wine. If you're into that, and you're old enough, some of you might not be, don't get a fake ID, they'll know. And there's live comedy at Nightcap, and that's just a taste of it. So you're thinking, how do I keep that all straight? Well, here's one more plug, burbankarts.com. Burbankarts.com, I'm going to say it one more time, burbankarts.com. This is basically a place for you to discover what is going on here, what we're working on as a commission, but most importantly, what the whole community has for it. So please do check us out, follow us, all that stuff. So this April, May, June, and beyond, please, art locally. We look forward to collaborating with the city's creative community and the staff of the city for many, many years to come, and thank you so much for listening. I appreciate all of you. Thank you so much. If it wasn't for the arts, I wouldn't have moved to Burbank, so I'm here for that. Thank you. All right. Ah, this is my favorite one. Here we go. The final council presentation this evening is the proclamation declaring April 1 through the 30, 2023 National Autism Acceptance Month in the city of Burbank. Burbank is proud of partnering with the nonprofit Acing Autism to offer tennis clinics to children with autism. I want to welcome Mr. Justin Belisario, Director of the Program Operations, and Ms. Haley O'Reilly, Program Director of Acing Autism. All right, let me read this thing here. All right. City Burbank Proclamation, Autism Acceptance Month. Whereas anyone can be born autistic regardless of gender, race, religion, or socioeconomic status, and whereas the rate of autism diagnosis in the United States is now 1 in 59, and whereas early diagnosis, childhood services, higher education, and job training are all essential components to helping autistic individuals lead healthy, productive, and independent lives, and whereas each autistic individual is unique, with different needs and strengths among a diverse spectrum, and support services must be tailored accordingly, and whereas autism is seen more and more as a disability rather than a disorder, and whereas the growing neurodiversity movement encourages individuals on the spectrum to empower themselves in the continued search for acceptance. Now, therefore, I, Konstantin Anthony, the first diagnosed autistic mayor in the country, in recognition of all autistic Burbank residents and their families and caregivers, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as National Autism Acceptance Month in the city of Burbank, and encourage our community to accept those who are different just the way that they are. Thank you. So if you have a second, please tell us a little bit about Acing Autism.
Yes. So on behalf of Acing Autism, I want to thank you, Mayor Anthony, and the city of Burbank, for the proclamation to declare April National Autism Acceptance Month. That's a big change from before where it was awareness, so I'm glad that we've changed that. Just a little bit of history on Acing Autism in Burbank. Our founders, Shafali Jesti and Richard Spurling, started the program here at Burbank in 2012, so it's been over 10 years we've had that program. We've had a partnership at the Burbank Tennis Center at McCainbridge Park, and Steve Starleaf, he's a huge supporter of us, has given us, donated the center court there on Saturdays when we run our programs for two hours for free, so we want to thank him. And we also partner with Burbank High School, the Key Club, so they have volunteers that work with our kids individually, one-on-one, or two-to-one. And over the course of the 10 years plus that we've been here at Burbank, we've served over 100 children with autism. So that's really great. And personally, Burbank has been somewhat a special place, has somewhat of a special place in my heart. When I first started with the organization, I was a program director there, and that was eight years ago, and now I've been with the organization for over eight years. So this is where I got my start as a program director, and I'm glad now we have a great program director, Brooke, who's not with us, and Haley, so I'll let her talk quickly about the program that's coming up.
Hi, everyone. I'm one of the program directors of Acing Autism in Burbank, and we meet at the Burbank Tennis Center on Saturday mornings, and our spring session is coming up this April 15 through the 27th, and we're open to any kid, any young person with autism in the Burbank community, and we get to teach tennis lessons to young kids, as well as connect them with each other socially and with other volunteers. If you're interested or know somebody with autism who wants to sign up, you can find out more at acingautism.org. And yeah, we just want to say thank you for Autism Acceptance Month. It's amazing to get recognition. A significant part of our community has autism, and it's just really important to be recognized, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Let me run applause. Come up here. There you go, hold that up, yeah. Excellent, thank you so much, I appreciate it, yeah. Yeah, the sports, the social aspect of it, that's key. That is real key, getting the kids out there. All right, oh, I got to head back up, okay. Okay, now on to the business of the city. Thank you all, I appreciate that. All right, Mr. City Manager, do we have anything to report? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do not have anything to report for tonight. Okay, great. We have a presentation, we're looking forward to this. Burbank's very own Woodbury University is here to present the School of Architecture's microhousing prototype. I want to welcome Dr. Barry Ryan, President of Woodbury University, to introduce the presentation. Welcome, Mr. Ryan, how are you?
Thank you so much, Mayor, and members of council, and distinguished staff, and visitors. It's a real privilege and honor to be here and be invited, so thank you. On behalf of my colleagues from Woodbury as well, or as I call it, Burbank's university. And we're very proud to be here. I've been president since the fall, not a very long time, and since December, my wife and our four kids and I are really pleased to call Burbank our home as well, so.
You've been president longer than I've been mayor, so you're okay.
Well, we'll see who lasts longer. Thank you, thank you very much, Mayor. I am, as most, the majority of Woodbury students, I am a first-generation college student, native Californian, and most of my education, almost all my education, has been in Southern California, and most of my life has been in Southern California, from undergrad to, I went to seminary at Fuller Seminary down the road in Pasadena, I've been at UCSB for my PhD, and I ventured north for law school at Berkeley, and then ventured a little further to Oxford for a postdoc and some other degrees, but in all those things, what I found was nothing was more important to me than higher education. And being able to lead a fantastic team at Woodbury is really a pinnacle of my career. I'm very grateful for that. A lot of exciting things are happening at Woodbury, and you're going to hear about one of those tonight, and it's one that puts together all the things that we think make the university special. Excellent teaching, excellent classroom experiences, small groups are able to work with faculty, but on top of that, hands-on experience, and experience that is going to help our students become graduates who are also in outstanding careers and professions, and on top of that, being involved in a project that allows them to do all of that and contribute to this community. So I'm very grateful for that, I'm thankful, and it's my pleasure to introduce someone who will tell you a lot more about it, our Dean of the School of Architecture, Heather Flood. Thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. I've been with Woodbury for seven years, and the past six months have been the most thrilling and optimistic to date, thanks to your leadership. Good evening, Mayor Anthony, council members and staff. My name is Heather Flood, and I'm the Dean of the School of Architecture at Woodbury University. I'm grateful for this opportunity to share some of the exciting and relevant work happening on our campus. on our campus. There we go. Speaking of the Woodbury campus, we're located off of Glen Oaks Boulevard between Buena Vista and Hollywood Way, tucked into the northeast foothills of Burbank. You see the campus in the foreground and the foothills of Burbank in the background. We're an incredibly diverse community, our student demographics reflect that of Los Angeles County in general. We're a majority-minority population, 53% female, 63% non-Caucasian. We're a nationally recognized HSI institution, Hispanic-serving institution, and AAPI, Asian-American Pacific Islander Institution. 46% of our students are Pell recipients, to qualify for a Pell grant, you need a household income lower than $50,000. The majority of Pell recipients come from households with an income below $20,000. So our student population is socio and economically diverse. Our degree programs are professionally oriented. Some examples are the School of Business, which offers programs in accounting and fashion marketing. Our School of Media, Culture, and Design offers degrees in animation and graphic design. And our School of Architecture offers degrees including architecture and construction management. In addition to being diverse and professionally oriented, we're an extremely civic-minded institution. Our accrediting body recently commented that the programs of Woodbury are embedded in marginal communities rather than ensconced on campuses. They strive to contribute positively to local arts in the built environment, they are committed to serving the populations of these communities and contributing creative solutions to the problems of the built environment through collaboration with underserved people, engagement with communities, and leadership in design solutions, that is our mission. I'd like to talk specifically about something happening in the School of Architecture. We have six degree-granting programs, including interior design, architecture, computer science computational design, construction management, and sustainable practices. These six programs are all STEM-designated, and they're all project-based learning. We're developing applied research projects that explore the potential for advanced technology to address ethical issues, and the Solar Decathlon is one example of that. The Solar Decathlon project addresses the issues of housing insecurity and climate change using 3D-printed construction technology to build affordable and sustainable micro housing units. We're incredibly proud and honored to have successfully permitted the first 3D-printed home in the city of Los Angeles, it's currently under construction. The microunit is located on our campus in the northeast corner. We broke ground in October, and we successfully 3D-printed the structure in February. On the left, you can see the concrete pouring out of a robotic arm while being monitored by field tech, this is what construction workers do today, it is quickly and rapidly transforming into a digital industry. And on the right, our students are inspecting the interior finish of the material. The university hosted a community event to celebrate this milestone and share the innovations coming out of our campus with the local community. Mayor Anthony attended the event, as did council members Mullins and Takahashi, thank you very much for your attendance. So this is an image of the concrete being poured and the robotic construction technology involved in the process. This is where the home is at today, we have just completely sealed it, except the doors and the windows are in as well. And even though it's affordable and sustainable, there is no shortage of design, it's an incredibly beautiful and highly resolved finish. Here's a rendering of what the final piece will look like. And these are the students who are making it all possible. With just under 1,000 students, we're a small but a mighty institution, and our students come from Burbank. We equip them with the skills necessary to build communities of tomorrow, and with the ethical principles to make sure they do so in a sustainable way. Dignitaries from Representative Adam Schiff's office also attended the 3D-printing celebration in February, they contacted us shortly after to seek a proposal for funding to continue this research into affordable and sustainable housing. We proposed funding prototype microunits that are aligned with the building codes of the city of Burbank, and we would be honored to collaborate with you on this initiative. And in closing, I'd like to loop back to where we began with the Cesar Chavez proclamation. It was stated that Cesar Chavez claimed education's end goal is to provide service to others, and I think that's exactly what we're doing at Woodbury University. Thank you.
Thank you for that. It was incredible to watch. If I could describe it to you, it's like concrete was being poured out of a tube of toothpaste, but it was a robotic arm, like you see in those 3D printers, so it knew exactly the outline to draw every single time, and it just kept laying it, and laying it, and laying it, and it gets to a certain point, and then they let it harden, and then they lay some more, and they let it harden, and you basically just monitor the thing, it's really cool, yeah, 3D-printed home, absolutely incredible, amazing work. And when do you think it's gonna be totally finished?
Within a month.
Within a month? Okay. All right, great. Yeah.
I was wondering, Mr. Mayor, if you will have an event to ribbon-cut, have, to showcase what it looks like for those that didn't have an opportunity to come and see it?
Absolutely be having a big party.
Okay, good. We will be having a big party?
Okay.
Everyone is welcome, please, we want to share what's going on, we want to work with the community, this should be happening around April, May, we will let you know.
Okay, great, hopefully we can, you can start taking orders at that time to see when.
Just real quick, theoretically, what are the practical applications of this?
I think that you can build fast and cheap.
Okay, great, all right, thank you so much.
And sustainable as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, excellent, thank you so much. Mr. City Attorney, will you please report on closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and for the benefit of the public, this evening's city council met in closed session on a number of items. The first item was a matter of existing litigation in the case of Gary Gast versus City of Burbank, a slip-and-fall case, case number 20STCV49660 pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. Council met in a second existing litigation case, Giuseppe Locke versus City of Burbank, case number 20STCV27054 pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. That case was a sewer-backup eminent domain case. And then finally, city council met with the city's labor negotiator, Ms. Betsy McClinton, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 concerning negotiations with Burbank City Employees Association and Burbank Management Association. City council took no reportable action this evening.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Now is the time for a general public comment. If members of the public want to speak in person, they will fill out a yellow general public comment card, send it over to the city clerk, and you may address the council on any matter concerning the city business, except for the public hearing, which is coming later. If you speak to the public hearing item, that comment will not be included in the public hearing record. You may use this first period of public comment to address an agendized report that's later on in the evening, but then you will not be able to speak on that item following that segment. Comments are limited to three minutes per person, please stay within your three minutes. If you would like to call in at this point, 818-238-3335. You'll be put in a queue after we get through the yellow cards. First up, I have Linda Besson, followed by Chris Rosati.
Mayor Anthony, council members, in June of last year, there was an outcry in the community that was unprecedented for Burbank. The hundreds of residents who protested on Magnolia Boulevard and on the Chandler Bike Path and spoke out at council meetings had a clear message for the city, protect kids, not guns. In response, we were promised focused and substantial action to address our top concern, the number of gun stores in Burbank. We wanted changes to whatever process allowed this situation to happen, and to make sure that our elected officials and city staff took action to address our concerns and fears. We wanted detailed reporting on the status of our city's regulations, the changes that would be made, and how our residents and our children are going to be kept safe. Now, almost 10 months later, we have this update from city staff. In regard to the residents' concerns that were directly communicated, not the ideas presented by council, I'm talking about the actual work we wanted done, the only response we are being given is, there's a working group, and we're working on it. They are, quote, actively engaged in long-term efforts. I could say that this is not good enough, but that's an understatement. Basically, it's a slap in the face of the community. I won't belabor that point, instead, I will provide information with the hope that it will perhaps inspire these people in this working group to do better, to care about what we as residents think, and to bring us the solutions we demand now, rather than at some vague point in the future. In our country, 120 people die every day from gun violence. This past January, we had 40 mass shootings in the US, which is the highest number of mass shootings on record for any January. This includes the three mass shootings that took place in California. As of yesterday, with the horrific event at a school in Nashville, there have been 130 mass shootings in the US so far this year, so we have had more mass shootings than days in the year. Guns are the leading cause of death for children under 18, more than disease or accidents. The K-12 school shooting database reported that in 2022, the record was broken for most school shootings in a year. Last fall, there was a school shooting in America every single school day. Finally, I think about what happened here in Burbank on March 6th, and what could have happened if that man had, who gained access to Burbank High School, had an assault rifle. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Besson. I have Chris Rosati, followed by George Contreras.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Chris Rosati, as you know, I'm a member of the planning board, but I'm not acting in that capacity tonight, I'm here as a member of the community. I'm here to speak on item number four, the Rancho Master Plan. I think part of the conversation tonight should be building the complete trail. About 17 years ago, I had visited other equestrian communities and saw that most of them had protected bridle trails, and I made mention of that at several community meetings back then. Fast forward to today, Ms. Geisheimer and I have been working diligently for the past year and a half, we've met with the developer of Pickwick, CDD, planning, traffic, engineering, to put a protected trail around Pickwick, down Riverside Drive, and down Mariposa to the bridge to give access and mobility to the riders from Northwest Riverside, and give riders east of Maine safe passage to Northwest Riverside community, so that you can connect the whole equestrian community safely. With the Pickwick Settlement Agreement, we do have a small trail, and I believe that's a good start, however, that trail sends the rider into traffic, into nowhere. And I think as a community, we can do better. As we're getting more dense, we need to build an entire protected trail. I don't ride, so I don't have a horse in this race. Funny, funny, but I do think it's the prudent thing to do, and I've thought that for many years. I'm asking that the entire trail be built at the same time the trail is being built for Pickwick, it makes better financial sense to do it all at once, and it disrupts the neighborhood and the community one time rather than twice. And then lastly, in looking at the report, I think that there should be a discussion about what it would look like to designate the Rancho historic. I'm interested to hear from Mr. McNugel, our city attorney, and see what his opinion is on the ups and the downsides of doing something like that. I know there are different levels of designation of historic, but I think it's just a conversation as a community that we should have to protect this neighborhood. So I thank you for your conversation tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosati. I have George Contreras, followed by Don Baldassaroni.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is George, I am the Burbank crossing guard. I've agonized for years that I may have to address the council about this issue. I've expanded all the traditional routes to address this, but with no success. I love my job, I love the city of Burbank. My job is a very high-risk job, and I've been entrusted to safely cross the most precious things in my parents' lives, their children. My location has the highest volume of traffic of all the schools I've worked, excessive speed and failure to obey the most basic traffic laws is an everyday experience. I've lost count on how many times I've almost been hit. I am a public safety employee, I have a commercial driver's license, I'm a motorcyclist, I'm a bicyclist, and I am a recreational walker. All my years of experience makes me an excellent crossing guard. I give 100% every day of doing my job because a children's lives depend on it. I am a professional crossing guard. I started this job as a substitute, but I quickly became in demand at schools I subbed at. I have many letters of commendation. For five years, I consistently receive above exceptional in all my annual performance reviews. When I was hired in 2018, minimum wage was $11, this job paid almost $15. Starting in 2019, California continued to raise the minimum wage by a dollar every I went upside down. Now, five years later, I only earn 36 cents above minimum wage. Inflation has grown 19% since 2019. Drivers have become much more reckless since then. I feel if the city would have determined this was a minimum wage job in 2018, it would have been, but they paid much more. We are now in a recession. I make less now than when I started, my dollars buy less. I am a dedicated public servant. I would like to be restored to almost $5 above minimum wage like it was when I started. I invite any of you to come see what I deal with daily. Personally, I feel I deserve hazard pay, not hero pay, but I'll settle on restoration. Please address this injustice, in the words of Adam Schiff, school service workers should not be earning poverty wages. I net only $13,000 a year. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Contreras. Don, followed by Joseph Rangel.
Good evening, honorable Mayor and Vice Mayor and City Council and staff. My name's Don Baldassaroni, I'm president of Burbank Historical Society, and I brought with me Joseph Rangel, which you'll hear a minute later, he's our newest board member at the Historical Society. Anyway, in 1973, a group of concerned citizens, huh, you've never heard that before, have you? Okay, of Burbank, led by Mary Jane Strickland, a city employee, formed the Burbank Historical Society, and with a simple goal, preserve, protect, and promote the rich history of Burbank. Over the past 50 years, the Burbank Historical Society has become one of the greatest historical society museums in the country, with an exhibition space of 20,000 square feet and thousands of items related from the 1600 to present, okay? The museum has hosted several hundred students over the years in special programs for elementary and middle school students, and has hosted thousands more via special event programs, guided tours, partnerships with local charities, service clubs, and the Chamber of Commerce. And we are constantly... And we are constantly told the best-kept secret in Burbank. I can't tell you how many times I've been there at the museum. I didn't know you were here. You know, how many people here have been to the museum? I know for you, you have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we celebrate our 50th anniversary, we wanted to come before the council to provide insight on our plans for the future of this year. On July 29th, the Burbank Historical Society will be hosting a barbecue to thank our members and our community for their support over the years. Details can be found on our website, which I'll give you in a few minutes-- a few seconds. On October 21st, we'll be hosting an event in the community to celebrate the actual 50th anniversary. Details will be forthcoming, but I invite all the city council, city employees, everyone. Put it on your calendar now. Okay, October 21st. There will be several other events during the course of the year, which will be having a high tea and will having-- different events during the course of the year. And you'll see it on our website, in the local newspapers, and like that. Also, we are open from 1 to 4 Saturday and Sundays. And you can actually come and see at Johnny Carson Park on June 11th at the Road King Car Show, we're going to have the 1923 Moreland Bus and be on display. Anyway, thank you very much. And I thank the council and city employees for the collective support of the museum. Okay, oh. 1100 Clark. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. We have Joseph Rangel, followed by Roy Simosian.
Well, howdy. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, city staff, and everyone here. We're going to have a good show for you tonight. I'm just kidding. The show is all yours. But anyway, let me introduce myself. My name is Joseph Rangel. I'm a-- well, I'm actually a city employee, too. I'm undercover here. No, I'm just kidding. I'm a city employee over at the police department. I'm an administrative analyst. And I'm also a-- I was a docent at the Burbank Historical Society since 2019 and recently became a board member over there. Now, they asked me. They're like, "Hey, you should become a board member." I'm like, "You know what? Why not? I should do that. That sounds like a good idea." And it was. I enjoy it. And so, a couple of the attractions that we have there at the Historical Society, which I think you guys really would get a kick out of, we have a little ticket box from Magnolia Theater, because you used to have a theater in Magnolia. I like one of the AMC 16s, one of those little ones you walk into and everything. And we remade the ticket box. We also have some of the original benches from City Hall, which I think you guys could have a seat on, probably. We also have some old streetlights that BWP actually helped install near the Menzer House. And they actually change colors, too, so they have Philips LEDs in them so they can have little tea parties there and everything if you'd like to. Now, a couple of the events that Don mentioned-- so these events, I think they help instill a sense of community and really add to the small-town feel we have here in Burbank. Because a lot of these events that we go to, you see the same people all the time. You're like, "Oh, I know that guy." Or it's like, "He knows me, but I don't know him." And they shake your hand anyway. You pretend you know them. You're not along, right? You guys all get that. Yeah, but anyway, I think-- I was born here in Burbank, raised here in Burbank, went to Burbank schools. I just think that you guys should all come on down to the Historical Society. You know, it's a really good thing. It's the best-kept secret in Burbank. A couple of these guys and gals that go and volunteer over there, they really know a lot of our stuff. I learn a lot of new things every day, almost, all the time over there. They're always telling me something. They're like, "Back in 1946, we did this. We used to wear onions on our belts." Stuff like that. Anyway, I didn't mean to make this into comedy show, but that's all I got to say for today.
Thank you, Mr. Rangel.
Thank you.
I have Roy Simosian, followed by Kathy Morpolos.
Hello. My name is Roy Simosian. I'm here to speak about SB 35 and the Burbank Rancho. In 1993, the city called for a Rancho master plan for the protection and preservation of the Rancho. And they got it. Apparently, that wasn't good enough. For now, we have two SB 35 projects in a very sensitive area, the Rancho. This impacts it immeasurably because they're townhouse projects. And one of them is at Circle Cape, right at the entrance to the bridge, the only access the Glendale and Burbank Rancho have to get across into Griffith Park to the horse trails. Bad place to put a bunch of townhouses right to the entrance. The other thing I wanted to bring up is this proposed horse trail from Main Street and Riverside to Mariposa. I question the wisdom of that because there's already a dedicated horse trail right across the street at the entrance to the Equestrian Center. You can ride that down and either cut through Dinkarat to get to Mariposa, or you can go down to the L.A. River right up beside it to get to the bridge. And it's much safer. Now, if they-- it turns out they have to do this trail and make it safe, that's fine. But I'm just saying, we already have a dedicated trail. Seems like the energy and money could be used better to protect the community. Just my opinion. Anyway, I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Roy. Kathy, followed by Lynn Hansen.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Morpolos, and I'm part of a coalition called Rethinking Access to Marijuana. And you've heard from a number of community leaders about the need for drug education. Every day, people are dying from fentanyl, meth, and other deadly drugs I can't even pronounce. Last fall, I was volunteering at Bernstein High School in Hollywood after one of the students had died from fentanyl. So we're there at the school, and one 15-year-old girl tells me, "I would never take fentanyl. I only smoke weed because that's safe." And I asked her, "Well, what is weed doing for you?" And she says, "Well, sometimes she's anxious, depressed, but if she gets high, she doesn't feel that." So I gave her the material from the Surgeon General's office, which showed that, especially for teens, marijuana can worsen anxiety, depression, and increases the risk of suicide. And she said, "No, no. That can't be true" because no one had mentioned it to her. And she-- you know, with the thing called the medical marijuana card, which is basically a loophole that allows 18-year-old kids to get today's cannabis, she got her drugs from a senior. She's a freshman. So anyways, I looked at her vape, her marijuana vape. It's not 2%. It's not 4%, 5% THC. It's 80%. So what happened was they changed the concentrates. So before, we had concentrates. They were used medically and so forth. But when it went recreational, what happened is the concentrates are where you're getting these incredible amounts of THC, which is just outright dangerous. So what can we do about it? So the answer is super simple. It's basically, we need to support the efforts to get the message out because, really, we're not stupid. People aren't stupid. Kids aren't stupid. They really, truly don't know. So drugs don't have a happy ending. The highs go away. You're left with whatever problems you had before. So the right answer is to broadly educate because they call these improved drugs. And what that means is they've been in the lab, and they've been altered. So whatever you think about meth, it's been altered to be improved, which basically means it's more addictive more quickly. So that's true for opioids, meth, marijuana. Any drug that has gone through the labs is basically a changed drugs. So on a side note, most important thing is the health and safety agencies. They're staffed by young, educated, mostly women, mostly minority. These guys are passionate. They're super knowledgeable. And that's-- I'm not knowledgeable myself, but I'm speaking on their behalf. I'm telling you, these guys are hot. And I would love to introduce you to the guys that actually know what they're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I have Lynn Hansen, followed by Brianna Elrich.
Good evening. Thank you. Can I distribute these?
Sure, yeah. Hand them over here.
Okay. Thanks. As well as health ramifications from marijuana, the environmental damage is severe. This report that I've distributed, I'll quickly review-- did anybody-- did everybody get this? Or-- oh, okay. I'll wait just one second. Okay. The first page is a microcosm showing that illegal farms outnumber legal farms in California. Everything you see in brown on this map, they're illegal farms. And the green is legal. And then, page two, this is quotes from the article related to the map on page one. Talks about illegal grows far outnumbering licensed ones. The state has sanctioned licensed growers for violating regulations, but they never invoke civil penalties for unlicensed. And the sheriff's cannabis enforcement team consists of a single sergeant, part-time deputy. Says it's like taking on a gargantuan army with a pocket knife. Huge illegal grows, violence, worker exploitation, and deaths. And then, I'm going through this quickly just so you can keep it and look at it later. And then, page three is from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife website. This is their table of contents that lists environmental issues they're facing due to cannabis farms: pollutants, fertilizer, imported soils, water impacts, terrestrial impacts, and direct ingestion. And marijuana is a water-hungry crop. Environmental impacts that are disproportionately large given the area under production-- I'm just reading the parts in red here-- substantial quantities of pesticides, plants-- they want to protect the plants and their irrigation lines. Okay, and on the last page, these are-- there are hundreds of articles online about the perils of cannabis. Listed below are a few. California has a massive oversupply of illicit marijuana. It's undermining licensed shops. Illegal marijuana growers steal California's scarce water. The poisoning is both intentional and secondary. Illegal cannabis farms threaten the wildlife. Grows are messing with water quality in four national forests. Remote pot farms in California are poisoning rare wildlife. Cannabis farms and three endangered animals. And then, the last is this Los Angeles Times that's been running articles for quite a while now. And this is the link to the 30 most popular pot-centric stories. So legalizing marijuana was California's plan to eliminate illegal farms. It hasn't worked. Therefore, local government has to enact restrictions to guard against the many perils of cannabis, addiction, health issues, crime, and environmental destruction.
Thank you, Ms. Hansen.
I hope you will continue to prohibit cannabis retail business in the wonderful community of Burbank. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to bring up Michael Elrich, followed by Brianna Elrich.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. You may know me from the Planning Commission, but I'm not acting on the Planning Commission's behalf right now. I'm here tonight to support approving the Rancho-specific plan. The Burbank housing element, which I voted to approve, designates the best areas housing can be built. In the housing element, the Rancho was not designated for building potential, so I believe we should do what's best and develop a neighborhood protection plan with a horse-protection overlay zone. We need updated building standards that promote the equestrian lifestyle. I think plans for an equestrian trail from Chavez to Keystone along Riverside Drive would cement our neighborhood as equestrian and slow down traffic on Riverside Drive. cement our neighborhood as equestrian and slow down traffic on Riverside Drive. Pedestrian crossings with lights on non-traffic light streets along Riverside would also mitigate and slow traffic. I also wanted to talk about SB 35 and AB 2011. They've already taken hold in the Rancho. During a council hearing for 910 South Mariposa, former Mayor Sharon Springer said, "The Rancho is agricultural." So, my idea for updating the land use and zoning for M1 properties is to make it AG, agricultural. Agricultural is exempt from all these bills coming down the pipeline. The best way to protect our equestrian Rancho neighborhood is to bring in AG zoning and land use. Please approve the Rancho specific plan and help keep our unique equestrian neighborhood safe for everyone. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Elrich. I have Brianna Elrich, followed by Michelle Webster.
Good evening, everyone. Also here, just to echo Michael's statements regarding the Rancho community. Burbank specifically has always made room for animals, not just because it's very unique in our area. In Los Angeles, it's a very city, very dense population. We happen to have the Griffith Park, which offers 50 miles of trail for our horses in our community education and the amount of money, not to mention the amount of money that we all get from the horse community, supporting our city. It has a lot of, I think, value and moral positives to it, and I think that we should do what we can to continue that in our youth. And the people have chosen to live out their final years here. We're already established as this animal-specific equestrian community, and the best thing that we can do is to protect that. And certainly, all the developments that have been coming around aren't necessarily supported by the piping and the equestrian life that we have now. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have Michelle Webster, followed by Rosalie Salvato.
I'm Michelle Webster. I was going to send an email. I have another meeting I'm supposed to be at tonight, and then Nashville happened yesterday. Another school shooting just in time for our city's report on gun store safety. Every town that is the new town on the news had likely moved on from the last event, lulled into the seeming safety of the perceived unlikelihood that the next time wouldn't be them, just like we do. We have this feeling that it would never really happen in Burbank, even though we maintain the second highest number of gun stores in the nation. For as long as I live, I will never understand how we, as a country, decided we could live with the fatal attack on 20 kindergarten schoolchildren at Sandy Hook Elementary 10 years ago, and the countless subsequent schoolhouse deaths that have since followed. Perhaps you remember when I spoke to council last July, when I shared a story of the daily anguish I had gone through, dropping my TK child off at school, knowing her classroom was the first door into the school, the one that would take the most casualties, while the rest of the school figured out what to do. That story was about my oldest child. My youngest child is now in kindergarten. She's five, but her birthday's coming up. She's spunky and silly and independent and clever and sweet. Every night at bedtime, she tells me she loves me bigger than the blue whales and deeper than the Mariano trench. As life would have it, her kindergarten class is in that very same classroom, the first door in the school. Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, Council members Perez, Takahashi, and Mullins, I respect you all and appreciate what you do. Are you ready to host the next newscast to give your thoughts and prayers to me? There is a feeling in the community that I've heard that the report being presented tonight lacks action. I know there is much to consider on this topic, but it really isn't that complicated. Our children, our community, are worth more than inaction. Please keep my children in mind when you consider the path forward. Please pursue meaningful reform regarding gun safety and the permitting of gun-related stores in Burbank. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Webster. Rosalie Salvato, followed by Noreen Reardon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Rosalie Salvato, and I live in the Rancho. Some of you know me. I'm very passionate about the Rancho. I'm a New Yorker, but I love, I'm a city girl, you know, but I love the Rancho. I presented some petitions for that northeastern corner. It's not the whole Rancho, it's just the community by the Pickwick Center. In the process of getting petition signs, I had the privilege of speaking with many of my neighbors regarding the Pickwick project, and they are disgusted and angry about it as I am. I am expressing to you what the people in the equestrian community are feeling, as well as I. We love our Rancho, our equestrian community. It is, it's being diminished. The Rancho is rural, a bit of country in the city. How special is that? Horses live here, as well as human beings and children and other animals. Horses must be respected. City council and staff have failed the Rancho. Please don't say that this was the prior council, because there are two council members on this council that were on the prior council. And they did not support Councilwoman Springer when she was pursuing, pursuing the lawsuit. Had they supported her, we might not be in this situation. I don't own a horse, but I love the wonderful energy that is in this neighborhood, and the energy comes from the horses and all of the other animals in the neighborhood. Just like Whole Foods attempted to put a store in the corner of Main and Alameda, it was wrong, and it was not the right place for the store. Putting 92 condos on the Pickwick property is also wrong and not the right place for the condos. There is a school on Valencia. There's a kindergarten on Main off of Alameda, and a large rehabilitation on Main, a half a block up from Riverside. Paramedic units are there frequently. So that emphasizes that there's, we need safety in the community. Has any city council member or staff member taken the opportunity to come into the neighborhood, meet with the residents that pay taxes, see what their feelings are, what their desires are? Anybody? I don't think so. We are a representative republic. That means representing the people, we the people, not corporations or developers. This project must be delayed. We must complete a thorough and proper traffic study for the protection of the community, and the project must not be started until that is completed. That means no shuffling papers, no checking boxes. Do the work.
Thank you, Rosalie. I have Noreen Reardon, followed by Susan Stair.
Good evening, Mayor Anthony and Council members. My name is Noreen Reardon, and I live at 360 West Elm Avenue in the Rancho. My house is the blue one with the little free library out front, and also the sign out front that says, "Please slow down." It was not my first choice of wording, but I realized that anything more direct might make me a target for an angry speeding driver. I support moving ahead with an update to the Rancho master plan with a neighborhood protection plan tailored to the needs of the smaller residential areas in the Rancho. With the upcoming Pickwick project of 92 townhomes, even though SB 35 allowed developers to bypass on an EIR, the responsibility of protecting the neighborhood falls to the city. We need the city to provide realistic traffic mitigation solutions to the inevitable increase of cut-through traffic that will be going through our neighborhood streets. We already have issues where Alameda backs up, and people may go right on Chavez and then left on either Spazier or my street, Elm, and then proceed to speed down the street despite the speed bumps. There's a four-way stop on, stop sign on Chavez and Elm, which I guess is a mere suggestion to a lot of people, because no one seems to stop. There are no sidewalks on the east side of Elm, so those of us with dogs, horses, and strollers are at the mercy of the idiots who blow through the stop sign. Just today, at 2:00 PM, I was out with my dog, and we were almost mowed down by yet another idiot who was speeding up Chavez from Riverside, took a right on Elm, and completely ignored the stop sign. We also need the city to put in place protections during the Pickwick construction besides the sound blanket that has been suggested by the developer. Demo and excavation are going to be brutal, especially with all the trucks lined up to remove debris. The residents in the apartment building on Main and Elm, a lot of them who work from home, are going to suffer the most from the disruption. In closing, I ask you to please approve moving ahead with the update to the Rancho master plan with a neighborhood protection plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reardon. Susan Stair, followed by Ron Bax.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Anthony, City Councilperson Schultz, Perez, Takahashi, and Mullins. I'm going to try to remember what you said. Councilperson Takahashi, are you all going to be repeating yourselves? So, what they said, but I'll try to put it in a little context for you. And I do want to thank you for encouraging us to be proactive, and also, I think you deserve thanks, Mayor Anthony, for coming to our first seat meeting in December. So, the council is willing to listen. I do believe that. We support the Rancho specific plan, Agenda Item 4, but we are asking for mitigations before you do a two-year study. We need mitigations, we feel, starting with the construction project of the Pickwick We have talked to many of our neighbors. We have over 150 signatures for a very small area that we're talking about. We understand that the Burbank 2035 general plan does provide for a neighborhood protection plan when there is going to be a new development that creates cut-through traffic. We expect that, and one of the reasons we feel like we, we are entitled to it is that we are a neighborhood in which three arterial roads come together and freeway access is nearby. And so, we are already used for cut-through, and that's the kind of traffic that they are describing. It's traffic that's edgy, it's impatient, and not very thoughtful, and certainly not, doesn't recognize the safety issues associated with horses or bicycles, it seems, either, pedestrian, dog walkers, and so forth. But in, in thinking about the things that we need, we are looking at, and you could, I'd be happy to talk to you, because we, we've got a pretty good list of things now that people are concerned about. We're worried. We're worried about what's going to happen in the neighborhood as more traffic comes through. Right now, already, the, the studios are back up in business. We see the, we see the increase in traffic already. We think that as construction continues, we're going to see more and more congestion in the neighborhood, and that that traffic will become more problematic. We have people crossing Riverside to get to the outdoor resources of Burbank. We have children crossing crosswalks. People don't slow, and it's been my experience in trying to get a horse across Riverside, often you find, you find the dog, the, the car in the middle of the, of the lane. So, I understand.
Thank you, Ms. Stair.
I'm out of time, and I want to thank you for listening and, and for considering our request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Ron Bax, followed by John Brazee.
Our review of the January 31st meeting, where rent control was discussed, and noted, most speakers use generalities or abstractions and some hyperbole in their remarks. In their defense, it is difficult to convey all the information regarding housing using three minutes, as I have tried to do in the last three meetings. My goal is to give you facts based on my experience in operations. Hopefully, you will see the claims made by one caller, quote, "Almost, almost without exception, everything you heard today is a lie. Landlords are fine. Rents are up 20% since the pandemic started," and others are not true. Information I plan to give at the meeting after the next will corroborate claims by housing providers, property managers, real estate professionals, and other interested professionals, that the cost of materials and services are up significantly and not hyperbole. I recommend you review the comments former Mayor Todd Campbell gave when he called in. I had planned to present the challenges one faces when inheriting properties at this meeting, but I've received some data that warrants updating the information I presented last time. Still, I would like to give a brief summary of the status of my inherited properties. It seems the perception, perception is that when you inherit, it is a financial windfall. I'm here to tell you that is not true. I analyzed the financials for the properties I acquired out of my parents' estate. My return on investment for those four properties is currently 0.17%. If I had not raised the rents in August, the value would be minus 0.41%. If the loan was paid off today, the ROI would be 3.25%. All these values are not taken into account, the expense for random day-to-day problems, and the value of my time in addressing them. I can get 3.4% Logix. Treasuries are 3.63 to 4.63 currently. My rollover IRA, even with all the turmoil over the last year, has returned 32% over the last six years, which is 4%, 4.7% per year. All of these are trouble-free. So, 4.7 trouble-free versus 3.25% with all the headaches. Now for the update. Tables 1 and 3 are what I presented last meeting. I've added some notation outside the tables to give clarity for this presentation. I stated then, the tables contain data that was not time-aligned. The purchase price was the last, latest available, Haynes 2020, in the spring of 2022 survey. I recently received a flyer from Cindy Hill. I compared the data with the Haynes survey to the flyer. The data closely matches, if not exactly. The, the flyer gives time-aligned data, which is why I updated it. I use the values for the third quarter of 2022, because beyond that are forecast data. The updated tables are 2 and 4, and I only have four seconds, so I will. After I present these hurdles and on the inherited property at the next meeting, I will address the challenges faced by current housing providers at the meeting following that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bax. I have John Brazee, followed by Sabrina Silver. Hello?
Hi, Mayor, Council members and staff. My name is John Brazee. I moved to the Burbank area with my wife in 1998 and lived into the Rancho, and have lived in the Rancho and raised my family here. I live on the West Elm Ave block over by Baskin Robbins and Victory, and I wanted to express my concern about the increased amount of traffic caused by the Pickwick project. We have a new generation of families and neighbors living in the Rancho, and of course, horses. Currently, we already have traffic issues with drivers trying to avoid the congestion at the intersection of Alameda and Victory. Drivers cutting through South Chavez Street, West Spazier Ave, and West Elm Ave to get back out to Victory. This project will only compound our issues. I'm asking you, for you to consider traffic inhibitors on South Chavez and cul-de-sacs at the end of West Spazier and West Elm, Lucci and Linden avenues, similar to what was done for the neighborhoods adjacent to the Whole Foods project. I appreciate your time. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Sabrina Silver, followed by Megan Odson.
Hello, my name is Sabrina Silver. I am, I board at the Los Angeles Equestrian Center, and I am an equestrian. I am not here in a formal capacity, but I am also on the Los Angeles Equine Advisory Board. And I value so much the quiet, low-density equestrian character of the neighborhood, and I was stunned that SB 35 prevailed over that, and in my opinion, common sense, because Pickwick was a recreational space, and the people have now been deprived of a recreational space for housing, which is going to cause all these other problems of density and safety. It, it's extremely difficult to manage horses and walking your horse or riding your horse amidst people that just have no idea of the safety issues involved. Circle K is very troubling to me because of its really specific location, at the very proximate to the Mariposa Bridge, which has been mentioned as the gateway to Griffith Park. And it seems to me that any use, other than equestrian agricultural use for that property, is against, well, it's certainly against the character of having a Rancho specific plan. The fact that these high-density projects are taking place in this supposed Rancho is quite unbelievable to me. I personally will be impacted if that development goes, if either one of them go through, but also with the Circle K, because boarding at LAEC means that I use the perimeter trail regularly, and I understand that at least during construction, there's talk that that will be blocked off and not be usable. So, that impedes my access and my riding ability, and it will interfere also with my getting my horse to Griffith Park, where I would very much like to ride her. So, if there's any way to stop the Pickwick or Circle K developments, which, you know, I've been told it's too late, but if there is any way, I would love for it to be considered for everyone, to preserve the nature of your community and your Rancho, and for the safety of everyone, and for those of us who enjoy it. Circle K is your last boarding barn, I believe. I don't think you have any others. All the boarding places are in Los Angeles and in Glendale, and yet you want to be a Rancho. It seems to me that, that that should be a public boarding facility.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Megan Odson, followed by Andre Dinesian.
Good evening, Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, Council members and city staff. My name is Megan Odson, and I'm here this evening on behalf of Women Against Gun Violence, a 30-year-old nonprofit organization focused on preventing gun violence in Los Angeles County and throughout the state of California. My comment tonight is on Agenda Item Number 6, the update to the firearm regulation direction. I want to thank Linda Besson and the Burbank community for inviting me to speak this evening, and I want to thank the City of Burbank for exploring new ways to reduce and prevent gun violence locally, including imposing a temporary moratorium on new gun retailers back in August of 2022. I also want to express some disappointment that your first update on firearm regulation after seven months does not seem to address the utmost concern of your community, which is the risks posed by the proximity of your city's existing 14 gun stores. So, I'm asking tonight that you please, with urgency, prioritize the development and implementation of a distance ordinance, as well as sensible permitting and security requirements for these retailers. A moratorium on new stores would most effectively go hand-in-hand with increased regulation of the currently existing ones. At the very least, this will provide your community with some, some peace of mind while you continue to work on a comprehensive gun violence prevention package, to include the Ghost Gun Ordinance in Process, the GVRO Awareness Campaign, and all the other helpful programs outlined in tonight's staff report, which I also fully support. Thank you.
Thank you. Andre Dinesian, followed by Jay Geisenheimer, which is my last card.
This evening, as the flag above this building is lowered, it will only travel about half the distance that it typically does. Having grown up post-Columbine, this seems almost typical to folks my age. It is not. This is not normal. We mourn the gruesome loss of innocent life in Nashville, but following the president's lead, I believe it's time for action. The shooter used two assault weapons and a handgun. One was basically an AR-15 with a different name, because apparently we can do that now. These are machines of war. They are built with a singular purpose: to kill, to kill as many people as fast as humanly possible. And unfortunately for us, they work very well. I'd like to submit for consideration a resolution in support of an assault weapons ban. for consideration a resolution in support of an assault weapons ban, federal assault weapons ban, following the President's lead. I've sent out an email to you all. I wish I'd had more time. I would have sent it in for public record or printed it out, but kind of just threw this together today. I'd appreciate if you all took the time to consider it. Feel free to get back to me with any questions or changes in language. But I think it's time for us to step up and say that we, as a community, support the President's plan and the bill in front of Congress to get this done, get these guns off of our streets. Thank you.
Everyone, anyone can have a copy of this, and then we can share this. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilwomen. Jay Geisenheimer, 27-year Rancho resident. This country was built on the back of horses, and here in the Rancho, we remind the world of that every day. Nowhere in Southern California, or possibly America, do you find 600 homes zoned for horses, and 90% are on 6,000 to 7,000 square-foot lots, surrounding the second-largest equestrian center in America and at the foot of the largest park in America with 54 miles of the best riding. This is the special Rancho. The Rancho Master Plan is a necessary document, but what is not necessary is spending a million and a half dollars for it. We do not need an IRA, an EIR, because what has changed since 1993? The Poot, the name? The only change since 1993 is a few less horses. Unless the EIR can recognize the SB 35 projects and their negative impact, what's the point? I am hoping our city lawyer can get around this with the state, and the trail must be in the Rancho Master Plan. The complete trail goes down Main Street, travels west on Riverside Drive, and travels south on Mariposa. This trail elevates the Rancho, could slow traffic on Riverside Drive, provides safe passage for our horses, and is a gift. In addition, I am happy to see the M1 up to discuss removal from the Rancho zoning, but what to put in its place? AH, agricultural horse. I also want you to designate horses as a means of transportation in the Rancho, because they are. I would like you to change the horse-building requirements. We have 20 registered horses, because when you go register your horse, the animal shelter sends someone out to your house to see if you have a permitted barn, and if you have an overhang with poles cemented in the ground, that is not permissible. You need a foundation to show permanent. There are...I gave you some examples of nice overhangs with poles, with horses and pipe stalls, and this is good horsekeeping. I am advocating this kind of horsekeeping in the Rancho Master Plan. Remember, there is nowhere like the Rancho, and please do all you can to preserve the neighborhood and especially adding the Burbank Rancho Equestrian Trail to the Master Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more card from Tara Barber.
Hi, I'm Tara Barber. I know you all are aware of us concerned citizens in the Rancho. You've heard from all of us, and what we're just wanting is clarification on the Rancho Master Plan and ordinances within it to set priorities to, number one, protect the Rancho and the horses that live within it. Whatever we can do to do that and to prioritize not developing in SB 35 low-income housing way is going to be so beneficial for the future and the preservation of the historical Rancho, as well as, you know, the safety concerns. As everybody says, as everybody has mentioned, you all know the safety concerns of specifically building in the Circle K area, and I just want to reiterate, the priority here is saving the horses and providing safety in that area for all the equestrians in the Rancho, both Glendale and Burbank. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. That's my last in-person card. We'll go to the phones.
We do have callers this evening, Mr. Mayor.
The first caller is Alondra Lopez.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, Councilmember Perez, Takahashi, and Millen. My name is Alondra Lopez, and I'm the Senior Field Representative for Assembly Member Friedman. I'm here on the phone on her behalf to speak on Agenda Item P4, the Rancho Master Plan. Assembly Member Friedman would like to express her support for a Rancho Master Plan that protects and preserves the unique equestrian community. The Rancho is a unique and beautiful neighborhood where the equestrian community intersects cyclists, pedestrians, and cars. As the horse owner herself, Assembly Member Friedman wants to ensure that the city also places safety measures to slow traffic and ensure that equestrians can ride safely. This year, Assembly Member Friedman has authored AV 1017, which will allow for traffic engineers to use equestrian safety as a safety-related factor in order to set posted speed limits. We hope we can work together to ensure the safety of the Rancho community and preserve it for many years to come. If you have any questions, please reach out to our office. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
The next caller is Erin Jorgensen-Briggs.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Anthony and council members. I wish to speak to Agenda Item Five tonight. My name is Erin Jorgensen-Briggs, and I'm speaking on behalf of Unite Here Local 11. We represent 30,000 housekeepers, dishwashers, cooks, and servers who work in hotels and food service across Southern California. Our members are the backbone of Southern California's hospitality economy, but they're working two and three jobs to be able to afford rent. Our members know better than anyone that we are in a statewide housing crisis of which Burbank is a part. All over the region, we're tracking community plans that incentivize hotel development as much, if not more, than housing. This is a tragedy and a missed opportunity. Here, the proposed Downtown Burbank Transit-Oriented Development, TOD, specific plan, increases the development potential for hotel rooms in downtown Burbank from 205 rooms under the current zoning to 625 rooms, an increase of 420 rooms. Hotel projects can crowd out opportunities for needed housing and may also have significant impacts on the environment. Accordingly, we urge Burbank to require all hotel projects in the downtown specific plan area to obtain development agreements, which allow for the maximal negotiation of community benefit through an enforceable agreement. This is consistent with other leading L.A. county cities. Glendale recently voted to direct staff to come back with development agreement requirements in its downtown. Additionally, a majority of hotel and other commercial projects have long been required to seek development agreements as part of Santa Monica's downtown plan. We also urge the city to only apply FAR increases or the general plan's TOD or exceptional project density bonus to housing projects, not luxury commercial projects like hotels. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
The next caller is Ben Sheffield.
Good evening. My name is Ben Sheffield, and I'm a resident of Burbank. I'm directing my comments to Mr. Anthony with a follow-up request to the entire council. Mr. Anthony, in mid-August of last year, you recorded a video from an empty council chamber regarding the issue of abolishing a police department. Four people stood alongside you, one from Seattle. My questions are, what are your intentions regarding the Burbank Police Department? What is the follow-up to your video? Is there a report being done by you and your four associates, and if so, will it be shared with the council and the residents of Burbank? If not, why not? Conceptually, what do you and your associates foresee as a city with its police department abolished? Why even discuss it? What will replace it? That critical issue was never mentioned in the video. A major issue included in the goals of the council members is safety. How does abolishment fit in with safety? Who are your four associates, and what is their association with groups supporting abolishment? In addition to the gentleman from Seattle, where are the other three from? If they're not from Burbank, then why do we care what they think? We in Burbank do not need outsiders telling us what to do to our police department. Mr. Anthony, is abolishing the Burbank Police Department a dream of yours? Certainly, it is not a dream of the city and its residents. For the council, I am requesting that the issue of abolishment be placed on a future agenda for discussion. Of great interest to all residents would be comments by each of the five members of council pertaining to his or her position on abolishment. It is critical to get each member on the record. Please do this for your constituents, the citizens of Burbank. Thank you.
The next caller is Christine Hatch.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Christine Hatch, and I have lived in Burbank for 39 years, and I'm a business owner as well here in the city. I support the Rancho Equestrian Trail enhancements such as this will indeed elevate the Rancho area. It's a special place, and I believe it will give a safe passage for our horses. It identifies the Rancho as a true equestrian neighborhood, and it could help the traffic on Riverside Drive. So I too, I know as previously mentioned, I too agree that it would be a great gift to our area and our city. So my hope is that you do include the Rancho Equestrian Trail in the Master Plan. Thank you.
The next caller is David.
Thank you.
Go ahead, David. You're on.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and council, I appreciate you listening to us. I'm a horse owner here in Burbank. I've been a resident here and owned horses here for 40 years, better than that. I'm concerned about the projects at Pickwick and at the Mariposa by the bridge. Those are the only accesses we have from West Elm, where I live, to get to the park. Now, I respect the ambience of the horse property here and the Rancho. My wife and I contribute our little foray to that with driving our carts and carriages and so forth on the streets. We try...I try to get them out about three or four times a week. Now, when the construction starts on Pickwick, that will preclude me being able to use the street to get my horses exercised up Riverside Drive. There just won't be any way with the construction going on. The noise is going to be just prohibitive. So that means I have to go another way. Problem is that the other end is Chavez is going to have construction going on too, so I'm going to be isolated, and so will all the horse owners on the side of the park from getting across to the park and off to the perimeter trail, unless we go clear down into Glendale and do it that way, which is down Riverside Drive, and it's a problem for horse people. Further, the bridge across from the...from Mariposa, the swinging bridge, is the only safe access to the park anymore. You used to be able to go down through the river in Glendale. You can't do that for years. And the only other way I know of is across the Victory Bridge, and that's not designed for horses. It's heavy traffic, and it's a freeway on-ramp and off-ramp, and it's just not a feasible way to get there. So you've kind of got us tied off from the park either way if these construction projects go through. In addition, of course, with the increased traffic, that creates a problem for us, or means we can only drive our horses on the street on Sunday, probably, and if even that's available. As far as the trail on the side is concerned, that's great, except that when I drive horses, you can't have that on horse trail, because, believe it or not, horses are afraid of horses with buggies, until they get used to them, and most people aren't. So in any case, those are my concerns, and we hope you take them into consideration and advisement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next caller is James DeCarley.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm an equestrian and equestrian business owner. I'm commenting in regards to the Rancho Specific Plan and the Equestrian Trail. As Roy mentioned earlier, there is already a dedicated trail, a safe trail crossing Main Street that is fully dedicated away from all the traffic, that reduces all the liability to equestrians and the city of Burbank. That money would be spent more effectively on existing trail enhancements. Secondly, I'm concerned of the city spending over $1.5 million plus $150,000 annually in staff time for the proposed Rancho Specific Plan, and the reason for is there's already an existing Rancho Master Plan in place that has been fully adopted into the Burbank 2035 General Plan. And that plan, while the city acknowledged it in 2017 with the 910 Mariposa Project, since then, the city has not acknowledged the Rancho Master Plan, especially with more recently with both the Pickwick Project in 2021 and the 910 Mariposa Project in '22. The proposed plan, being part of a litigation from the Pickwick Project, is political, not based on the need from concerns of Rancho residents. But nevertheless, instead of spending nearly $2 million on that plan that is not needed, I urge you to consider looking at taking this general fund tax dollars and spending it on other areas that would be more effective, like in the Rancho as a historic district that would protect it from SB 35, and using funds for the existing trails for enhancement, doing traffic calming in the Rancho. And speaking of construction, both with Pickwick and Mariposa, that's going to be a major liability and a risk to the residents. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
The next caller is Kathy Ewing.
Hello. I'm very glad to be here and have the opportunity to address the council regarding the consideration of the Rancho Specific Plan. I do support its review, and in that regard, I would recommend that priority funding be directed for maintaining safe access to the Mariposa Equestrian Bridge and possibly extending the Equestrian Trail west on Riverside and then south on Mariposa in some manner that maintains safe and continued access to the Mariposa Equestrian Bridge. I also support maintaining Circle K in Studio Five as public access for horse boarding and horse rental. The Rancho has seen a lot of changes through the years, and its area has been reduced from when my folks moved here originally. I can just anticipate it will continue to be reduced as long as development has its eyes on property that is adjacent to the commercially rich media areas in the west part of the city. So please, yes, do support the appropriate review of the media...I mean, the Rancho Master Plan, and thank you for those considerations.
Thank you.
The next caller is David Holtzman.
Greetings, council members. I am calling in from outside of Lincoln Beer. I am here for Space Night, looking forward to a nice lecture on humans in space. I'm calling in about the ongoing misadventure with districting Burbank, subject on which I've submitted other comments, but we've gotten to a certain point here. Now, I know it's hard for anyone to admit of making a mistake, but you were working with bad information, as you now know. So now that you know, A, that lawsuit or no, there's no state law forcing you to carve Burbank into districts for city council elections, and B, that you're not even allowed to do that by ordinance, the time has come for you to agendize repealing and then repeal your resolution declaring your intent... your resolution declaring your intent to consider districting the city by ordinance. And that would be your resolution from January 24th, 2023, Agenda Item M7. Thank you for listening. Please repeal that as soon as possible. Good night.
Thank you.
The next caller is Susan O'Carroll.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Susan O'Carroll, and I'm a longtime Burbank resident. And the reason I'm a longtime Burbank resident is because decades ago, a friend invited me to go horseback riding, and I rented a horse from Circle K and had a lovely time, and that evolved to me half leasing a private horse that was boarded at Circle K. And I was amazed that I could leave my job after a long day sitting at a desk and come out to Burbank and be outdoors with people and horses in a wonderful environment and a community. And so when I was finally able to be in a position to purchase a house, I ended up choosing Burbank as the logical place because of that wonderful Rancho experience. So even though I don't live in the Rancho, I'm very emotionally committed to the preservation of the Rancho. So in terms of Item Four, I think it's really important to update the Rancho Master Plan, or at least to update the aspects of the general plan, which have evolved to be in conflict with the existing Rancho Master Plan. I think there's some fairly quick and simple fixes that could be done, as well as on a more long-term basis, looking at how to be protective of that unique and special experience that is the Rancho. And because the intent is to be protective, it may be possible to use a mitigated neg deck or neg deck instead of an EIR for that effort and save some money. And if you do save some money, I think it would be nice if there's any way possible to allocate that towards the acquisition of Circle K. Circle K's location, as everybody has said, as the gateway to Griffith Park and the horse trails, is so important that if there's anything that the city can do to save that property, whether it's saving the horse use or having it be some element of the city's park and recreation system, that would be great. I'd also note that I think Burbank Parks and Rec does a really, really wonderful job. But if there's a way to save Circle K, that would be outstanding. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next caller is Jean Schamberger.
Good evening, Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, and members of the City Council. My name is Jean Schamberger. I'm speaking to you tonight as a member of the community and as a homeowner and horse owner in the Rancho. My, I've had horses here since 1990 and lived here since 1997. One of my great delights upon arriving here in 1997 was learning about the 1993 Rancho Master Plan, which, when I reviewed it again in the last couple of days in anticipation of this evening, was so much music to my ears, sight for sore eyes, and every reason that many of my friends, neighbors, myself, my husband, have come to the Rancho and continued to stay in the Rancho. I don't think it's necessary to look for another plan or spend the money to go ahead with another plan. We have a really suitable plan from 1993. Perhaps it needs an update, but spending two to four years and one and a half or two million dollars for an outcome that by the time it gets here, the horsekeeping elements of the Rancho will be gone. Pickwick will be gone. The Mariposa Stables at 910 South Mariposa will be gone. We don't have time. We're late to protecting the Rancho's character, horsekeeping, horse zoning, the actual stables. As one of the callers noted, the 910 South Mariposa property is the last horse boarding stable in Burbank. Many of the callers tonight on other topics have talked about Burbank is so happy days, the quality of St. Joseph's Hospital, Woodbury University, what a gem we have in our community, the Burbank Historical Society. Well, at the south end of town, and please come visit us. We'll take you on a trail ride. We'll walk you around. We'll show you how our horses live. We'll show you how we live. We will show you what an incredible treasure we have in the Burbank Rancho. All of those other amenities could be rebuilt. Something happens to St. Joseph's Hospital, we could build another hospital. We could build another university. We could perhaps even build another Burbank Historical Society. You will never be able to replicate the Burbank Rancho as it is currently constituted, as the 1993 Master Plan laid it out, and I encourage you to take whatever steps are appropriate and possible to understand the unique character of this neighborhood and take any steps possible to protect it. Thank you very much.
The next caller is Lois Westfall.
Hi. Good evening, Council members. Thank you for having us before you tonight. I just want to concur with many of the callers who've gone before me, and I am definitely in support of the current Rancho plan. If it needs update, that is just lovely. And I also am in support of the Neighborhood Protection Plan, specifically tailored to some of the smaller areas within the Rancho where they have special needs to get to the park safely. I have been a horse owner in Burbank since 1986. I've been riding across the streets and into the park, and it can be very scary. My main concern, of course, is traffic and traffic mitigation and perhaps some ways of cul-de-sacking along Victory Boulevard, you know, similar to ways that were done along the Tulare project, along Alameda, for the safety of the community and the horses within. I myself was hit by a man while I was riding my horse Buddy about eight years ago on Spager Avenue. This man was just doing a cut through. He was coming down Alameda, did a quick right on Chavez, and a quick left on Spager so that he could avoid the light at the corner of Victory and Alameda, and just in a hurry floored it and actually hit me and my horse. Thankfully, it was a minor injury, and my horse recovered. But, you know, things like that are likely to happen again. So anyways, I'm in support of all that has gone before, you know, the people who've already spoken. Traffic mitigation is my main concern, and then the retention of Circle K as a private boarding facility and the public rental stables. I would hate to lose our last, very, very last remaining public barn in the city of Burbank. If that goes away, I'm not sure we can call ourselves Burbank Rancho anymore because it would just be so sad. And access to the bridge there, the swinging bridge, thank you so much to Burbank for supporting that bridge and taking such wonderful care. Really, really great. I love the fact that, you know, after Christmas, they chop up all the Christmas trees and put a fresh cover on it. You walk across that bridge, and it just smells so wonderful. Anyways, thank you and kudos to those that support that and keep that in such great shape. Please continue to keep our barns in great shape and support Circle K and traffic mitigating circumstances. Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
That was the last caller.
Okay, all right. There being no further public comment, I'll declare the comment period closed. Now's the time for a brief response from City Council, City Manager, or City Attorney. Any responses to the calls? The City Attorney?
I have one response. It's to Mr. Holtzman, because the other items are on the agenda. He sent numerous letters to the City Council and to the public, and I believe my Burbank. And he's simply incorrect on the law. The city, and all charter cities for that matter, are subject to the California Voting Rights Act. Four different points of law, the case of Haragui versus City of Palmdale, the 2015 amendments to the California Voting Rights Act, the very case he cites, Redondo Beach versus Padilla, and a more recent case in 2020, Yumori Kaku versus City of Santa Clara. All clearly indicate that charter cities are subject to the California Voting Rights Act. So that's without question in my mind. And otherwise, the city has initiated the process, and we're hopeful that residents will come and at a minimum provide their own ideas about what districts should look like. So those are the events that are upcoming that the city has put a lot of effort into organizing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I just want to thank all the callers for coming in. I know there's some emotional events happened yesterday, and we'll be talking about that later this evening. I do want to address one quick thing. Last year, I did host an author who had written a book called The End of Policing, and it was actually much more about the future of criminal justice and how we, as a society, can move towards a more peaceful country. The other folks who were there with me were actually from a group called Cancel the Contract Antelope Valley, where they are trying to remove the sheriff's deputies as school resource officers in Lancaster and Palmdale School District. One of the reasons they met with me is because they actually wanted my advice on how to get a really great local police department like the Burbank Police Department rather than the Sheriff's Department, which covers all of Alia County. So we went through a lot of those topics and issues. I don't believe what the caller was talking about was actually addressed. Anyone else? Councilor Mullins?
No, I just wanted to thank everyone who's present and everyone who called us tonight. We will be addressing a lot of the items that was discussed with the staff report. I do want to acknowledge Dawn and Joseph with the, oh, they're both gone, the Historic Society, just to give them a shout out. They do a great job. The other person I wanted to address is George Contreras, the crossguard. I do see him. He's, I believe, at Walt Disney. He does a great job, and I'm not sure if the city manager, that's something that we'd be taking on with the staff and negotiations.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, yeah, we are currently in negotiations with the labor group that Mr. Contreras belongs to, so I can't say too much, but I will certainly pass along his concerns to our HR director as well, just to make sure they're aware of that. All right.
Thank you. And I do, and I just, I believe it was Ms. Rizali Salvaro, if I'm not butchering her name, did mention that we should go down and take a tour of the Rancho, and I can tell you that this council member here, myself, and I know others, we have been at the Rancho. We've taken plenty of tours, so I could tell you I'm very familiar with the area, and thanks to some of the audience sitting here with us tonight that we had the opportunity to go and take a look at the Rancho area. Thank you.
Councilor Togashi.
I just want to go ahead and also thank everybody who gave public comment and sat through public comment here on the phone, and for those of you who emailed us electronically ahead of the meeting. My apologies, I have not gotten to everybody yet. Please rest assured, I will be responding to you. We have a lot of emails, but know that we hear your concerns, we see you, and we look forward to addressing them. I know I will be addressing a lot of your questions, concerns, comments on Agenda Items Four and Six. So thank you all for being here and sharing your thoughts.
Councilor Tagashi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, likewise, I'd like to echo the sentiments of Council Member Mullins and Perez. And thank you all for, I really appreciate your engagement and respectful engagement in all these topics we're talking about. And as you were speaking and as the phone calls were coming in and through the emails, I've been taking a lot of notes and adding to my questions, so to echo what Council Member Perez said, as we see you and hear you. I did want to touch on a couple of things. There's a couple of folks who came in to speak about the cannabis cultivating, Ms. Methopolis and Ms. Hanson. And for those who might be interested in that topic, I believe next meeting, we have it coming up as an agenda item to look at some of the interests, the survey that was done, the survey that was done in the community about the interest about that. So if you're interested in that topic, next week is a good time to come in. And I don't know if Mr. Bax is still here, but I wanted to say thank you again for coming in. I admire your dedication to the topic and the continuing of more information. The more information we get on these topics, the better. But overall, as always, I appreciate your input, and we will touch on these materials later in the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to everyone who is here in person and everyone who called in. Most of you have made comments relevant to an agenda item, so I'll wait till we get there. I won't repeat anything that my colleagues have said, but I did want to respond to Ms. Salvato, who brought up the Pickwick Project, which is not on tonight's agenda, and therefore I believe that it can be addressed. I can't speak to the state of mind of our former mayor, Sharon Springer. What I can tell you is that using all of my experience and my reading of the facts and circumstances before the council, which, by the way, unanimously voted to litigate the matter, when it came back, I could not in good conscience look this community in the eye and say I thought we could win. I could not vote a second time to deny that project because it would have been illegal, unjustified, and reckless. I can tell you with 100% certainty that that is not a matter that we would have won. But I agree that the Rancho is a very special place, and I think that there are actions that we can take, which we will discuss tonight, to preserve that community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I forgot one comment. I also wanted to express appreciation for Ms. Webster for your personal story about your experience. I think we all felt in here how difficult it is for you to tell that story and how difficult it must be for you to drop off your daughter every morning to school. So I just wanted to share a thank you for being vulnerable for us to, I believe there's probably many other parents in our community who feel similarly and appreciate your willingness to share your story for all of us to understand the seriousness of this. So thank you.
Thank you. The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, we have two items on the consent calendar tonight. The first item is approval of the City Council minutes of the regular meeting of March 14th, 2023, and the dark meeting of March 21st, 2023. The second item is approval of a buyer's order contract with creative bus sales to replace six Burbank bus transit vehicles and amend fiscal year 2022-2023 budget.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to move the consent items.
I'll second.
All right, moved by Mullins, seconded by Perez.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Tagashi?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schultz?
Yes.
And Mayor Anthony?
Aye.
For the record, I think "aye" means yes.
In pirate. In pirate. Yeah, yeah, in pirate. All right, this is the time and place for the public hearing of the city of Burbank to consider the adoption of a resolution approving an allocation plan to receive 1.8 million dollars in Home Investment Partnership American Rescue Plan Funds to address homelessness. Before we begin the hearing, are there any disclosures related to this hearing from council? I will disclose I did vote for this president, so that is my disclosure. Madam City Clerk, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Yes, do we have the complete file of exhibits and correspondence?
Yes, you do.
All right, emails, other documents, yes. And has all that been sent, oh, sorry, has it received any written communications on this matter, and have they been provided to all City Council members?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, they have.
All right, thank you, appreciate that. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Marcos Gonzalez with the Community Development Department. In a minute, we'll share the slides. So the intent of this public hearing is to provide a short presentation on the one-time Home Investment Partnership American Rescue Plan Funds, also known as Home ARP. I also want to educate the public on the purpose of the funds and present an allocation plan for your consideration. And finally, I'd like to use this time to explain how Home And finally, I'd like to use this time to explain how Home ARP creates an important resource in our homeless plan implementation. The American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law in 2021, and today I will be focusing on the American Rescue Plan funds allocated by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, known as HUD, and the funds that were allocated to the Home Investment Partnership Program. Home is the largest federal block grant to local governments to create affordable housing for low-income households. Burbank was among several communities that received the funds. The use of the funds is what you will be deciding tonight. The total is just below 1.9 million. However, for Burbank to receive these funds, certain requirements must be fulfilled. The most critical step is to submit an allocation plan no later than March 31st, which is just three days away. The purpose of Home ARP began with HUD's swift allocation and commitment to addressing homelessness. Home ARP is different from other block grants, since it must be used for persons who are homeless or at risk of housing instability as defined by HUD. In addition, Home ARP funding must be expanded by 2030 on various eligible uses. Specifically, Home ARP states that funds must serve for fundamental qualifying populations. The first would be persons experiencing or at risk of becoming homeless. The second would be persons fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking, or human trafficking. People experiencing this type of violence may have a home, but because of violence, it's unsafe for them to return back home. Lastly, other special need populations are considered eligible. Such persons can include someone who was formerly housed, like a foster youth exiting, aging out of the system, people exiting a behavioral institution, or people exiting a time-limited subsidy program, and finally, veterans and their families. The eligible uses for Home ARP are limited into, and fall into four specific categories. One is the production and preservation of affordable housing. The second is tenant-based rental assistance. Third is supportive services, and the fourth is acquisition and development of a non-congregate shelter. The meaning of a non-congregate shelter is when an individual or family will have their own private room or space. The room or space is not shared with any other individual or family. And to illustrate this type of shelter, the next slide will give you a better example. That slide's missing from my slide deck, but I did have different types of units that you could visualize on my slide deck. One was, if you're familiar with the prefabricated tiny home villages, those are considered, can be considered as a non-congregate shelter, because it will have all the amenities they need in order to live privately. The other type of shelter is a single-room occupancy, and those are almost like hotel rooms, and you would be able to have your own private quarters, with the exception of a kitchen and your own restroom. And then we have the congregate type of housing. Those are usually rooms with a large room with shorter walls that limit privacy and also have a space for congregating. I'd like to now talk about the homeless needs assessment that was conducted. By understanding the eligible uses for Home ARP, staff worked with our community stakeholders and subject matter experts on establishing the priority for the use of these funds by a way of completing a needs assessment. Further, we took a page out of the city's approved homelessness plan by involving concerned residents, by asking them how to best use Home ARP funding. This was not a requirement for Home ARP, but staff had a lot to gain by hearing from residents. Staff held two meetings in January and February of this year with the subject matter experts, and in those meetings, staff received input from public health providers, nonprofits, advocacy groups, and many service providers. I would also like to thank those 25 agencies that participated. In addition, we also spent time listening to the needs of people who are experiencing homelessness. That information was collected by surveying 20 homeless individuals. The city relies on the expertise of our partners, who understand the issues and who problem-solve During the Burbank 2023 Point in Time Count, staff asked volunteers to fill out a Home ARP survey. Staff received approximately 40 surveys. Out of the 40 collected, the development of non-congregative shelter like tiny homes or a single-room occupancy was ranked as the highest priority. The homeless need assessment wouldn't be complete if we didn't take a look at our homeless inventory of beds for the region. According to the 2022 Los Angeles Point in Time Count, there are over 69,000 people who are experiencing homelessness. The region has roughly 19,000 beds, that's roughly a 3:1 bed ratio. And to add, there are no adult shelters or emergency beds within the city limits of Burbank. Without a shelter or permanent supportive housing in Burbank, we remain reliant upon the county services to help our unhoused neighbors. In November of 2022, the city council approved a five-year homelessness plan, which included six key strategies. That included capacity building, advocacy, access, outreach, and engagement, shelter and housing accessibility, health and stabilization, and homelessness prevention. In addition, staff was asked by council to present specific measurable goals along with funding resources, and as requested, staff presented the Home ARP funding as a resource for the creation of a homeless services center that includes tiny homes or single-room occupancy units, along with supportive housing. Within the homeless plan, staff presented the need of creating interim housing within a homeless services center as a critical one-time system investment. As previously shared, Burbank does not have adult shelters or interim housing options within the city limits. By layering $1.8 million in Home ARP with other funding resources, the city is closer to having funds we need to construct a homeless services center. However, staff needs to identify funding for ongoing services. We are asking the Los Angeles Home Services Authority to assist with that ongoing need. And in July of 2022, the Burbank City Council approved moving forward with the pre-planning process to build a homeless services center. Two potential sites were identified, one being the land that the city owns on the northeast corner of North Lincoln Street and North Victory Place, and the second is 323 North Front Street, also known as the Hollywood Piano Store. For the Front Street project, staff hired an architect to prepare the feasibility studies and designs, and once completed, the documents will be presented to council by the end of calendar year. And regarding Lincoln Street, staff is currently surveying the property and will next request the county to assign a parcel number. This work needs to happen before any other work can be done. It's staff recommendation to utilize 95% of the Home ARP funding for the creation of a homeless service center. That would include tiny homes or single-room occupancy units. The 5% for administration would also be needed to cover all of the HUD compliance requirements that come with this grant. The city is fulfilling all the requirements to submit the Home ARP allocation plan to HUD by March 31st. But by submitting the allocation plan, we are accepting the $1.8 million in Home ARP funds. Upon submission of the allocation plan, HUD will review Burbank's consultation and engagement process, and we are confident we consulted with organizations that serve the qualifying populations for these funds. And the last hurdle is the submission of the Home ARP plan before March 31st. Therefore, staff recommends council adopt a resolution of the city council of Burbank authorizing and approving the submission of an allocation plan for the Home ARP funds totaling $1,893,632, filing of applications and certifications for Home ARP, and the city manager or designated official to execute Home ARP agreements and amendments with sub percipients, and amend the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget by appropriating Home ARP funds. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the council for up to three minutes on this public hearing item only. For members of the public who are here in person, please present a completed salmon public hearing card to the city clerk if you wish to speak and state your name for the record. Those wishing to call in during public comment, please call now, 818-238-3335. You will be placed in a queue. I have two comment cards. One is from Andre Dionysian, who does not wish to speak but is in support of staff recommendation. I do have a card from David Donahue, who does wish to speak. Mr. Donahue, you have three minutes.
Honorable Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, Councilmembers Takahashi, Mullins, and Perez, good evening. It was very nice listening to the presentation about, from Woodbury at the very beginning, about the 3D printed with concrete. My name is David Donahue, and I'm a resident business owner in Burbank, and I work with accessory dwelling units, and also very familiar with tiny homes. I have conducted webinars and interviews with the state's top, you know, advocates, educators, and policymakers on the subject, so I am extremely familiar with it. 3D printing out of concrete is probably one of the most difficult things you can do and is incredibly, you cannot scale, because if you took a look at the, how thick those walls were and how big that piece of machinery was, how, I'm trying to think, I couldn't get that in my backyard, and I built an ADO in my backyard. The Casita Coalition, which I'm a member with, which is a statewide organization that supports people that are working towards housing, supportive housing, additional housing, more affordable housing, recently asked its members for a presentation to the governor. There was 1,500 housing units they want to build, and I said, you know, I really can't be competitive because I'm building to the HUD code, which is Title 25, and I'm building to the CBC, the California Building Code, which complies with Title 24. Those are not affordable, and they do not work within the budget. So I asked the director, Celeste at Casita, I said, could you just tell me exactly what it is the governor wants? And he said pods, and it clicked. I can do pods. In fact, I have the resources to do pods right now throughout the state of California using the existing infrastructure, and I can do them for less than $29,000 a unit, have them delivered, set up, painted, and just ready to be connected to the infrastructure. And if anybody wanted to get into a confidential conversation, I'll tell you how I can do that, and you'll go, oh, I get it. So tiny homes refer to, by definition in the state's code, to the RV codes, it's the ANZI code, it's meant for non-continuous habitation, and I can't tell you how much time I've been spending trying to educate people on what the definition of that is. And it's very difficult for most, anybody who isn't in planning or working with the city that understands the codes backwards and forwards, to know the difference in the terminology and the lexicon, because it is a different language. I would urge council to reach out to the community members if there's an opportunity for them to provide any sort of participation in whatever tiny home village or construction happens. I will be very happy to offer my assistance or any of that of the organizations that I'm a member of. Thank you very much for your work and your time, I truly appreciate it, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. I have no more salmon cards, do we have any callers on the line? Okay. There being no further public comment, declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
None at this time.
All right, thank you. Council, we can move forward with some questions. Let's do a round of questioning for staff if we have any things that we need clarification on before we move into deliberation. Would anybody like to start us off? Yeah? Councilmember Takahashi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I have two questions, kind of general. If we were to approve this funding tonight, what would be the timeline and next steps for using this funding?
Thank you, Councilwoman Takahashi. Once we submit the home allocation plan, the funds would just have to be readily available by the U.S. Department of Housing, and by doing so, we need to submit some application and certification documents to the HUD. What we are also doing is, in addition to submitting the documentation, we still are doing our feasibility studies and our design work, so we can also understand what the total cost of the project will eventually be, so then we can also look towards funding the rest of the gap for the project.
So let me just add to what Marcos Gonzalez just said, I'm Simone McFarlane, Assistant Director. Excuse me. So the council originally designated two potential sites for staff to investigate. One was Lincoln Yard, which was called Lincoln Yard, and that is just a raw piece of land. And then the other location is the location where the Hollywood Piano resides, the 323 333 Front Street. And so we were asked to go ahead and do feasibility studies for both and to start moving ahead. So the first thing that we've done is, Mr. Gonzalez indicated in his report, is for Front Street, what we've begun is we've hired an architect to start doing some design concepts of what that would look like. At that time, the council said that they would want non-congregate housing, which means that we would have either single-room occupancy, which would be similar to like a hotel room, it would have a door, wouldn't necessarily have a bathroom in it, but it would have a door that somebody could go into a little room, lock the door at night, and feel safe and secure.
Dorm rooms.
Yeah, like a dorm room, without a bathroom. And the other thing was to look at tiny homes on that location. So those are the two things that the architect is currently looking at. Concerning the Front Street project, what we were directed to do is start the feasibility on that also, but because it's raw land, we have some things we have to do beforehand.
Sorry, just to correct you, you mean the Lincoln?
I'm sorry, you were correct, Mayor, the Lincoln project. So Lincoln Yard, so Lincoln Yard, what we have to do first is we have to do a survey and survey that land, and then figure out, determine where that parcel is, because right now it's just considered part of the road. It's a piece of, a parcel that used to be a road, and Caltrans has been using it as a staging area, they recently moved off of it, and now the city owns it, so we're going back to that. So we have to do a survey, see what that looks like, and then we have to create its own parcel, and so that's where we are in that step process. We can't do any kind of design work or anything until we know where that parcel is and how it lays out. So those are the two things that we're doing right now. This money would be set aside for whatever project we ultimately decide we want to do and what the council directs us, either the Front Street project or the Lincoln Yard. We know that both of them are going to be expensive, and we, so we understand that we want to set this money aside to be ready to be able to execute when the council decides what's going to happen. And we'll have more information that we'll bring to you in the future.
My second question. My second question is just to confirm that if we do approve this tonight, then that money cannot be used for anything else except for the projects that are specifically mentioned here, the non-congregate housing, and if we don't create non-congregate housing right away, we'll sit there and wait until we do, and we have until 2030 to do it. Am I understanding correctly?
Yes, that's correct. And one side note is that although we submit the Home ARP plan, documents can always be amended, so if wherever the non-congregative shelter just doesn't come to fruition, we have to just come back and amend that document for what we intend to use the money for.
Just real quick as a follow-up, I know we talked a little bit about either-or, the Lincoln Yard or Front Street. We say either-or simply as a notice to the public that the money used here isn't enough to complete either- enough to complete either of the projects, but that doesn't limit us at, at a future time for the city to possibly even consider both projects, right? We're not limited?
No, we would not be limited until the council makes that actual choice. And we're not limited to if something popped up out of the air of a third project, looking at a third site.
Okay.
So it doesn't limit us in any of those factors.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. So one of the questions that came up in, in looking at the surveys that you've done with a lot of the nonprofit organizations, to why is this going for non-congregate space versus vouchers or housing assistance or trying to work with some of the nonprofits that we have already to work together in providing them perhaps being a partner with us? I just, if staff can clarify, again, the reasons why we're doing what we're doing versus what the survey has intended or set in there to do.
So when we brought the homeless plan to council, there were 20 items, 20? About 20 items and 20 goals that we wanted to achieve. And in that plan, what we did is we identified different pots of money that could be used for each of these different types of activities that the council wants to achieve through those goals. And so this money was identified for, this pot of money was identified for non-congregate homeless service center in that plan. There are other monies that could be used for affordable housing in the future, such as you've heard that we are doing a JPA with the region for $21 million that we received with Pasadena and Glendale, and Burbank will be getting its fair share out of that. That can be used for affordable housing also. There's also successor agency funding that we still have in reserves that could be used. So those types of things that Councilmember Mullins you're talking about could be used with those pots of money. So what, as we as staff, we're trying to allocate certain pots that fit certain activities so that we can spread it through and achieve those goals that you have within your homeless plan. If we were to take this money and we were to use it as, say, subsidies for rent, something similar to Section 8 program, this money could fund the Section 8 program for a month and a half.
Huh.
And it would be gone. We spent, I signed a check yesterday for a million dollars, and I do that every month for the Section 8 program. So that kind of tells you how far that money could go if we do that. But we are looking at through the Regional Housing Trust that we're setting up, possibly buying down rents in the future. So say a developer is creating a moderate level housing rental price, we can come in and incentivize them to make that a low or very low rental. And so that's one of the things that we're looking at in the future. That would be coming to you at some time in the future if we find a developer that can work with us, and we, we need to get more specifics. So we're not ready to go through all of that with staff, with council, but we will be getting there.
Thank you. Just to confirm also that we will, council approves tonight to allocate the funds. We have the flexibility, maybe a year from now, six months from now, when you come back after you complete your feasibility plan to see which site would work for the city. And we all decide we want to allocate the money for another program, or we can do, you know, decide to maybe allocate it for assistance, rental assistance, or whatever the case is. We're not tied down to actually spending the 1.8 towards the shelters. Is that correct?
Correct. So say we magically receive another grant that we could apply that said it was restricted to this type of work, then we could actually move those funds to somewhere else. And we as staff are constantly doing that. We're looking for grants, and when we receive that, very often they're restricted. And so we're moving money around all the time, saying, okay, we can move this to this now, we can move this to this. I do want to add, though, this money, as you saw in the one slide with the goal and that large pot of money, that we have a variety of things that we're setting aside for this project. It's on Slide 10, I believe, the approved homeless plan goal. If you notice, there, there is a large amount of different types of funding that's allocated towards this SOHOME, our ARP, CWG, possibly PLHA funding, a lot of, a lot of alphabets in here. But you can see that there's a list of seven different items that we're looking at, putting together for this project. Those can move around also. So as, but the one thing that you do need to know is that this is only for infrastructure. This isn't ongoing services. So staff is going to still have to identify those ongoing service monies. And we've been in talks with LSA. Councilmembers, you're shaking your head yes, because you realize that there's going to be another large component of cost for this project.
Thank you. And I guess when the time comes, we will be addressing all the concerns that we have. Thank you.
Councilmember Perez?
Thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you for illustrating all of that. As a homeless service provider, I too had some questions about the dollar amount, because you know everything else that goes into managing a shelter. I have one quick question before I get into my other questions. Why would the rooms come without a bathroom? I'm just curious.
The, it, they would be laid out that way because there's not a lot of room within the location that we're looking at. And so it wouldn't allow us to have enough rooms and enough homeless located there to make it financially feasible for the service provider.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. And then my questions go on to the, the other piece. I know this is a lot for the infrastructure portion, but there's about 94,000 earmarked here for administration and planning. Can you speak a little more to what that includes?
Hi, Marcos Gonzalez, glad to answer that question. So the, with, with the funds that we received or, or available to receive, it does come with several requirements that included the development of this plan. So we use some of this money to hire a consulting firm to help develop the, the document and help coordinate some of the meetings. We also are using some of this money for the environmental reviews that will happen down the road for the potential site that we're going to need to develop for the non-congregate shelter. And then thirdly, it's going to be more of the staff time, the staff time to be able to comply with, with HUD and their reporting requirements. And it's quite extensive, the reporting that HUD requires for use of the money.
Thank you. Those were, that was really my main question. And thank you for all the work that has gone into this, and yeah.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wow, my colleagues ask really good questions. The only thing left on my list was a small bit on page three of the report about public comment. So you noted that staff solicited public review and comment on the plan for 15 days. So we published a notice in the LA Times. It was available on the city's website. Did we make use of any of our social media accounts to try to get the word out about this? I just asked because I think it was interesting, there were no comments, and I'm just a little surprised.
Sure, I'll take that one. And Mr. Gonzalez can pipe in if I miss something. So one of the things that we did, we focused on for the public comment in this aspect was the service providers, the people that are actually in the trenches. We also tied that information that we received from the public from the homeless plan. When we did that home, the whole public outreach for the homeless plan was more extensive and brought all of that information in from the public. We did, as you all know, we did a lot of outreach for that. And that really informed, helped to inform the process for, for the ARP funds. And so when you look at the public comment, you may say, where is the rest of the public involved? Well, the rest of the public was really involved at the beginning when we actually did the homeless planning, providing all that information, and then that just rolled into this ARP funds.
Thank you very much. That's all my questions. Unless my question prompted someone else to have a question. I don't know. I'm getting a sense over here to my right.
You just gave me more time to think. I actually had one more question as a follow-up to, to my question. How much of that was allocated to the consultants?
We're spending a little under $50,000 for the consultant work.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, yes.
I have a question, but I don't know if you know the answer now, or this is something we discuss in the future. What, do you know, or you have an idea what the link of the individuals that will be using the facility, how long would they stay there, allowed to be staying there, or if there's something you know now, or do we? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, when we came back in July to present, moving forward on, on a site, we presented what, what's considered interim housing, which is up to a six-month stay in, in a program with case management. And it's not permanent housing for those individuals. We, with the case manager, we expect that many will be able to transition out into something more stable or may also voluntarily leave the program, because case management and, and the services that come with it might not be what that person needs at that time. But what we would want to do is, we want to make sure that people who are unsheltered have priority for these, for these units, because it's intended to house those that were currently unsheltered. And then we can also look at families, victims of domestic violence, youth as well, who are aging out of transitional age programs, to be able to move into some of these different units that we hope to develop in the future.
And I'll just add to that, Burbank's unsheltered is our focus, right?
So case management, is that going to be run by our staff or an outside agency, or we would, we hire internal staff that would be their case manager?
One part of the, also the planning process is to release an RFP for an operator who specializes in this area that's so, that has many ups and downs and needs to understand the trauma-informed processes and best practices. So the city staff just doesn't have that expertise, would have to come from a service provider.
Thank you.
Under the, the definitions of congregate and non-congregate, if, say, a family is fleeing, say there's a parent fleeing a household with two or three kids, and they want to come and stay at a shelter, would four people as a family coming into a shelter, would they be considered a congregate family, or would they need to be split up? How would that work?
In those terms, as you said, a family unit, we like to keep the families together. So there is no separation of the children or, or a male and a female parent. They all stay together in their own unit when we consider that a non-congregate type shelter.
Okay.
And this shelter that we're talking about tonight would not include families, because you don't want to mix the families with other homeless populations. And so in our city, Home Again LA really focuses on the family, and they fill in for the, the homeless families. And they do an excellent job, obviously. And they'll be bringing some more information to you of other things they want to do to fill that niche. But this would talk about more of the, the sole person, the singular person.
So on that thread, the money that we get, obviously, this amount is not for, we can't complete a full project, either the Lincoln Yard or the, the piano store. Is it possible, and I'm thinking more likely for the piano store, is it possible to do the dorm-style situation where it's one person and still have room left over for one or two units that are a little bit larger? Not necessarily saying that we're going to focus on families, but if there is someone who needs a space immediately. And I'm just thinking of overnight, immediate kind of help.
So one of the things that we ask the architect to do is to consider doing the dorm-style inside the building where the piano store actually is right now. The, next to the piano store is a number of offices, and so those offices would become service agents, agencies that would help out. And then in the parking lot where, between where the safe is right now, the storage units for, or storage center for the homeless, there's a parking lot and then the storage center. So that parking lot in the storage area, we requested the architect to look at being able to put tiny homes in that area. And so our idea is maybe we can do a mix. Now, that's still to pan out. We don't know what the drawings are going to look like, and we'll, we'll know better when he comes back and gives us that information.
Because, oh, go ahead.
I, I was going to say, I believe we have a different program for emergency shelters. I believe there's vouchers and hotel stays, so they wouldn't necessarily use the same housing product for those needs.
Okay.
And I can speak a little bit to that. You, you typically don't want to do that. You want to separate populations of individuals and populations of families, both in the funding sense and also in the sense of like safety, well-being, et cetera, so.
Okay, all right. Okay, yeah, that was my only concern. Yes.
Sorry, one last question.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I wrote it down, and I was looking for it. So on attachment to page 18, it does indicate that we have 187 of unsheltered homeless that may benefit from this project. So my question is, are we going to give priorities? And I don't know how we would do that, but we would give priorities to our 187 unsheltered homeless individuals living here? Or are we also going to open it from other cities that may be coming here?
Thank you for the question. I think where, where we stand right now with our, these pot of funds, it is Burbank fund, funding that we're receiving and responsible for. So the idea is to use this money first for our homeless here in Burbank. And one way to be able to do that, and we've seen it across other communities, is they create zones. And those zones are to give preference to people who reside within that area, whether in a vehicle, in a park, in a, in a tent. And that's the idea with this program, as we bring it back to you. We would want you to consider zoning Burbank for these beds. And they call the term catchment zone, so it's considered, we would want you to consider using a catchment zone, so we could prioritize Burbank people first.
I would simply add, to date, we have none of these units in Burbank, and yet, the region is able to house our homeless in facilities outside Burbank. And also previously, our winter warming shelter, one year was in Burbank at the Armory, but every other year was provided in concert with our adjacent jurisdiction at other facilities. So we have been in partnership in finding housing for the homeless, particularly those who need the winter warming shelter beds. And so I would imagine also through our JPA, we would continue to work cooperatively so that we're meeting all of the unmet needs.
Okay, any other questions? All right. I'll declare the public hearing closed, and council will now deliberate. What is the council's pusher? We can have a discussion, we can do a, a motion. I just wanted to piggyback off of one thing that our city attorney was saying, and that's our neighbors, North Hollywood, Glendale, they've been taking care of our folks for a long time. And so I'm excited for us to finally step up and do the work. And that's a lot of money, 1.8 million? Yeah, okay, 1.896.
I'm always very happy to accept monies coming into Burbank, so I, I don't see how could we say no to having 1.8 million dollars. So I'm definitely supportive to receiving the funds.
The only thing I would add, Mr. Mayor, is I think there's been a lot of really great questions tonight about what this program's going to look like, and this is just the start of that conversation. This is just one very small piece of the funding pie. There's a few other things we need to put in place, but we look forward to public engagement through that process.
I just want to thank staff again. I know we're not diving deep into the conversation, but I'm glad you all had ideas at the ready, because this is long and complex things, and you're all ready and thinking about where we're going to get the rest of the funds and how we're going to, to run this, because we received public comment about this, and it is one of the most needed things. Service providers can agree that that is, you know, when you get funds like this, you want to use it for the thing that you don't have. And right now, that's a non-congregate shelter. Like you mentioned, Section 8 vouchers, that would go like this. So it's So, it's great that we can use this money for what our current needs are.
And for those watching at home, this is just a discussion on accepting the money and the restrictions that come with it. So, we'll have a bigger, more robust discussion as this comes forward.
Mr. Mayor, this isn't exactly my time to speak. But I just want to acknowledge staff that 15 years ago, we were not competitive for any programs like this because we had almost no program or staff skilled to attract this. And so, to the extent we're talking about half a dozen different programs and different facilities is really to the credit of staff who have hung in here and continued to bring these matters back to council to the point where we're able to, you know, be competitive with such a large amount of money.
Great job, everyone. Keep up that money coming in. Thank you. Thank you, Robert.
I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving an allocation plan to receive 1.8 million in home investment partnership, American Rescue Plan funds to address homelessness. Is that it?
Yeah, they got four there.
Oh, I got to read all four, okay. The submission of an allocation plan for the home investment, approving the submission of an allocation plan for the Home Investment Partnership Program, American Rescue Plan Funds, and amend fiscal year 2022 through 2023 Annual Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Number two, the filing of applications and certifications for home ARP funds totaling 1.896,632. And the city manager, number three, the city manager or designated official to execute home ARP agreements and amendments with subrecipients. And, number four, amend the fiscal year 2022 through 2023 budget by appropriating home ARP funds.
All right.
Second.
Thank you.
And to be clear, for everyone at home, that number is 1,896,632. Thank you.
Just going to say, I think Councilmember Mullins got a feezy just doing the second there.
I'm happy to read the whole thing again.
No, I think we got it.
I can put you through that pain.
Let's do a vote.
Madam State Clerk, let's do the vote.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Tagahashi?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Vice Mayor Schultz?
This is an official term, heck yeah.
And Mayor Anthony?
Aye.
Thank you.
That's right, all right. Thank you. We have four reports to counsel this evening. After the staff's presentation, city council will proceed with in-person public comment only. Please fill out a yellow public comment card if you're here in the room and hand it to the city clerk. Speakers will have three minutes to speak on that item at the conclusion of the presentation, so long as that speaker has not spoken on that particular item during the original first public comment period. The first report is a consideration of a potential Rancho-specific plan. Mrs. Shipra Rajesh, Senior Planner in the Community Development Department, please present the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I have the presentation, please? Good evening, Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, and members of the council. My name is Shipra Rajesh, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. Tonight, you are being requested to consider development of a specific plan in the Rancho neighborhood of the city. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide an overview of different components, including cost, timeline, and associated, sorry, timeline associated with preparation of a specific plan for the Rancho neighborhood. On October 3, 2022, the city entered into a settlement agreement for a housing development project at the Pickwick site, located at 921, 1,001 West Riverside Drive. The request to consider development of a Rancho-specific plan is being presented to comply with the terms and conditions, specifically condition number 13 of the settlement agreement, which requires the city to consider the preparation of a Rancho-specific plan prior to March 31, 2023. Currently, the city does not have a specific plan for the Rancho neighborhood. In 1993, the general plan land use element was amended to include policies for the Rancho area. Although referred to as the Rancho Master Plan in the Land Use Element, Resolution Number 23927, provided as attachment two to the staff report, added the Rancho policy text and diagrams to the land use element itself, rather than creating a separate planning document. Further, concurrent with the general plan amendment, the zoning code was also amended to create subareas for the Rancho neighborhood, similar to the subareas identified in the general plan. The zones and development standards for Rancho neighborhood are incorporated within Burbank Municipal Code. This slide provides a broad overview of the existing boundaries of Rancho neighborhood as identified in the Burbank 2035 General Plan Land Use Element. The Rancho area is depicted in green on this map and includes two incontiguous portions as indicated on this slide. This slide provides a more detailed view of the existing Rancho neighborhood boundary. The northern boundary of the neighborhood is made up of West Alameda Avenue, Oak Street, and West Valencia Avenue. Towards the east, Rancho neighborhood is bound by South Victory Boulevard. South Keystone Street makes up its west boundary, and it is bound by the city boundary towards the south. Additionally, a small portion towards the southwest part of the city, bound by South California Street, Ravel Court, and Bob Hope Drive, is also included within the existing Rancho neighborhood boundary. This slide provides a list of items that can be included in Rancho-specific plan if the council decides to move forward with consideration of the specific plan. The items listed on the slide have been identified based on feedback received from various stakeholders, including the council. These include establishment of objective standards that comply with state law and align with the community vision for the Rancho neighborhood; incorporation into the specific plan of bike, pedestrian, and equestrian design guidelines consistent with those found in the city's complete or streets plan; identify parcels for rezoning to comply with applicable state and local housing land use laws; evaluate potential historic district and equestrian overlay options within the Rancho-specific plan area; and assessment of potential impacts to city services and infrastructure from any proposed specific plan development and implementation. This slide provides an illustration of the Equestrian Trail along Riverside Drive and Main Street, which has been approved as a part of Pickwick Project Settlement Agreement. And the design of the trail is consistent with the complete or streets plan. Possible expansion of the Equestrian Trail network within the Rancho neighborhood that goes beyond the bounds of this project can be considered as a part of a specific plan. It is our understanding that city transportation planning and public work staff are working collaboratively to evaluate possible options to expand the network, as well as seeking out potential funding sources towards this effort. The anticipated cost of developing Rancho-specific plan is 1.55 million dollars for the first year, with a subsequent recurring annual cost of $150,000 for staffing. The cost associated with preparation of Rancho-specific plan will include expenses associated with project management by the city planning staff and consultant services for the preparation of the specific plan and the environmental impact report document as required under the California Environmental Quality Act; cost associated with undertaking an extensive community outreach process that includes multiple community workshops, walking tours, and public hearings; cost associated with technical studies that are part of the EIR development process, and include amongst other things cultural survey technical study, water supply assessment, and sewer capacity study. As previously noted, the total project cost would, cost includes the cost for additional staffing that will be required to enable the research, preparation of EIR, and community outreach associated with preparation of the specific plan, as well as the cost for staffing to undertake the ongoing implementation of the plan. Ongoing implementation includes ensuring future development complies with the new objective design and development standards, as well as mitigation measures that may arise from the EIR process. Based on the processing time of ongoing specific plans that include Golden State Specific Plan, Media District Specific Plan, and Downtown TOD Specific Plan, the total time expected for completion of a potential Rancho-specific plan would range from 24 months to 40 months. The anticipated timeline for Rancho-specific plan accounts for the time associated with consultant selection process that includes distribution of requests for proposals, as well as time associated with preparation of the specific plan; conducting community outreach and engagement; environmental assessment, including preparation of environmental impact report; and preparation of technical studies, including a cultural survey technical study and utility studies. Rancho-specific plan can establish state-compliant development and design standards to guide future development and preserve as much local control as possible, as well as facilitate sustainable development. The anticipated cost to complete the specific plan and environmental impact report would be around 1.55 million dollars. This includes $150,000 in recurring staff cost for project implementation and maintenance. And the anticipated time to complete the specific plan would range from 24 to 40 months. Staff recommends that the city council provide direction and input on possible next steps on consideration to develop a Rancho-specific plan. This concludes my presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, do we have any public comment on this? Oh, here we go. Renee Karapedian. Hello. You have three minutes.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, and City Staff, good evening. My name is Renee Karapedian. My wife and I are commercial and residential property owners in Burbank. And about a year and a half ago, we bought a property in Glendale, right adjacent to Burbank, in the Rancho on Riverside, formerly known as Silver Spur Saddle, Silver Saddle, Silver Spurs Stables. And we were fortunate to meet some of the most wonderful and truly genuinely caring people in the Rancho. And they helped us to guide us. And with their guidance, we were able to, about 70% of the property we are preserving to stay as a question. And the rest, we're going to be developing kennels for dogs. And I'm here to show my support for, hopefully, you guys made the decision to consider the question, forgot what it's called.
The Rancho Master.
Rancho Master.
Or specific plan even.
Yes, specific plan. Thank you very much.
Yeah. See, I got it wrong even. All right, that was my last comment card. Okay. Oh, wait, oh, here we go. I haven't closed it yet.
I said I was going to speak.
That's right. All right, former Mayor Emily Gable-Letty.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilwomen. I support initiating the update. I think that objective standards for zoning, but particularly subdivision, which are completely absent from the administrative code, and design standards will be an important contribution to improving the area. And I want to thank staff member Rajesh for her very good presentation. If you look at the entire administrative code, you'll see matters about the Rancho embedded in various sections of it. So, it's just not a matter of land use and zoning. Someone mentioned historic preservation, and I saw that in Ms. Rajesh's presentation. And I'd like to say it's a good thought. However, save time, current preservation law is not structured to protect a community like the Rancho. Historic land uses are what the Rancho values. Current law focuses on the look of a building. It's called materiality in the area of historic preservation. And the Rancho would not qualify for that kind of historic district because it's all about the cultural landscape and the historic uses of the cultural landscape. And it's not necessarily about whether the house facing the street is Spanish or some other style of historic architecture. Therefore, we could break new ground by advancing the plan to preserve the historic cultural landscape of the Rancho and implement it. You could call it the Rancho Heritage Agricultural Plan. But you do need to look beyond just the materiality of the buildings. Urban agriculture is a good idea, someone mentioned that earlier. If defined, it could be a new zoning designation for the city of Burbank and also for the city of Glendale because we share the river bottom together. You know, council's empowered to step in where the developer was not required to. This is for you. You can initiate a traffic circulation study and a traffic impact study now to address the needs for traffic calming prior to the opening of Pickwick. You do not have to wait. And that study can serve as a basis for specific plan purposes. It is not lost. And finally, I hope you would agree that Rancho residents have a special expertise from their years of experience raising, managing, feeding, and caring for horses. So, here's my ask. Give the residents a meaningful role in developing the requests for proposals or the requests for qualifications so that all the consultants who bid are asked the correct questions to reflect their understanding of the nuances of urban horsekeeping and access to the bridge and access to the park. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and that's my last comment card. Counsel, do we have any questions of staff for this? Yes, Councilmember Mullins?
Actually, the question will be for the city attorney. If you can, or maybe staff can answer it. Discuss a little bit about what the historic for the Rancho would look like. What does that mean, historic preservation? And based on former Mayor Gable-Letty's insight information that she just talked about.
She's got so many titles, I wasn't sure. I guess Rancho resident, not airport commissioner.
Commissioner and former mayor, former council member.
But I would agree with her that historic preservation, there are neighborhood contexts, but often they are architectural contexts. There are structural contexts like this building, like our historic courthouse building. So, they're very architecturally built, environment-driven, and not really culturally, unless something is very specific to generally an architect or something else.
And it doesn't necessarily affect land use, historic preservation?
No, well, some of the factors would include the original purpose of the building, the integrity of the design, whether the building is still being used in its original context. There's a lot of factors that relate to the building and its relationship. But it's, at its end, the restrictions on what you can do once you identify something as historic has to be in compliance with Department, the Secretary of the Interior standards for modification of historic structures. So, to the commenter's point, it's not well-suited for a neighborhood, and that's something that we'd have to look at. There's really not, to my experience, which has been a couple decades here in Burbank, we haven't really looked at, aside from neighborhoods, again, historic contexts relating to the works of particular designers in that neighborhood and not necessarily the cultural. So, that's, we'd have to see what that looks like.
And correct me if I'm wrong, once this declared historic, not that I know anything about planning and zoning, but I've been around also for a little while. If anyone wants to try to change the color of their house or remodel or take a permit, isn't that a difficult process to go through? that a difficult process to go through because it's declared historic? So they're not allowed easily or maybe not at all to do the work that they want to do?
Yes, but not in this context. So they're kind of apples and oranges. Under the current framework for historic resources, something can have historic significance if it's even eligible. But again, those are criteria that relate to a structure, the use of the structure, and maybe the grounds around the structure. It's very specific to a structure and a property and the historic use, not an entire community, unless you're talking maybe Williamsburg, you know, something like that, which still has a modern commercial component. But this is not Williamsburg in that same context where, you know, there was the founding of, you know, something commonly recognized. It's not Plymouth Rock, you know, in that context. So we don't know what it would, what the process would be. It also wouldn't be a quick process. And then the other issue is, in terms of when the specific plan comes forward, if we swap out different types of land uses and it changes what types of uses could be built there, there is a no net loss law in California for housing density. So when that plan is adopted, in that action, it has to include the balance of housing yield. And so whatever the geography is for the plan, and that's also flexible, the housing has to be balanced in that same action, no net loss. So if we take an area that's manufacturing that may allow residential, and we're going to turn that to a different use that doesn't, well, we need to find a place for that residential. So it could be on some commercial corridor, it could be mixed use, maybe a little further north along Alameda, or along Alameda, I won't suggest anything else. The plan still has to give consideration to that. A plan has to give consideration to infrastructure, which is something that has been a very key issue with the three concurrent plans right now, because as the council found with adoption of the housing element, in order to meet the housing, the RENA number, there are areas where that could stretch our existing infrastructure. So we're having to make sure in these plans that we have infrastructure plans that can accommodate that growth. So at the same time, if we're changing the housing densities through this, you know, new plan, we also have to look at the infrastructure, where it is, what improvements might need to be made.
Just to add to that, Scott Plumbek, Planning Manager. In our code, we do have a section that talks about procedures for designation of historic districts. There's a process that we would have to follow to determine whether the Rancho would comply with those standards. Typically, it would require us to do a historic survey, do community outreach to determine whether it meets, met the standards to be determined as a historic district. So our code does lay it out, and if directed by council, we would include it as part of the process for the specific plan update.
Thank you, and I think the important component you mentioned is the community outreach. I think maybe we use the word loosely sometime, historic preservation, historic district, without knowing what consequences will be coming once you, if you do qualify or follow the guidelines, because it has consequences to it. The other question I have, which few speakers have mentioned, about changing from an M1 to an AH, which is code, zoning code, so is that something that you will discover with the studies that you're going to be doing, or that's something you already know?
I can start with the response. So rezoning process would be part of preparation of a specific plan. As a part of that, we would identify the parcels that would be a good candidate for rezoning. However, having said that, the agricultural or farmland, farmland zone is typically associated with farmlands, farming activities, and other uses in conjunction with farming. So this neighborhood is already developed and urban use, so going back to farming, it doesn't seem feasible. So if at all rezoning happens, it would be something that would be more conducive to the existing character of the neighborhood.
If I may, with that said, that is something that we could look at through the specific plan process.
Who is this speaker?
The speaker is Fred Ramirez. I'm the Assistant Director. I work with my colleagues here in planning. I just wanted to make sure, that's something we can look at. So clearly, there might be some issues that we need to address through that process. The other thing, it's not just a rezoning. I believe this may require a general plan amendment to change the underlying land use designation, to switch it from industrial to something else, whether it's open space or ag. So if that doesn't exist and we have to create a land use in combination with it, that would also be part of the process. But everything is possible, it's just going through the process of the specific plan. And to not beleaguer the point on the historic district overlay or an equestrian trail overlay, I think what you're hearing is, all that can happen, but what we really need to do is engage the community, including as I believe one of the speakers, Ms. Emily Gable-Letty, noted that the community is going to want to be engaged in the process even of considering what the tasks are going to be for a future consultant. And I, we have firsthand experience because we actually went out there during the preparation of our AD regulations, if you remember. And we got the benefit of actually going to and meeting with community members. Back in that day, we would anticipate we'd be doing the same thing, including walking tours. I'm not going to go so far as to say I'd ride a horse with them, but I would at least go out there and walk around.
You said, you said anything's possible.
Anything is possible, but you'd be taking me back to when I was about four or six years old.
Well, we'll monitor you, we'll make sure you're okay. And I appreciate the community outreach component because, again, there might be misunderstanding, there might be also clarifications on things that need to be done. The other thing that I want to mention that, before I really tell staff or talk to staff about what possibilities, what we can do, the other thing I heard also from the speakers, Circle K, that came up more than once, and I know it's not on the agenda tonight, we're not discussing that, but I do like to have staff quickly tell us that this, what is the project, what's going on, if the city attorney is okay with that, just because...
I'll do it so that I know I'm okay with it.
Okay.
The Circle K Ranch, which is 910 South Mariposa, is an SB 35 eligible project as determined by the council. On what date? December 2022?
Yeah, yeah. When they submitted their notice.
December-ish 2022. They're going through the statutory process for an SB 35 project, which includes tribal consultation. I believe that's the phase that we're in. And it will come back to the council under our ordinance for consideration of consistency with the code and design review. And it is not on the agenda, and it is proceeding ahead at a faster speed than a specific plan could possibly proceed.
Thank you, and I think this addresses all the emails, concerns, and calls that, and also from our speakers tonight, with the assumption that there's, that we're able to perhaps include that in our discussion tonight. I wanted to clarify that to everyone who spoke tonight. So as former Mayor Gable-Letty has stated, in regards to, and other speakers tonight, in regards to traffic calming and in regards to the study to do, conduct a study, being that the Pickwick project will, I don't know when they're actually going to start the construction, but it's something very important in the neighborhood. We're looking at in the study, perhaps if we can do it earlier, prior to the 24 to 40 months that we're looking at, is it possible that we can do the traffic feasibility study or to take a look if we can do that, implement that first, prior to the beginning of the Pickwick project?
Mayor, if I may. Fred Ramirez, Assistant Director in Planning. We can undertake, clearly with direction from council, any technical study. One thing that maybe, maybe just so that we don't bifurcate analyses, if there is any, because Ms. Rajesh mentioned the equestrian trail and work that's being done for Pickwick, and there may be even some consideration of expanding that network based on some of the feedback we heard from the community members, that I think if we looked at the equestrian trail as kind of maybe a jumping off point for a study, and we kind of looked at it in combination with potential impacts through a traffic study in combination with that, that might be a good way of doing it because ultimately, if that network is extended, there could be things that we need to look at. So I'm not sure if council direction is going to be anywhere in that vicinity, but if we do that, then I think by tying it to the network of the equestrian trail expansion, maybe beyond the bounds of the current project, we could probably get some pretty good information that would help support any future specific plan effort. But that in and of itself is going to require us to have to come back with an analysis of what the demands on staffing are going to be. And unfortunately, I just have to say, our transportation planning team and also our principal engineers in traffic engineering and whatnot, we've pretty much taxed them with three specific plans, so I just want to be fair to them and not overstate. I don't want to write a check with their checkbook, but I know they're pretty slammed, so it will still take a little bit of time to go through the process of preparing a scope of work.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If I could expand on that. So the item before you this evening is an item that we were obligated to bring to you. Not that we didn't want to bring it, but we were also obligated to bring it under a settlement agreement within this timeframe. Given the price tag of this and the timeliness, there may be other options to address different issues at different times in the Rancho. And I don't think staff is prepared to go through all of the other things that aren't agendized, but this council discussed an item last month, perhaps, it all blends together, but called Vision Zero. And, you know, focused on communities and zero pedestrian and cyclist fatalities or traffic fatalities. So there are other types of plans that would relate to the public right-of-way. And so it would specifically not relate to the land use plan, but the land use plan, and as Assistant Director Ramirez indicated, it has to tie in with vertical consistency with the general plan. So it's connected in a way where it has to kind of move together. The Vision Zero has to relate to our mobility element, which is our transportation plan and the general plan, but we already have a complete streets plan, which kind of dovetails. So there may be other options to the community's point where we could focus on equestrian, pedestrian, cyclist safety in a way that, you know, there's currently the path kind of on a little further west on Riverside. There may be other traffic calming measures that could be part of a Vision Zero type plan that wouldn't look at land use, but would look specifically at the right-of-way, which the city controls irrespective of any project that locates on any property. The city can modify and adjust the network to meet its objectives, you know, whether it's, whatever those objectives are related to transportation. So that wouldn't be a specific plan. It would, it would be part of a specific plan when the specific plan was prepared, but they wouldn't necessarily have to be done at the same time. It would be best if they were done at the same time. But just to that, because you considered Vision Zero at a different meeting, and now you're talking about a specific plan, there may be different combinations of things that could happen at different time that ultimately would result in the same work product, you know, a new cohesive plan for the Rancho.
Yeah, to that point, just Councilmember Mullins, I, I'm not comfortable tonight giving direction to staff on how to bring us back the specific plan, because I know, I mean, we're going through some specific plans right now. Each one of them, we went through it differently. There's grants out there, it comes from previous land use, it comes from previous plans. So I would, you know, if we do move forward on this, I want to give them a lot of leeway on how we get there.
Absolutely, and the intent of mentioning the item is not to give specific directions because, God, no, I understand you have a lot at work, and I understand that we're throwing a lot of things at you every council meeting, and you come back with it and you do a great job. I think it's important to understand as a package what we're looking at in that area, and one being the traffic mitigation, or, you know, because we're anticipating the Pickwick projects to start. Again, I don't know when it's going to happen, but I'm assuming maybe in the end of the year or closer, early next year perhaps. So there's this one item, how you bring it back and how you package it, I'm going to leave that up to you. The other thing is, of course, the trail that we heard tonight about the continuation of the trail, that's another item that I know we've heard from the public, that I know it's a desire project that the Rancho area would like to see. So how you bring that back to us is important, but I think it's expressing the desire, what we would like to see, and I hope my colleagues can see that these are some of the projects that we've heard more than once from the Rancho residents. And so bringing it forward, I leave that up to the experts to tell us how that's going to happen.
Speaking of experts, let's get our community development director.
I see him standing there.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, Patrick Prescott, Community Development Director, good evening. We want to give you everything that you believe we need in this community, and we often agree. And tonight, I've heard from the community, and I've heard email, read emails, received letters in the mail, and it sounds like the Rancho community really needs to talk about their vision for their neighborhood going forward. And we believe that although compelled by the settlement agreement to talk about it tonight before the expires, we believe it's time to have that conversation and do that through a specific plan. That specific plan will take time, and as you know, we're working on three significant other specific plans. So we probably wouldn't be able to take that, a specific plan, up until 2024, honestly. We hear conversation about the equestrian trail extension. There's one being built, as you know, as part of the Pickwick project. And I think an equestrian trail or trails and other amenities would be really great and really cool for the community, really sends a message, this is an equestrian neighborhood, but also perhaps increases safety. I'm not an equestrian, so I'll leave that for all of those folks to opine on when it's time. If the council directs us, we have a, we have a request for a first step report on the extension of that equestrian trail. If the council chooses to make that decision tonight and say, come back with timeline, funding, costs, et cetera, we can do that, not immediately, but I want especially the community to bear in mind that the engineers and transportation planners who would be working on an equestrian trail are currently working on a pet and bike bridge over the river at Bob Hope, the Chandler Bike Extension, the San Fernando Bike Way, Vision Zero, all of the bike and pet improvements related to major developments, as well as the three specific plans, specific plans that encompass hundreds of acres of planning. So we just, we will just have to try to figure out priorities with the council if that direction is given. But I think it's all great stuff. It really is. It's exciting, really exciting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually have broader questions kind of coming out a little bit.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Thank you so much for this information. Thank you for the presentation. And one of the commenters mentioned a previous Rancho Specific Plan in 1993, and in this staff report, a specific plan was discussed in 2008, but it was decided not to pursue that and to leave the general plan as is and use that as the, to inform the area. And I'm wondering, what is the benefit of pursuing the specific plan versus doing what we did in 2008, which was to leave it as is as a general plan?
Thank you, council member. So a specific plan would enable a more comprehensive study of the neighborhood. If you were to update just the Burbank municipal code, that would only address the zoning standards, the development standards. But given that the other requirements or other components within a specific plan includes mobility, streetscape, landscaping, and then including the objective design standards for the building itself, a more comprehensive way to implement the vision of the community and also the goals and policies within the general plan would be through a specific plan, as opposed to simple general plan amendment or zoning text amendment. So that would be the benefit of having a specific plan.
Great, thank you. And a follow-up question is, once the specific plan, if it were, you know, if we were to approve this tonight and the specific plan eventually was, you know, created, how does that integrate? Uh, approve this tonight and the specific plan eventually was, you know, is created, how does that integrate with the general plan?
Um, specific plan is a tool for implementing the goals and policies within the general plan. So it it's basically going to link the implementation of the policies for the Rancho area within the general plan. And the future development proposals on land. So that's how it's going to facilitate, implement the policies. It has to be come. Consistent with the general plan. That's how um a specific plan works.
Okay, great, thank you. And if we did not approve this and did not pursue a specific plan. And we would stay with the general plan as it is now, what would be the impact of that?
Um, staying as it is, Rancho neighborhood still has its own standards in addition to. The underlying Burbank Municipal Code standards, but um. I guess the impact would be the same as the state laws rolling out all these new um regulations, for example, the SB thirty-five. So in absence of uh any change, a developer can come in and pursue housing. Although I I do want to say that with specific plan two, we can't um reduce the density without accounting for it elsewhere within the city. But um the growth will continue as it is and uh with a specific plan, the vision would be. There'll be an opportunity for the community to chime in and um have a say in how they want to see the growth um within the neighborhood.
Mayor Fred Ramirez, Assistant Director Planning, um, just to piggyback onto what Ms. Rajesh mentioned, and I think specifically with Pickwick. Uh, and also now with nine ten Mariposa is with SB thirty-five, we can only apply the standards that are in place now. And when you look at both of those properties, we were applying in one instance, commercial requirements. To a housing, a multifamily housing project, and in the case of nine ten Mariposa, we're talking about industrial standards. When we have a residential project. So the more important thing is, one, there was a lot of visionary work done in the past plan, whether it was. Some will debate whether it was incorporated or not, but the reality of it is we have BMC standards, Burbank Municipal Code standards. That aren't up to par to deal with the new reality of what the new housing bills and the new land use regulations are. In addition to that, there it, there is an opportunity in the process of engaging the community. Of having a better understanding of how the community functions in today versus in nineteen ninety-three and what the new reality may mean to how we preserve. The context and the character of that community. So like any planning document, it's not intended to be kind of frozen in time. It's supposed to be a living, breathing document. And this is an opportunity, whether it comes about, unfortunately, through, you know, this kind of a very passionate discussion. Uh, it creates an opportunity to reassess what what the community vision is, and and that's changed in some way, shape or form. So. I think it creates that opportunity. The other thing is um. We want to also incorporate what currently are the complete streets, complete our streets plan guidelines, especially for equestrian trails, but also for other bike and ped. Amenities, and the best way to do that, especially with the new laws coming down from the state, is to make those codified objective development standards. And and that's the other piece of the puzzle that goes into the specific plan discussion.
Um, follow up, Mr. Ramirez, sorry, before you go. So to your point, then, are, um, is it safe to say that? Uh, by doing the specific plan in 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 this in new environment that we have with SB thirty-five, AB twenty-eleven, all the other housing laws. That doing the specific plan will provide some level of determination on our part of how we want to see the Rancho move forward. Um, there there will be limitations, obviously, because of the requirements from the state, but this will allow us some level of seeing where we have. Determination and where we don't and how, where we can make make our own, distinguish our own um uh vision for the area. In a more um uh direct way rather than waiting for things to come down from the state. Would you say that's true?
Yes, I think uh Vice Mayor and actually many of the council members have said, but I remember uh the Vice Mayor mentioning. That we need to do things to be more proactive. And in that form, we determine how much local control within the feasibility of the law that we can undertake. And I think you've all expressed that in in many different ways. So I would say you're right, transparency to the developer. Of what are the requirements and also transparency of what the community vision is. And in combination with that, telling the state or making a stronger argument to the state that, hey, we have our planning house in order. For these communities and we're doing all these specific plans, so let us plan for our community. And maybe that's a way of responding back because ultimately without it, we're doing a lot of reactionary work. And unfortunately, that's frustrating a lot of the community thinking, what is going on? How did you let this happen? The reality of it is. You got to spend some money on the proactive side, on the specific plans and the staffing. To not only it build out those plans, but then also to implement them in the long term.
One last question. Um, someone, uh, one of the commenters had mentioned the EIR. And I wanted to get a little bit more about uh the EIR. Uh, why is it necessary? Why is it part of doing a specific plan?
Sure. So under the California Environmental Quality Act, there are different levels of review from an environmental standpoint. I think you've all been accustomed to us bringing things forward, or you see the Planning Commission approving things that are either statutorily exempt. Uh, they're categorically exempt under certain criteria, like an infill project or an addition to a house. Those are typical exemptions. There are things that are ministerial where there is no SEQA review and we just approve them with the building permit. But then as you go up in the potential impacts of a project, you can get to a point where we have to do what's called an initial study. To review and see what impacts to, potentially to the environment can occur, the result of which could be a declaration that there is no impact. Or you can have a situation where you have mitigation measures that reduce those impacts to less than significant, and you hear the term mitigated negative declaration. If we get to a point in that analysis and we determine that the impact is significant enough that we cannot mitigate it. Uh, typically or requires additional review to determine whether the impact is significant. Then it moves you up to the top tier, which is the Environmental Impact Report. All three specific plans that we've brought forth to date. Have the level of review and analysis and the technical studies that have resulted in us prepare, preparing environmental impact reports. I think all three at this point are programmatic. EIR is, and they're going to help in the facilitating streamlining in some instances. But also it's the robust study and and the beauty of it, and I don't know if the attorney will agree with me, but. That is the top tier. After that, pretty much, it's unless they're going to challenge your environmental document, they'll go to court. But more often than not, if we've done our due diligence, I think that we're successful. So I. I would venture to say, in light of the complexity of all the different issues that we've heard. Even consideration of certain technical studies that have to be done, including do we have enough water supply? For, do we have enough uh utilities to serve the purpose? What are the impacts to um city services? What about to schools? All those things. What are, what are the greenhouse gas impacts? What are the air quality impacts? Uh, I think there's enough there that I would argue my opinion based on my experience on four specific plans. Is any IR is probably the point we'll start. But of course, when we go through the proposal process. We will ask that question of prospective consultants is, do you think this can be done? With something less than an EIR and we'll evaluate that, but but we're never just going to say, let's automatically go to an EIR, but I'm thinking just based on the experience. And the level and magnitude of what we're talking about. This is a lot of acreage. It's not one property. It's a lot of acreage, and we've had EIRs for. Uh, one lot with forty-six units. So I I think we're there, but you know, I'll defer to the city attorney if he wants to add to that.
I I don't disagree with Mr. Ramirez. Um, he gave you a very. Kind of structured um view of what SEQA is, but let me just rephrase it this way. SEQA is a mandatory public engagement process on potential environmental impacts. And so most often, um, there's an exemption that applies to most routine matters. SEQA makes you go through to determine whether the proposed decision is large enough. That it would require substantial review. And so to Mr. Ramirez's point. On every sizable project in town, including every specific plan, the conclusion after the initial. You know, two-week evaluation of a checklist is that an eh, an environmental impact report, which is the largest. Type of analysis you would do is warranted. So we predict any IR would likely be warranted. SEQA kind of sets forth the framework, but in its essence, it is a requirement to disclose whatever the potential impacts are. There is an obligation to mitigate those impacts and um consider alternatives. And so it could be alternative land use plans, alternative street plans, but it's it's a. It's a mandatory uh companion that for those agencies that don't consider environmental effects, it compels them to go through that analysis. So. Again, we wouldn't necessarily predetermine that, but our collective experiences, it's probably going to end up being an EIR.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Just a reminder, we do have three more issues on the docket for tonight. Any other questions? Any other? Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just have two questions and um I may have more comments later, but. I ask the community to bear with me. They're a little technical. They might require the city attorney, but I think they're important. So just to put a finer point on it, question number one, if hypothetically, not talking about a particular property. But if we had a property in the Rancho area that was zoned industrial or zoned commercial and was undergoing Senate Bill thirty-five, it filed a notice of intent. Even if we could lighten it quick, start the specific, the specific plan process tomorrow, correct me if I'm wrong. They're already vested and are held to the standards that were in place at the time, so it would have no impact. It could not be used as a basis to deny that project under SB thirty-five.
So uh first, yes, right? They would be um. They would be rated against whatever the requirements were in place. They would be judged. Against the requirements in place at the time they applied. So yes, they could beat us clearly on the specific plan. Additionally, our actual, the plan that actually allows greater housing development is the general plan. So you could revise the specific plan, adopt it, put a fork in it, it's done, but the general plan actually still allows housing. So you would have to also change the general plan uh to change the designation that allows twenty units per acre in that hypothetical area.
Thank you, and that is exactly where I wanted to go. So not to, you know, peel a scab off of an old wound, but what we saw with the Pickwick. Was it was not zoned for residential. However, it was identified as a potential residential site in the general plan. So my question is, we're talking about a specific plan. That's great. But without amending the general plan, does it really solve the problem? I I guess what I'm trying to get at is, we can absolutely do a Rancho specific plan, but do we also need to be talking about? An amendment to the general plan or how does that?
If you think there's a problem, a specific plan would not solve that problem. You'd also need to do a general plan amendment. For that.
And so what, as a follow-up to that, if I might, Mr. Mayor, what would be the process? Let's say we undergo the development of a specific plan and we identify sites. In the Rancho that are susceptible under Senate Bill thirty-five to being converted to residential. Could we at a later point in time say, okay, we want to proceed with a general plan amendment? Is that something that you would advise we give direction to count to staff? Now, what's the most efficient way to do this?
So in terms of packaging, which is often what my department does, we're like gift wrap at Macy's. Um, that you could package a general plan amendment for the Rancho area. And 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 what that would look like would be basically like errata, slip page changes for that area. You'd have a new land use map. That would have new land use designations uh for the Rancho that would um mirror what was in the specific plan. And so they would, so when you adopted the housing element, you also adopted. Uh, two other amendments, two other mandatory element amendments, the safety elements.
Safety element, yes.
And social.
Environmental justice.
Environmental justice element. And so in a general plan, those are among mandatory elements, and we amended only three. Out of eight. So you could just amend portions of the land use element that need to be revised. To dovetail with the specific plan, and you would simply initiate that at the same time. And so when they're adopted, you would have, we would electronically replace pages and put the general plan back together. And then it would, it would match the specific plan. So we could do that, and in fact, that will probably need to be done. For the other three specific plans that are already underway. So we'll have to put out a new. Uh, we'll, we'll do a general plan amendment and a map amendment, and that action will be just another action when we adopt the specific plans.
So, sorry, Mr. Mayor, just want, I just want to make sure that we're giving staff really good direction tonight. So. If our intent, if the intent of the council majority is to do the outreach to the community, and let's say there are sites in the Rancho. That are sacred ground that we don't want to see converted for that purpose. It would see, what I'm hearing from you, what it seems is, we would want to give the green light to do the specific plan tonight. But we would also want to make sure that we're including with that proposals to amend the general plan. So that way there would not be an inconsistency between our zoning code and the general plan designation, and therefore it would not fall victim to Senate Bill thirty-five.
Yeah, so there would be a second step report that would bring forth the different actions. On a more technical basis. Uh, would would tell you all the different entitlements. So the biggest entitlement is a specific plan. And then it would have coupled with it the general plan amendment, and they could identify, generally speaking, what elements of the general plan would need to change. Uh, not, probably not the policies, but it would specifically be the land use and the land use designations and maybe just the plan. But they would detail that in a second step report that would also include the uh uh a. They're not going to have a more refined fiscal impact because we kind of have to, that's, that's what our specific plans are costing us these days. But they would bring it together as a second step with more refinements to whatever it is you're requesting tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Perez, any questions to staff? Any?
No, you all answered my, you all asked all the questions that I had. I just, I'm really glad you mentioned that because specifically SB thirty-five says. That in the event that objective zoning and your general plan or design review sta- uh, standards are mutually inconsistent. That trumps everything, which is what has been affecting the Rancho neighborhood in particular. So it would really be, like you mentioned, an edit to our general plan. And this Rancho specific plan. And along with that, I, I guess one question I just had, just to clarify. This new, you know, Rancho specific plan, and thank you, Councilwoman Takahashi, you asked a lot of the questions I I had in queue. Um, but just to, to be very clear, in creation of this plan, since I'm I'm just thinking timeline-wise. Would we be able to incorporate a lot of the effects that are coming from the housing that's being built, right, into that plan? Or would this be done before then, before construction?
Could, could you expand on a question?
So um, none of the housing is built, right? And the residents were concerned that the housing wasn't evaluated the traditional way we used to evaluate projects.
Right.
A hundred unit project would have normally taken us three years to entitle, and we had. You know, very short statutory time periods. The way we do that analysis has changed, but when you do the specific plan, they'll do, they'll probably do. Uh, this would be in the second step report, and I don't want to make anybody have to answer questions that no one was prepared to answer. But they would do a whole background analysis. When we did the general plan, the first document staff produced was a technical background report. Which talked about our infrastructure, talked about our usage rates, talked about our water supply. And then we built the plan on top of that, the environmental on top of that. So yes, they would look at that. If the housing's built. By the time the plan is initiated or by the time the environmental document is done, then that would be background. If the housing is not the 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 projects that have been approved or are in the pipeline. If they haven't been built, then they'll be in a section called cumulative impacts, and they'll say approved entitlements. So we've had for more than thirty years, we've had um master plans for each of our studio lots. Specific plans for each of our plan developments, for each of our uh studio lots. And some of them are almost completely built out, and one of them is only seven percent built out. And so when we have done citywide analysis or other large project analysis, we've taken. Large parts of that entitlement and loaded them in under cumulative impacts so that we're always showing the council and the public. What the cumulative effects could be if all of this growth was built. So it, those projects will either, if they're built, they'll be part of the baseline. If they're not built, they'll be folded in under cumulative impacts. And somewhere in the traffic model, um, depending upon how they do it, either the vehicle miles traveled. Or maybe some congestion factors or um Vision Zero factors, whatever those would be. Would would show up in tables and they'd be able to show what the effects of those projects are.
Great, thank you, and sorry for the confusing phrasing.
Okay, um, this has been a long time coming. Anyone got a uh motion they want to put forth? Yeah, Mr. Vice Mayor? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I I just wanted to one more time thank everybody for their input, and I think that. While this was a very late and technical conversation, it's important that we get it right because if the goal is to protect the Rancho. We don't want to do a half measure that doesn't actually protect. protect the Rancho. I am going to say before I make the motion, though, that I do think that if we have the pickwick opening, I'm just going to guess maybe sometime next year, and we have this trail, I've heard it called the Trail to Nowhere, I really do think that we need to prioritize that complete our streets project, and really make that happen in advance of the specific plan, because otherwise, we might not be starting, it could be years before that trail's in place. So my motion, if it's seconded, is going to contemplate that that would be done while staff is preparing and waiting to get to the development of the specific plan and general plan amendment. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to direct staff to develop a Rancho-specific plan and any accompanying general plan amendments to the Burbank 2035 general plan. And second, I move to direct staff to, in advance of that agenda item, begin the work of preparing the design and funding options for a protected equestrian trail in the Rancho.
I'll second.
May I add to that amendment to also look at traffic mitigation for the study for traffic mitigation prior to the pickwick?
I would accept that, I think what I heard from staff, wouldn't that be included, though, as part of the trail design?
I would not call it traffic mitigation related to pickwick.
Sorry, sorry, yeah.
Well, not related to pickwick, but for the project, so to do a traffic study for the area.
As part of the design and construction of an equestrian trail, to look at other traffic hazards that may affect that trail and mitigations, or something like that.
So it would be done, and it would include the pickwick property, but it would not be exclusive to that property, it would cover every area in which the trail would theoretically go?
You wouldn't want it to be limited to just that property, because there are other properties, you would want to include all potential build-out impacts. If we're building, if the city's going to invest more than $3 million on an equestrian trail through the neighborhood to a bridge, long-term, it's going to want to account for all potential impacts to that path of travel, and so you would want to factor both approved projects and potential future projects.
Do you want to reword your amendment, or you want to?
So I do, okay, I agree with the traffic.
Can I give you a suggestion?
Yes, but I do want to ask a question prior to moving forward, because you mentioned about the city paying $3 million for the trail?
Well, I don't know what the, there's been no design, so when the second step-
He didn't say we pay for it, he said investing, wherever we get the money from.
Because I just, I wanted to make sure that caught my attention, that we want to bring it up.
So part of the motion right now is to direct staff to prepare a Rancho-specific plan and companion general plan amendment, and bring back details or second step report on design and construction of an equestrian path, right?
Design, construction, and don't forget the funding details.
Okay, design, construction, funding.
Thank you.
Okay. There have been some numbers talked about casually, but it likely will be seven figures to build out a path that runs from either, is it Elm? Or Alameda, down Main, turn the corner, someone's investing the money to build it out, okay?
Thank you, someone is going to.
The community somehow investing those funds, my point being, whatever that number is, hopefully you remember the number I said, and we'll see whether I was high or low. You want, it sounds like you want this design and construction and funding options to include analysis of traffic hazards along Main and Riverside, including approved and potential future projects in that area.
Correct.
Okay.
And that was the makers of the motions, understanding and intent, too.
What about the second?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Moved by Vice Mayor Schultz, seconded by Councilmember Perez. We'll take a vote.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yep.
Councilmember Tagahashi?
Let's do it.
Vice Mayor Schultz?
Yes.
And Mayor Anthony?
Yuppers!
Thank you.
Oh my gosh, okay. Next is an update on the project and consideration of the development potential for the downtown Burbank transit-oriented development specific plan and associated general plan amendment. Mr. Leonard Bichette, yes, principal planner, Community Development Department, please present the report. I pronounced your last name right, yeah?
Bichette.
Did say it, all right.
It's French.
All right.
Good questions.
All righty, well, good evening, Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, and our new council members. I would like to say it's nice to be here in person. Our specific plan project started right at the beginning of the pandemic, so all of our outreach and updates to council and the commissions were done virtually, so it's good to finally be in person with you guys. The main focus of tonight's presentation is to, I'm sorry, my name is Leonard Bichette, and I'm the principal planner with the Community Development Department, and tonight we also have members of our consultant team, Vinayak Barn and Juan Gomez Novi, they're from the firm Molampalazoides. So tonight we wanted to present to you our updated development potential, but we also wanted to kind of give you a little bit more in-depth project update, just for the benefit of the new council members that are here this evening that weren't around when we did the first update back in 2021. But given the timing, I'll try to move through that as quickly as I can, so we can get to the meat of the presentation. Can you please bring up the presentation? So there are two planning documents in place that guide the land uses for downtown Burbank, the Burbank Center Plan and the San Fernando Boulevard Master Plan, adopted in 1997 and 2012 respectively. While both plans were effective at the time of adoption, they're no longer effective to help the city address the housing and affordability crisis that it's currently facing. The city applied for and was awarded grants from Metro and HCD to update and combine both plans to create a new downtown specific TOD plan. The city of Burbank ranks high in terms of cost of housing and has one of the lowest vacancy rates in Los Angeles County, making it difficult for Burbank's workforce, individuals, and families of low and moderate income levels to find affordable housing in the city. The city's 45,000 residential units are far below the number needed to house the 130,000-plus people who currently work in Burbank. To meet this scarcity, the city council has set a goal to introduce 12,000 new dwelling units citywide by the year 2035. This shortage of housing and associated lack of affordability is also an issue of statewide concern. The state has mandated that more housing be produced locally. Burbank's Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA, allocation requires a production of 8,772 units over the next eight years. Over the course of this project, the city has engaged the community and decision-makers on developing a shared vision and guiding principles, and will continue to engage the community and decision-makers as we work collaboratively to create a plan that establishes objective standards and clear community expectations for future responsible development that builds a safe, beautiful, and thriving downtown, while also achieving city council affordable housing strategies and meeting our state mandated housing production numbers, and reflecting Burbank's unique approach of maintaining local control while helping to build and protect our neighborhoods. This slide shows the specific plan area, which is approximately 965 acres, and is generally bounded by Lake Street, Victory Boulevard, and Mariposa Street to the west, San Fernando Boulevard, and Andover Drive to the north, Glen Oaks Boulevard, and Fifth Street to the east, and Tahanga Avenue and the city boundary to the south. It's divided by the Interstate 5 freeway and the Southern Pacific Railroad right-of-way. I'll now provide you with a project update. The specific plan preparation process consists of five key phases: discovery, visioning, alternatives in plan preparation, public review, and adoption. As shown in the slide above, the discovery and visioning phases are complete, and the specific plan project is currently in phase three, which includes the development of land use alternatives, development potential, and work on the drafts of the specific plan and associated program EIR. Adoption of the specific plan and certification of the EIR is tentatively scheduled for early 2024, and if we get your direction and feedback tonight, we can continue working on preparing a draft of the specific plan that would be available for public review in the fall of this year before we work on approving it. Since it's been some time since the project vision statement and guiding principles were reviewed and finalized through council and the community, I would like to go over both today. Given the time that we have, I'm just going to read the vision statement. So our vision statement for the project is as follows: A vibrant, urban, transit-oriented, mixed-use downtown of beautiful, tree-lined, multimodal streets that are safe and accessible to all, inviting parks and plazas, and beautiful buildings that together create an active and bustling central district surrounded by inviting and genuine neighborhoods, a place where people truly want to live, work, shop, visit, and play. In terms of our guiding principles, I won't read them, they were included as an attachment in your staff report, and we will make sure to put them up on the project website, but in general, they were divided into five categories that focused on neighborhoods, districts, and corridors, buildings, public realm, streets, and parking. So these slides just have them, as they were received by both the council and by the community. The development of the vision statement and guiding principles allowed us to create the project framework, which looks to create a downtown of diverse neighborhoods, districts, and corridors, a well-connected downtown, north to south and east to west, a street network accessible to all, a public realm of streets and parks, and parking for a mixed-use The first component of the plan framework is a downtown of diverse neighborhoods, districts, and corridors. I will define what each of these is in the context of the plan. A neighborhood is a safe, beautiful, mixed-income place, primarily for living, that also accommodates work and some retail activity. It is defined by a quarter-mile walking radius from a center, which can be a park, school, store, or civic building, and it's organized around a public realm of streets and parks. A district is a mixed-use place primarily for commercial and retail activities that also accommodates living. A corridor is an important commercial or mixed-use thoroughfare located between the neighborhoods and districts. A local example is the Magnolia Boulevard Commercial Corridor in the city, which is lined with local serving shops, restaurants, offices, and services surrounded by residential The map on the slide shows the plan area broken down into a series of neighborhoods and districts and corridors. The downtown district is shown in magenta, the north San Fernando Boulevard district in purple, the north San Fernando Boulevard neighborhood in blue, the south San Fernando Boulevard neighborhood in red, the south San Fernando Boulevard district in brown, the Lake Street neighborhood in gray, the Olive Avenue district in orange, and the Victory Boulevard Creative and Industrial Corridor in yellow. The circles depict a quarter-mile walking radius or pedestrian shed, while the Burbank Downtown MetroLink Station is in the center of the plan area. The next component of the plan framework is a well-connected downtown. Currently existing east-west connections across the railroad freeway and the Burbank Channel and to the MetroLink Station are substandard, and in many cases unsafe for pedestrians and bicyclists. In addition, north-south connections between downtown and the north and south San Fernando Boulevard neighborhoods are incomplete or hampered by mega blocks such as the Burbank Town Center. Improving these connections through the introduction of transportation and aesthetic improvements will encourage downtown residents and employees to bike and walk to transit, to daily activities, and to work. The next component of the plan framework is a street network that is accessible to all, which include an interconnected and diverse network of safe streets, short block lengths, streets that accommodate all modes of transportation and provide on-street parking, short pedestrian crossings, ample sidewalks, and generous streetscapes that allow flexible use of the streets safely to allow safety for all users. The next component of the plan framework is a public realm of streets and parks. Streetscape elements being considered in the specific plan include street shade trees, street furniture, landscape, sidewalks, and building design features such as awnings and arcades. In addition, a variety of parks and plazas need to be conveniently located and accessible to downtown workers, residents, and visitors. Green infrastructure that includes the use of stormwater capture and cleansing of native plant and tree species can also be integrated into this public realm. The last component of the plan framework is parking for a mixed-use downtown. The specific plan will propose a number of parking design and parking management strategies that will promote a vibrant, walkable downtown and ensure enough parking is available as downtown grows over time. This slide presents several key projects that are envisioned to unfold over the plan's horizon. They include, but certainly are not limited to, the development of housing, redevelopment of the Burbank Town Center to add housing and office space, and the Civic Center properties to build a new public library, additional city office space and retail space, and housing through a P3 project or public-private partnership project, improvement of bicycle and pedestrian connections to the downtown MetroLink Station and throughout downtown, enhancement of San Fernando Boulevard, and encouragement of new connections to the Burbank Town Center, and management of parking to ensure enough is provided and does not spill into adjacent These photos here just show different parts of the existing downtown districts, neighborhoods, and corridors, shows what they look like today, especially the areas that need improving, and then the pictures show what it could look like through the adoption of the plan and implementation of the development standards and objective standards. So the pictures on the left are for the downtown district, and the pictures on the right are for the north San Fernando Boulevard district. This slide shows the south San Fernando Boulevard neighborhood on the left, and then on the right, we have the south San Fernando Boulevard district. And then this slide depicts the Olive Avenue district on the left, and then the Victory Boulevard Creative and Industrial Corridor on the right. Thank you for bearing with me through this extra-long project update. Now I will discuss the revised specific plan development potential. The general plan dictates the development density, which controls residential development, and intensity, which controls commercial and industrial development. The map on the left shows the existing general plan land use designation applied to the plan area, while the map to the left depicts the proposed general plan land use designations. The changes include the creation of two new land use designations, the west downtown commercial industrial and the city center mixed use. Two existing land use designations will be renamed, including downtown commercial to downtown mixed use and south San Fernando commercial to San Fernando mixed use. The next two slides will provide discussion on these proposed changes. During recent discussions and analysis, a concern was raised as to preserving longstanding industrial areas that currently include commercial and private industrial uses. City utility sites such as the Burbank Water and Power's Magnolia Power Plant and the city's wastewater reclamation and treatment plant on the western side of the specific plan area between Interstate 5 and Victory Boulevard. Furthermore, the surrounding neighborhood is currently developed with a variety of industrial commercial uses, ranging from media-related uses to heavy industrial manufacturing. To avoid incompatibilities within existing and ongoing industrial sectors, as well as ensuring the long- To avoid incompatibilities within existing and ongoing industrial sectors, as well as ensuring the long-term viability and continued use of the commercial and industrial uses within the planning area, staff is proposing that the new land use designation, West Downtown Commercial Industrial, would prohibit residential development of all kinds, but would allow both commercial and industrial development with an F A R of one point zero. The new land use designation is depicted in dark blue on the map on the left. Both maps show a one thousand-foot radius around the B W P Magnolia Power Plant. To comply with state law and ensure no net loss of residential units by prohibiting residential development within the West Downtown Commercial Industrial Land Use Designation area, adjustments are also proposed to the eastern portion of the specific plan area. These changes include the creation of City Center Mixed Use that would be applied to the Burbank Town Center and Civic Center Housing Element and specific plan redevelopment sites that allows a maximum residential density of one hundred and ten dwelling units per acre and an F A R of two point five. Furthermore, the existing downtown commercial land use designations would be renamed to Downtown Mixed Use, which would be applied to additional properties. The South San Fernando Commercial Land Use Designation would be renamed to San Fernando Mixed Use and would be applied to additional properties located along the North San Fernando Boulevard, thereby increasing the residential development potential of those properties from twenty-seven dwelling units per acre to forty-three dwelling units per acre and an increase in F A R from one point zero to one point two five. Instituting these changes to the Burbank twenty thirty-five general plan land use designations would ensure no net loss of residential development consistent with state law as depicted in the maps above. The existing residential development of the affected properties is eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven units. With the proposed general plan land use designation and density changes, it is nine thousand and two units, which results in a gain of thirty-five units. Working off of the amendments to the Burbank twenty thirty-five general plan land use assumptions, the project team revised the specific plan development potential and created three land use alternatives that will be studied in the program E I R. These alternatives are the preferred project, the increased growth alternative, and the no-growth alternative. Depicted on this slide is the preferred project alternative, which studies all housing element opportunity sites, shown in gold, and specific plan redevelopment sites, shown in purple and orange. The residential development potential for these sites was calculated by multiplying the site acreage of each applicable opportunity site by the maximum density allowed by the general plan. Furthermore, the general plan's T O D, or exceptional project density bonus, of a maximum of a twenty-five percent increase in density was applied to all properties within both the housing element and specific plan redevelopment opportunity sites. It was assumed that the full commercial F A R allowed by the general plan for each site generally would not be achieved. Applying these metrics results in the development potential of nine thousand five hundred and thirty-seven residential units, five million two hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and twenty square feet of commercial and industrial space, and six hundred and twenty-five hotel rooms. While work on the specific plan has progressed since twenty twenty, several state laws have passed to streamline the development of housing, including the state density bonus program, which allows developers the ability to exceed base densities established in the general plan by up to fifty percent in exchange for the development of affordable housing. The increased growth alternative, which is depicted on the slide, will study additional growth beyond the preferred project development potential, which includes the maximum fifty percent state density bonus law density increase applied to all housing element opportunity sites and specific plan redevelopment sites on top of the preferred project densities. Furthermore, additional infill sites with base density plus the maximum fifty percent state density bonus law density increase are included on the increased growth alternative development potential. The increased growth alternative will be analyzed to the same level as the preferred project in the E I R. Applying these metrics results in a development potential of sixteen thousand two hundred and forty-two residential units, five million four hundred and thirty-five thousand one hundred and forty-five square feet of commercial and industrial space, and six hundred and twenty-five hotel rooms. Lastly, the no-project alternative will be studied and assumes no specific plan project, but assumes the build-out of housing element opportunity sites as described in the adopted housing element and the existing Burbank twenty thirty-five general plan development potential. Applying this metric results in the development potential of three thousand four hundred and fifteen residential units, three million twenty-five thousand seventy-nine square feet of commercial and industrial space, and two hundred and five hotel rooms. In summary, this slide depicts the project alternatives that will be studied in the project's program E I R. As noted, the preferred project is consistent with the city council housing goals to provide a range of housing which includes new opportunities for affordable and workforce housing consistent with the general plan twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine housing element, thereby helping the city facilitate the development of housing to meet our current RINA obligation of eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-two units. While at the same time, this proactive effort of the council and community helps the city maintain local control and how the downtown will develop over the life of the specific plan. This concludes my presentation. I have provided my contact information on the screen for the benefit of the community. Um, you may also continue to get project updates and learn more about the project on the project website. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I have one speaker card from Andre Danysean.
Hello again. Uh, this is gonna be a little bit less gloomy than my earlier public comment. So this is very exciting. Uh, I love to see an update to the specific plan and and thank you to staff for the update, uh, really great stuff to read through. Um, yeah, so I have a couple of questions, actually. Uh, maybe for staff or for council to look at. Uh, regarding parking, we have a ton of parking structures in downtown Burbank, and it seems to just keep amplifying the problem. It's like a, you know, build one more lane kind of thing. So I'm very interested in what parking strategies or parking mitigation strategies are being explored, and I'd like to hear more about that, what's currently being looked at, what's gonna be looked at, what's on the table. Um, and also wanted to see if there's been discussion or if it's included in any of these alternatives to look at parking minimums in the downtown area. Uh, that's all other than that. Yeah, this is very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Danysean. Uh, does staff have any response to uh, public comment?
Uh, yes, I would say that, yes, we are studying the parking capacity of downtown. Um, there are a number of public lots and structures. Um, so we're actually going through the process right now of updating the numbers. Because our specific plan, like I said, started right at the beginning of the pandemic, we weren't able to get a consultant team to get out there and get numbers just because the state of the world at that time, there wasn't really anybody going out. And so we were relying on numbers from the twenty nineteen study that was done. But we're now doing an updated study to, uh, now that we're back to full capacity, to see what the impact will be and what changes vis-à-vis if more parking is needed, or if we have enough parking, or what other strategies we would need to implement to get better parking management in downtown.
And as a follow-up, are there any state bills that address parking minimums that would affect the downtown plan, close to transit kind of thing?
Yes, many of the state bills do provide parking requirements. So, um, you know, many of the housing bills do allow cities to use the state density bonus parking minimums, which lowers parking considerably.
Okay.
As part of our study, we developed a uh, kind of parking requirement that would be applied to many of the commercial and retail uses as a single number.
Okay. Uh, any other comments from council or uh, questions, sorry, questions of staff? I I have I have one question. There was a caller earlier who was talking about hotels. Is it possible, I know right now we have, I believe it's a three hundred-foot limitation on building hotels near single-family or R one zones? I think, um, so here's my question. Is it possible to do an entire specific plan uh, that allows for hotels uh, as discretionary use rather than by right in the commercial uh, land use?
Well, currently hotels are allowed uh, through two processes. If they're within three hundred feet of a single-family or residentially-zoned property, they would go through a conditional use permit process. Um, if they're not within three hundred feet of a residentially-zoned use, it would go through a development review process. Our development review process is a quasi uh, public review process. It would still require us to uh, prepare the project. If there are any uh, associated environmental studies, we would undertake those studies. And then we would also, as we get close to getting ready to approve the project, go through a process of holding a community meeting before we make a decision on the project.
But correct me if I'm wrong, the developmental review process is not is not uh, guaranteed to be discretionary for the council's purview, right?
Right. It it it's a director approval.
The Scott Plan, the Plan Manager, both are both processes are appealable. The development review process is appealable to the to the Planning Commission, and then that decision can be eventually appealed to to the council.
Sure.
But generally, uh, the development review process is done at staff level, approved by the C D Director.
Okay. Uh, yes.
Um, tell me if I'm going in the right direction. This is Fred Ramirez, Assistant Director in Planning. If there's an interest in um discretionary review of hotels, um, there is. We've been talking about this because there's also some other discussion regarding, um, we're doing a study currently to look at living wages for construction workers and whatnot. And we're looking at our um increased development potential that's allowed under the city's general plan for um transitory development projects and exceptional projects. So if if there's an interest or concern um, that there's some component of a hotel project that you want to address, uh, I would suggest that maybe um, as we go through the development process, if there is a particular concern to flag it and then see how in the specific plan, we can either call it out in the sense of looking at a community benefit component that can be addressed. Because here's the thing, the whole purpose of the specific plans is to move us away from uh, kind of a, an unknown, like going through a P D discretionary review process.
Right, right, right.
Has a lot of unknowns, right? There's a lot of things that we used to do through that process that would, as Mr. McDougall noted, would take projects five to seven years to come to fruition because it took us forever. However, under the specific plans, the idea was that you would provide all of what you wanted from the developers in a set of development standards and guidelines and a list, a menu almost of community benefits. And if they pulled that lever, i.e. they wanted to do something of increased development, then there could be a community benefit. You could define what those community benefits are, and we're in the process of bringing some of those forth to you. So I would, I would suggest if if we, if the intent is to create a process and in the process define certain community benefits, to me, that that makes it a lot clearer of what the expectations of any developer coming forth. If we just say, um, let's go through a planned development D A process, and yet there's not an understanding of what's expected, then it's it's kind of contrary to the point of looking at streamlined. I just wanted to point that out as if you're, if there's a discussion about a particular issue that we heard, because I know tonight we heard someone from Unite Here reference uh, making things P D D A to negotiate things. Um, I would, I would venture to say that maybe it's clear, like we're talking about living wages, to look at maybe a community benefits component, where we're very clear on on what we're expecting.
Well, for me, for me, you know, the condition use permit and the appeals thing, um, it seems to be on the back end. And so, yes, I would like to see upfront what we're expecting. But at the end of the day, still have a discretionary approval because the the major issue for me is that the state is mandating we build housing, you know, we're in a housing crisis. Uh, we're not in a hotel crisis. Uh, so I I if if someone's commenting to us, and not to say that we don't need more hotels in Burbank, we want to be a tourist destination, absolutely. Um, but I would personally, I would like us to have the final say um, on on specifically hotels.
Okay, if I could.
Yeah.
Um, the council's power to exact from any private property owner is limited by the rules of nexus and proportionality.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and each land use that you have in your jurisdiction serves a specific function or multiple functions. For instance, your hotel rooms not only provide lodging for guests who may come to town for a wedding, for a resident or someone who chooses to use your facilities. Um, I've also um uh, been at the train station and seen people walking from the Marriott Residence Inn to grab the train to go to downtown Burbank. So you're providing temporary transient, right, transient occupancy for employees of your businesses as well. So those properties do serve a function. And by all means, the city absolutely has the power to um, exact uh, objective standards and development conditions. But you wouldn't want to set up a code where if the impacts of two uses are the same, you have a process for one where you don't, where the property owner doesn't know the outcome. You know, because the standards aren't objective. But another one, where the standards are objective and they can build, meeting the city's form requirements. This is me articulating a vertical setback. Um, so that if you had an office building that had the same F A R and envelope as a hotel, that the office, the architect for the office building could figure out what the standards were, but the architect for the hotel couldn't because the process was open-ended. So the open-ended process that we have right now are for plan developments which are unique in a way that they don't fit our rules and standards. And we compel, and and there's a there are valid arguments why we should decouple the P D from the D A. The the development agreement, the statutory development agreement gives them a vested term of that plan development entitlement. Um, but still, the goal of of building a new plan would be that your property owners, all of whom pay property tax uh, in this jurisdiction for and exactions to help build the infrastructure needed to support them, can still figure out at the end of the day what they can build under what conditions. And then um, to Mr. Ramirez's point, staff is, um, there are certain reasons why you might want to incentivize more density right near a train station. You know, or near our heaviest transit corridor, which is actually not the train station. I think it's still Victory Boulevard near Burbank because you want to incentivize the jobs right there where the transit's most dense and has the most frequent. Um, so all I'm saying is, I wouldn't say for this use, we want it discretionary. So every time it has to come to us, you'd still want your conditions to have nexus and proportionality.
Sure.
And if you can, uh, devise it so that builders of the same square footage with relative impacts can still figure out within the same timeframe what they can build and subject to what conditions.
So so I guess my question is, we have a C U P for three hundred feet within a residential. Are we gonna keep that with this new plan? Or are we getting rid of that as well?
I would say hearing the comment tonight, um, it's a, it's something that we continue to look at, and as we really the goal is to get to a point to where we can allow these uses to come in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and really, our our focus is not hotel rooms. Um, and I just wanted to point out that our E I R is only looking at the potential of about six hundred hotel rooms. Our initial development potential was looking at one thousand three hundred and seventy-four hotel rooms.
Right.
So if in the plan area, we have six hundred hotel rooms built, and somebody comes in and wants to overshoot that, we would have to go in and do additional analysis to that E I R to study that. But I will say that it is something that we will continue to look at. Hearing the concerns that were raised by the Speaker of United. Hearing the concerns that were raised by the Speaker of Unite.
Well, my question is, I, I don't think, I don't think going a full discretionary review is necessary, but expanding a C U P to the dis, to the entire district, I think would add in just a little bit of extra review that I'm looking for, but not to the point where it's going to be, you know, a blockage or a, a barrier. So for me, just expanding that, I think the whole district, because you never, you know, we're going to, we're potentially putting in housing and mixed use in a lot of these areas. So it's like, for me, just doing a district-wide C U P just for hotels and, and then outlining that, outlining that on how that would work.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if, if the underlying, so, so I guess the question is, if the underlying objective is a certain type of public benefit for that type of project, the question I would ask is, is there a way that we can quantify that so that there's a trigger? So that if the form is, if the form, right, that you see as you drive through Burbank is satisfactory, so that they can look at the plan and they can meet that form? And then the concern is, well, for this certain type of job, we have this objective, this value. Is there a way that that could be articulated? Or for hotels over a certain size? You know, our hotels tend to build or have been building very small conference space. So that really the convention center is the only one that has any significant meeting room. And all of the other ones have like a small boardroom size. You can't really have a significant event. And, 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 and there might be a lot of tools you want to look at. But if you have an objective, then we should state that and see if there's a way that, that there's a trigger. To Mr. Ramirez's point, maybe it is an extra 25%, but here's the community benefit. So they get a higher yield, but they have to give the community something for that. In the case of S B 35 and A B 2011, there are the prevailing wages and skilled and trained workforce. So, I mean, the legislature has saw fit to tell the builders, for this streamlining, you give this. First and foremost, an enforceable agreement with the tribes with ancestral connection with the area.
Right, right.
And we have two, and everyone who's doing an S B 35 project is agreeing to that. So there's an enforceable agreement. And then they have the prevailing wages, skilled and trained workforce. So if we can be clear in that way and that satisfies your objectives, then it's good for the development community because they can see that when they come in rather than kind of a closed door, that they kind of have to negotiate with staff to know what's on the other side.
Well, I, I like this idea, and I would like to see that option. But I, if, if it's okay with council, I'd still like to see an option, possible option where we go with the C U P district-wide and try to make that as streamlined as possible. So let's, I, I'd like to take a look at both. That's all moving forward.
We're good with that, yeah. No, C U P looks at the land use and then we can talk about the other component.
Okay.
It could still be part of the discussion. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, guys. Oh, sorry, anybody else? I monopolized that at the beginning, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll be quick, Mr. Mayor. I'll just, I'll, I'll back you up on this. I would be curious, because the point is just to note in file tonight, we're not taking any action. I just have one brief comment, and that is, I, I, I do think that it's a policy choice for us to say that we prefer certain types of uses over others. Doesn't mean that you can't, you can't put a hotel in there. But if we're really serious about digging out of our housing crisis, I think it's perfectly sa, safe to say residential by right. And if you want to put in a hotel, we're not saying that you can't, but it does kind of express a policy preference for residential first. And then I, I would be curious to see what staff finds. C U P makes sense. I believe Glendale and Santa Monica are looking at a development agreement. I'd just be curious to know when you come back, what are other communities doing and what your recommendation is for the best fit for Burbank?
Thank you. Anyone else? Casper Takashi? Uh, you can do questions. We're kind of open-ended here. This is Lucy Goosey.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me this time to speak. And thank you for the presentation. I just have a few things I'd love to see incorporated in kind of the general vision and guiding principles. And please let me know if this resonates with you all as well. And maybe, maybe it's in here and I'm, you know, it's almost 11 o'clock. So I'm getting tired of not seeing it. However, I would love to see, like on number two, neighborhoods, districts and quarters in Section A, number two, incorporated in there is indicating that all ages and abilities as well. Because I think one of the things that came up in the, the community discussions, because I attended several of the, the specific plan discussions with the community, is the need for making sure that families with strollers and young children have spaces down in the, in the area that's being proposed. And then also folks with different abilities, so who might need use of a wheelchair or who, you know, have other abilities. So I just want to make sure that as we're looking at that, that those are kept in mind. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, no, I love that. That's great.
The other thing is number five, talking about, I love the idea of creating housing that's close to the convenient access to jobs and shopping and services. That's a great, it's right in, in alignment with my personal preference for 15-minute cities. I also like to see the other way around too, where, where services and shopping and available, and open spaces are available where housing is. So we've got, you know, some housing that's been built downtown and other areas. And some of those I have difficulty accessing, grocery stores, pharmacies, that kind of thing. So making sure that both directions, that the, the housing and the services are all close enough together when we're going through it, that, that, that folks, it does really reduce the, the travel time. And then the last one, number 12, talking about pedestrian and bike connections, which you know is a huge one for me. Oh, that's, hold on, uh, safe streets, safe streets for walking, biking and riding transit. I would love to have a little tag in there to, to add in alignment with our complete streets plan and in alignment with our Vision Zero, if that's okay. Cool, all right, thank you.
I have one thing I'd like to see, and this coming back an option. So there's a little neighborhood on the north end of San Fernando, between the freeway and where San Fernando curves. It's a bunch of little homes in that kind of a curved area. If there's a potential for us to increase the density in that neighborhood, and here's why I want to bring that up. A lot of the stuff that you mentioned that's coming, that is potentially on the way, is going to hit a lot of the north side of this district. And so for me, when I look at this little neighborhood, and a lot of those are single-family homes, if I'm not mistaken, right? The little, you know what I'm talking about? The, I forget the name of the street that's right there.
Yeah, it's the, it's the little triangle, I think, just between San Fernando Boulevard and the freeway.
Yeah, right at the very north end, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a combination of single-family and multifamily.
Yeah.
I think the majority of it is zoned multifamily.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
And, but there's only like a handful of duplexes and quadplexes. It's mostly single-family home, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
I, I would like to see an option when we come back, if we can upzone that and what that would look like, how that would interact with the commerc, because the front of it along San Fernando is commercial. And so if there's an option for that to be upzoned and do mixed use, just bring us back, maybe we'll look at it if it's possible. I know it's a little bit cloistered, but I think there's an option there to make that, that space work. Otherwise, what's going to happen is everything else is going to be built out. And then we've got this sort of low-density neighborhood where there's a lot of transit and commercial and things are happening. And we're kind of stuck with this underdeveloped area. So that, that's what I'd like to see, if that's okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I thank you for really great presentation. And I'm very excited, looking forward to actually seeing some of these pictures come alive. Thank you.
I'll take a motion? Yes? They just know the call, right?
Yeah, it's just feedback.
Oh, okay, there you go. Okay, great work, everybody. Thanks, guys. All right. Third report is an update to the City Council's July 26, 2022 firearm regulation direction. Ms. Jill Vanderbord, Senior Assistant Attorney, Senior Assistant City Attorney. Please present the report.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Jill Vanderbord with the City Attorney's Office. I'm here tonight with a brief oral report. I'll summarize my written report, and I will make it brief to allow time for questions and, and discussion. We wanted to come back tonight because three of the five of you weren't sitting in these same seats when we initiated these actions or when, when you initiated these actions for staff. So on July 26, 2022, the City Council directed staff to work on a list of short, medium and long-term items to address community concerns regarding firearms. On that same evening, council initiated its first immediate short-term action, which was an urgency ordinance that imposed a temporary moratorium on the establishment of new or replacement retail businesses selling firearms or ammunition. The intent was to allow city staff time to look at broader zoning regulations, licensing regulations for firearm retailers. That came back to council on August 23 for an extension. And that moratorium is currently set to expire on July 24 of this year. Meanwhile, staff has completed two shorter to medium-term projects. And I have staff here for, for questions on any of these items because I'm sort of the, the bearer of the message, not, you know, we've been working collectively. The police department worked on a gun buyback event that the council directed them to perform, successfully recovering 58 weapons. They were exchanged for gift cards. And police were able to reduce the availability of unwanted firearms in the community through that, that, that day. Police has continued in efforts for community advocacy and outreach through a gun safety page that they've created and are keeping up on their website with information about state laws, safe storage. They have a free lock program that they provide on request. And so those are sort of the earlier short-term things that, that staff has already completed. We continue to make progress on two other medium to longer-term strategies. The gun violence restraining orders. A really interesting state law from 2016 implemented this sort of civil restraining order program that allows police and city attorney's offices to temporarily, temporarily restrict a person's right to keep firearms or ammunition for one to five years. This is before a crime is committed theoretically. So, and it's, and it's a relatively immediate solution. The police department has successfully been utilizing this tool as they learn about it, as they educate themselves about it. And simultaneously, the City Attorney's Office has been out in the community explaining this tool to nonprofit groups as well as connecting with the San Diego City Attorney's Office, which has really been very on, on the, the front edge of using this tool. They've mapped out a program. They have a grant to support their training other, other cities. We successfully, through, through my office, brought in a training, a half-day training last week that was well-attended again by police staff. And we're continuing to work on ways to promote that tool to the community and then use it where, where it's appropriate. We also have established a working group with members of police, the Community Development Department, both Planning and Building and Safety, the City Attorney's Office, and then the City Manager's Office, to look at those longer-term asks of council on the land use and zoning regulations for firearm retailers, looking at sensitive uses, buffer zones, potentially caps, acknowledging all, you know, what zoning regulations should or could apply to firearm retailers broadly. And that, again, was the purpose of the moratorium that you initiated immediately, July 26 of last year. We're also looking with Building and Safety at additional licensing requirements for firearm retailers. And council directed staff specifically to look at the Giffords Model Ordinance, which we have been using to sort of do all of this work as a framework. We've been in contact with the Giffords Law Center to try to unpack legally what we create for the city, looking at other cities and what other cities have done or, or will do or intend to do. And then council also directed that staff look at the San Diego ghost gun law. And so thankfully, the state law has almost entirely, through comprehensive new legislation, regulated the ghost gun industry in California. So those took effect, some immediately when the law came into play June 30 of 2022. And then some more regulations in January of this year, and then still more in January of next year. Those allow the city police to investigate, to, to charge, to, to arrest for any violations of those provisions. The laws regulate ghost gun kits and key components, now treating the sale or transfer and manufacture of both completed and unfinished frames or receivers the same way that the law already treated the sale, transfer and manufacture of fully assembled guns, further requiring a license to manufacture firearms by printer and imposing a series of stringent requirements that you, essentially you cannot even possess a ghost gun. So that, that's all the progress that, that we've made based on council's direction as to those short, medium and long-term items. And with that, I will defer to comment and, and questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any in-person public comment on this issue? No? Council, if it's okay, both Vice Mayor Schultz and myself were here at the last meeting. So I just want to get our comments out of the way first. Thank you for the update. Appreciate the work that we're doing on this. And I know it's taken a lot of time, staff energy. And we had a pretty broad scope when we started this. We had a big catch-all. We try to look at a lot of different stuff. And so thankfully, we're, we are, we're looking at really, really big, big, big ideas here. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Schultz?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Vanderbord. Good presentation, good report. So I'm really, I'm really excited and curious to hear what my colleagues are going to contribute to the conversation because there's probably things we didn't talk about last time. I just want to talk a little bit about where we have been though and give just one council member's feedback, and then we'll see where the discussion goes. So my understanding, you know, from reading the report and your presentation tonight is that certain items like the ghost gun ordinance have, have sort of been mooted to an extent because state law is now in effect. So, and that, that is some progress to be made. I also think it's, it was a good opportunity tonight for you to share what your office has done. I think that there were concerns that nothing's been done in the last nine, 10 months. And I don't think that that's entirely true. We do have a moratorium in place, and that is an accomplishment. We did do the gun buyback program. But I do want to give voice to those who are saying that still isn't enough and we need more. And I think what I would just, you know, cite staff to is if we look at our neighbors to the southwest Culver City, they in June of 2022 started their process where they similarly had a first-step report about their existing ordinances and potential for improvement. Fast forward to November 9, they passed an ordinance. Now, it did not include the more complicated zoning changes that we're talking about with creating buffer zones. But it did include a lot of regulations that I think would give Burbankers a lot of peace of mind, at least in the meantime while we're working on those things. So it included a requirement of a local permit, site-specific security and safe storage requirements, so requirement for liability insurance, requirement for regular city inspections, which the city attorney knows I have brought up several times. The reason where I'm going with all of this is that, to me, it would seem that some of these are going to be an easier lift because I get with the zoning changes. We got to go through the Planning Commission. It's got to come back to the City Council. That isn't going to happen overnight. But we're going to have to revisit the moratorium in mid-July to extend it. And so for this council member's perspective, what I would personally like to see, and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues, is I think there are substantial portions from the Giffords Law Ordinance that we could codify and could have presented to this council for a first reading by the end of June. Maybe not the zoning changes, but I think there are components of that that would be more easily implemented. And I think that what we're hearing from our community tonight is that the, I think what's concerning them more than anything is that there is no definitive timeline. And so we do need to deliver, even if they're small or gradual or incrementals may be the better word to use. I, I think we do need more incremental victory. may be the better word to use, I think we do need more incremental victories here. And some of these things, like requiring liability insurance, I'm going to go out there on a limb and say, I don't think it's that controversial, and I think it could be easily done. So why wait nine more months until the zoning code changes are in place? So that's just one council member's feedback. But Ms. Vanderborgh, you did a great presentation, and I know you're working extremely hard on behalf of the community, so thank you.
Yeah, and if I could, before the other council members chime in, it would probably be done if I could give Jill all to this effort. Jill's also worked on SB 35 projects in this same time window, SB 35 lawsuit in the same time window, California Voting Rights Act case in the same window. That's not even the top quarter of her list. And for the CDD staff as well, for the police department's staff as well, not the least licensing code staff, who seem to be at the end of everybody's strategy for enforcement in this town. If it were the only thing, we should be done by now. Unfortunately, it's not, and we are working on multiple tracks. And so I offer that for the community, not necessarily an excuse to my bosses, but for the community to understand that all of these important matters that the council's considering, including almost every report on this agenda, goes through my office, at least for a look-see in the city manager's office. So there is a fair amount of distraction when we end up having multiple high-priority items. And so for the community, for those who are specifically interested in this issue, it may not be much of a consolation, but we do have very bright people working and very committed to the same goals as the people who spoke here this evening. We're very lucky. This city council is very lucky to have people committed to their same goals in the same way. It's really kind of a multiple priority issue.
And if I might, Mr. Mayor, just one more thing. Mr. City Attorney, I think you brought up a great point, and I want everyone to know that Ms. Vanderborgh, the whole team, has been working really, really hard. So none of these comments are meant to suggest that you're not working your butts off. I know you are. But I do think that comes back on us, because I know we, as a council, give staff a lot to do, and we sort of throw it all up on the wall. So from this council member's perspective, I think we need to send the message to staff that this is a top priority for us. And that's not on you. That's us saying there is a lot going on, the CVRA, there's going to be other issues that, of course, are going to be at the forefront because of other timelines. But I think it's our responsibility to tell you, of the 10, 15, 20 things we've given you, these are the top one, two, and three in what we want to see. So that's my perspective, but I look forward to hearing what our colleagues have to say.
Councilmember Perez?
Thanks. Just to piggyback off of that, I think I'm trying to put myself in the community's shoes, right? And when you read the report, all of the things that the working group is working on sound amazing, and I just want to know when they're coming down the pipeline, right? So having a sense of a timeline, even if it's, you know, I don't want to hold you to like May 26, 2023, right? But a general sense of when that's coming back, so that folks in the community can even know, okay, when do I place my feedback? When do I, you know, how do I engage more with the work that's being done? So just a general timeline, I think, would really resolve a lot of, kind of, the concerns that are going around, because this is a top priority issue, and we see it highlighted all the time.
So we have a moratorium that prevents the locating of new gun stores today, and the council has the ability to extend that all the way through mid-2024. So to the Vice Mayor's point, that is in place at this council's direction. We do not have the same permanent temporary solution for California Voting Rights Act. And we have 12 meetings scheduled between now and July that are happening at the same time that you'll be going through budget hearings. To say that we actually, we're going to run out of our safe harbor.
So Ms. Vanderborgh doesn't eat or sleep in this time, right?
The working group is actively, we are engaged, regularly meeting, you know.
Is your microphone on?
I don't know.
Press the green, the green light?
Before, actually.
There you go.
Oh, yeah, okay. Did you hear me? Okay.
So they've actually prepared maps that isolate the areas that are outside the buffer zones. And they have alternative maps for the buffer zones. They showed that to me last week. And they have isolated the priority objectives that'll come forward. So they have done a great deal of that work. And I'm only being cagey with council because I have to come to you and tell you which items actually have a likelihood to result in a lawsuit that we have to, you know, those become, at least as your city attorney, mandatory. So I think staff has a goal to deliver something, you know, in the summer. Because Jill's sitting here in front of you, and I know everything else I have her assigned to, I hope that's the case, but at least for her, we have some real big projects that are in the same pipeline.
That's where Mollins?
I don't know if, okay, so I'm getting a little, I was getting ready to say, if we all agree, we can extend the moratorium to make sure that there is an action taken and people feel.
That's not on the agenda for tonight.
Right, right. But I'm saying, I'm also hearing you to say that they're ready to come back in the summer to present something. So if you do need us to extend it, you will be coming back to us, asking us, because you don't have a final decision.
That'll be a notice hearing.
Okay.
Yes. And it'll be before the expiration. We'll come forward with that. Yes.
Okay. So I think I'm a little bit of, I sympathize with what's going on, and I do, I appreciate everything you do. So if we continue the moratorium and then we expect to come back in the summer, hopefully the message will go out there that there will be something happening in the summer that the staff will be coming back with some recommendations to council so we can take action at that time. I don't know if we want to, yeah, we want to give that a try, or the Vice Mayor's suggestion about the permit. And, I mean, would we want to hold on to that until the summer to come back? Because the summer is like four or five months away.
Well, okay. There's actually a staff member that doesn't report to me that might actually have a draft.
Okay, come on down.
Hi, everyone. Xavier Thomas, Associate Planner, Community Development.
You've got a big binder there, sir.
Oh, this is all firearm-related stuff. I've been working with Jill inside this working group. To answer your question, Councilman Perez, directly, I actually will be coming back in June, where I actually will be outlining everything that has been outlined in the working group, specifically for land use regulations, licensing, all those actual policies, regulations, things such as that. I'll be breaking them down in categories so we can actually isolate and see which ones we are proposing, which one we want to go forward with. And that's actually the idea that we want to use. And to Vice Mayor Schultz, yes, it was a lot. There is the idea that we had the idea of potentially isolating it at one point in time, just simply doing the land use regulations first, and then doing the business license afterwards. But because they're all related to one single topic, which is the regulations of firearm retailers, it just made more sense to do them all as one large package that we would then bring before you, and then you would approve as one large zone text amendment. But again.
Can I ask, sorry, not to interrupt. Is that, I understand it's all as a package. Does that cut down on staff time and resources? Is it easier to do it as a package? Or is it only because it's considered under a single umbrella?
I would say because we are meeting routinely and diligently, it is all a part of the same work effort. Again, we hear what it is that the community wants from us, and what it is, the goals that the council has laid out in the past, and again, what they are laying out now. So it makes, again, at least from staff's time, I can't speak to city attorney's office, building division, at least from my vantage point, it makes more sense to package it all as ones, just for efficiency.
Hold on one second.
In accordance with one of our resolutions, I move to extend the meeting past 11:00 PM, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Yeah? All right, thank you.
That resolution's quite the read, too.
Thank you, Xavier. Okay, so it works, it works for what you guys are working on. It works to keep it all together. Vice Mayor, how do you feel about that? Because I know there's some quick stuff, and then there's bigger stuff.
I just have one question. I don't, I apologize to my colleagues. I don't want to monopolize the time. But to your point, sir, so here's my only concern. And again, I'm just trying to give voice to a lot of folks that I'm talking to right now. Let's say we come back in June, and we have our menu of different things that we could do. It's still going to take time to go back, to write the ordinance, to bring it back. I'm just, this is just an illustrative list. It's not exhaustive. But I bet there are some things that we could do by June that are pretty easy. Now, they're not going to, they're not going to give the community complete satisfaction that nothing could happen. But, you know, in Culver City, just as an example, they prohibit unaccompanied minors from being on gun store premises. That could probably be a pretty quick, pretty easy amendment to the municipal code. They also, I mean, they require regular city inspections. While, as much as I'd love to see that, I get that that might be a heavier lift. But another one they do is they prohibit from being on premises persons that are known to be prohibited from possessing a firearm. So I think those could be a matter of a couple sentences amended to our municipal code. And while that's not going to be the complete package, they are at least results that we could deliver, I think, with, it would be a fairly easy lift. So I guess my question to you is, do you have any thoughts on if there were a couple small things that we could pull out of that, bring back in June, and at least just show the community that we're taking it seriously and making some progress?
I can respond to that. I mean, we can certainly look at that, in that, in light of what you've just said. But even the light lifts, you know, the minors, for example, how is that enforced? Right? Like, what is the city doing to ensure that that law is followed, even if we just add it to the BMC in a piecemeal manner? So we're trying to look at all of these things in light of it being a very complicated legal context, a very political context, you know? And we want these laws to mean something, right? Where there's already a lot of regulation in this area, but what can we, as a city, do that actually will have an impact, that we can enforce, that we can afford?
So my last comment, and I promise I'll be quiet for a while. I think of all the, outside of the land use and zoning changes, I personally think that one of the most significant things that we could do locally are local inspections. Because while ATF and CalDOJ do inspect, they cover a large territory, and there are gaps of time between store inspections. And I think that that would provide a sense of comfort and relief to our community, added assurance, if you will, that our stores are fully complying with the law and if there's any deficiencies into your point of regulation, that if there are certain things that are happening that shouldn't be, that they're caught much quickly, much more quickly. So I've said it before, just this council member's perspective, if there was any way to fast-track that alone, again, it's not going to entirely solve the problem. But the reason I'm bringing it up now is that with budget season approaching, I think that now would be the time to talk about, would we want to allocate funding for a retired annuitant from ATF or CalDOJ? Because again, my concern is, if we don't talk about it till June, and then maybe we green-light it in September, yes, we can do a mid-year appropriation. It just becomes more of a process. So that's all I wanted to add.
Yeah, so the language, to that point, the language is easier to draft than figuring out the enforcement program. And so the enforcement program, the first question is who? You know, armed police officers, license and code, community service officers, retired? So which department needs the staffing? I would say it wouldn't be armed police officers. That's not, wouldn't be the community's highest priority for that kind of a trained person. And it would also maybe have the tendency to escalate an issue that's really ministerial. So those are also some of the details we need to figure out. And Patrick's Assistant Director of Building, his staff ends up being the catch-all, and the hook ends up being the business license or whatever permit. And I know I've talked before, and this is a really good policy discussion, that we need some direction on my office in particular, because at the end of the day, we're the hammer that's supposed to either file criminal charges or somehow exact a civil remedy that closes the business and bars the doors. So I want to have that practical discussion, because again, we could just take Culver Cities and change the name and find the place to put it. I mean, some cities do that, but I want to give some meaning to it, to Ms. Vanderborgh's point. And I think the other people that have to respond to the language we write, it's not settled for them either. So I'm not trying to complicate it. I'm just saying that those kind of connected pieces are important. And we would want the enforcement to line up with all of the other enforcement provisions. So I think the minor issue is a good issue. Do we cite the minor, and we have a prosecution of a minor? Or do we cite the business owner? Do we do an admin cite? You know, is it criminal, like with cigarettes, and we do sting operations? Or is it admin sites, which Ms. Vanderborgh just spent a lot of time unifying our administrative citations, where it's $100, $200, $500, and endless $500 after that for repeated citations, which might be very effective. But we would want to talk about that. You know, the practicality of those different enforcement measures.
Coming back in June. Let's see how far we get on some of this stuff. If we have some easy lift, if the working group is able to bring something forward in June, I would say make that a priority. If you've got something close, some of the small mechanisms, let's just put a button on those, tie them off, and get those prepped for June. Obviously, if there's more work that we got to do, that's fine. But, you know, you're hearing it from us, a priority, something tangible, something easy, if you can do it. Otherwise, we're going to come back, obviously, in July and see what we do about the extension. Any other questions of staff? Yes? Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this back for us to look at. Clearly, the community is concerned, and this is an important issue. I do want to recognize, though, looking at the list of things that has been accomplished. I mean, I've lived in this city for 26 years, 25 years, and this is pretty darn speedy. So I am very impressed with how much you have accomplished so far. And I also really like the attention to leveraging the state laws that are available so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel or create something our own that already exists in the state. So I appreciate that, too. Looking forward to the working group, I have a few thoughts I would like to share. And I don't know if you're already working on this, it's on your list or not. But before I do, though, I want to say that it really struck me that one of the commenters said that during the school year, in our country, there's been one school shooting per day of school that there's been in the country. So I just feel like this is an issue that I would, as a parent of three kids, and just as somebody who's in our community, I mean, I do not want our community. Obviously, the things we're working on tonight cannot stop that from happening, but I feel like we need to at least try to do everything we can to keep from that, from happening. And even if one single person, one single child is affected by this, if a gun person gets into a school, shoots a child in the foot, doesn't matter, it's still going to affect the entire community. So it's just, it's a really important thing for me. I also wanted to mention that, just perchance, this week, I was looking at our business code and trying to find some information about certain kinds of business. And I saw that there is a very long section in our business code about regulations around massage parlors and regulations around adult businesses. So I think that we already have content in our code to look at how, in the past, we have taken businesses that have concerns in the community and done what we have tried to try our very best to minimize the community impact. And also, I mean, I would argue that, generally speaking, an adult business, if done, you know, in a way that is not visually to everybody else, is not going to have as much of a negative impact as, say, something that's a weapon. So I feel like if we can do it with adult businesses, we can do it with gun stores. But again, to everyone's point, it's going to take a little bit of time. I do want to ask a couple of things, coming from a mental health perspective. My major concern with irresponsible gun use is suicide and mental health issues around gun use. And so I'm wondering if it's possible to ask, I mean, we don't have to require it, but ask the gun stores that we do have in our city to provide suicide and mental health hotline numbers. They're visible there so that anybody who's in the store can see those hotline numbers. And we can even provide a little signage for them to have. Also, gun, and maybe this is already being done, gun safety and. Also, gun safety, and I mean, this is already being done, gun safety and responsible-
If I could?
Yeah.
Could we find out if we can actually require that?
I, I do know Councilmember Takahashi, that the Burbank Police Department already has mental health and suicide prevention information on their website and social media. Just so you know, I recognize that's not what you're talking about, but I wanted to point that out for them.
Right. Because unfortunately, the majority of school shootings and mall shootings are basically, how do you put it? There, there's like, there are suicides where they bring other people with them. There are death by suicide where they are bringing people with them in that-
It's contagious.
Yeah, in that process. And so if we can even help a few people with having those numbers there to see as they're walking in, considering, you know?
Yeah. If there's a way, I would like to find out if we could mandate that they put the numbers there.
Yeah.
It's worth investigating.
Yeah. And then also, and this might already be available, but having gun safety, storage and responsible gun ownership signage or brochures also plainly visible. So it's just, it's kind of a, it's like a mentality of culture, of shifting culture to make sure we, make sure that we show that this is really important to us.
So that's actually a requirement under the state law, that they have to ensure safe storage, offer the gun lock. And also they ask questions about gun safes.
Great.
So that is part of the current regulation.
Great. So they, they should be doing that already. Excellent. And then I, I agree with my colleagues about the moratorium coming back in June. I really, I think that's an opportunity for, if we decide to do that as a council, to solidify that moratorium, make it, make it permanent potentially. And other, maybe some adjustments as well there. So I'm looking forward to that. I wanted to ask to Chief Albanese, the gun buyback that you, that was mentioned in the report. Is there going to be a plan to continue these now that we, that was so successful in the beginning and to do them as we move in the future?
It was successful and it was a quick turnaround because July, and then it was a whole process for the department. Actually Lieutenant Green, who's in here, did all the heavy lifting behind the scenes. And it was also strategic, the time of the year, because we had learned from our peers that December before Christmas seemed to garner more interest. So we are scheduled for this December, probably going to come back with a flight plan, if you will, for the first week, second week in December. I think we had it December 10th last year.
Great. Excellent.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
It does.
And I apologize. Good evening, or is it good morning?
I know, right? We're almost there. Almost there. Don't leave. I have another question for you.
Okay.
Also, do we in Burbank have red flag procedures in place?
So I'm going to let Derek answer that because we kind of went point, counterpoint on your question as far as that. I just want to make sure we understand your question.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Lieutenant Derek Green with the Community Outreach and Personnel Training Bureau. Yeah. So I missed the context on a couple of your questions earlier and that was my bad. I thought you were focusing on internal procedures we have at the police department. I didn't know you were referring to procedures that the gun stores may have in place. So when you say red flag, are you speaking about a process to investigate tips and whatnot that come in for concerns over social media posts? Things of that nature?
Yeah, or family members who are concerned, or if somebody has, you know, an indication that they're worried that somebody might, yeah.
Right. Absolutely. So we obviously, we accept tips in all shapes, sizes and forms. And we follow up on each and every one that we get. So this could be an email from a concerned parent. It could be a phone call from an educator, a school principal, a teacher. But we do follow up on, on this. And we have several units within our department that work together and cross staff in order to address and investigate these issues. So our mental health evaluation team, our juvenile bureau, our detective bureau, they all work together to ensure that each concern is investigated thoroughly and addressed. So if there's a need to go out to a residence and conduct a search, whether through consent or some other method for firearms, if there's a need to apply and start the process for a gun violence restraining order, all of that is completed in-house here at the police department.
Great. Thank you. And one last question.
Sure.
Do we, in the city of Burbank, do we have a requirement that folks store their guns safely in their homes? So if you're there for some other reason and you see a gun that's not stored safely or something happens and you've come to find out in your investigation that the gun wasn't stored, is there any?
Well, they're, like the city attorney said, when a gun is sold, they're required to sell the gun with some type of locking mechanism. So every gun that's purchased comes with usually a basic lock for the trigger, a trigger lock. But yes, there are several laws that govern storage requirements, especially with children in the home. We have arrested and prosecuted several people in my time with the police department for having a gun not stored safely, not secured with children in the home. It's basically child endangerment. And that's one of the biggest ones that we see. But yes, there are several laws that, that regulate that.
Great. Thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilor Volz.
I have a quick question while there. Have we done any presentations at the school about gun safety and the dangers of using guns and how we store them? Any presentations?
Recently, I'm not aware of any that the police department has conducted. Our school resource officers in the past have conducted basic gun safety and gun awareness lessons in the schools. Mostly the high school age, if I recall. It's been some time, but that's certainly something that we can explore as far as re-implementing that and, and working with the school district to ensure that we get that message across. We're teaching driver's training again in the high schools. We're teaching drug awareness. So this is something that's very prevalent in our society now. And it's probably something that we should be teaching as well.
I would very much, I mean, if my colleagues would agree, I think that should be an overall plan that what we're doing is to also be out in the schools and hopefully work with BUSD to allow the officers in the classroom, even at junior high school age, because they, they're very much aware of what to do.
Absolutely.
So that hopefully that can be incorporated in the overall plan. Or if you can get it started sooner than later, depending on your time and how soon you can get it.
You know, reality is I have very young children that are still in elementary school. And with my profession, I had to have a discussion with them at probably an age I didn't feel comfortable having that discussion at. But I had to, you know, tell them, you know, don't ever touch one of these. And I obviously, I don't have a lot of guns, but the ones I do have are secured and, and not accessible. But you're right. I think high school's too late for that conversation. I think junior or middle school, I should say, is also probably too late at this point, unfortunately.
If it's, if it's possible, Mr. City Manager, can we put this conversation on our agenda for the next time we do our working group with the, the school board?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That definitely would be a topic of discussion because we, we do need to get into the classrooms. And I know the schools will end in May, sometime in May. So if we can even get to them sooner than later, that will be great. And that's a great accomplishment to get to those kids, to educate them. Thank you.
Okay.
I have one more question that came up. And this is for the city attorney's office. Does the city of Burbank require liability insurance for gun stores?
Not, not currently. It's one of the items we're exploring in the, in the package.
Okay, great. Thank you. And, and just last comment. I just want to thank you for everything you're doing. It's not an easy topic, especially given the relevance. So thank you for, for prioritizing it on top of everything else that you're doing. And thank you for the report. And I, I really just want to highlight one thing that you said. I know there's a lot of anxiety around this. I know there's a lot of community concern. But you said something that I think is really important. We don't just want to do it, we want to do it right. We want our laws to mean something. So I'm really looking forward to, you know, even if it takes some time, having something that makes sense, that's enforceable and that we, we can be really proud of at the end of the day. So thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just to piggyback off of that, I don't like to critique without offering a suggestion. So this would be my suggestion to staff. I really want to find some victories we can deliver for the community. And thinking to the city attorney's point, I think there's one thing that we could do that's a very easy lift. If you look, for example, and I'll say it so you can refer to it on your own, but Section 11.19.045, this is the Culver City Municipal Code, they have a simple requirement. If you want a license to operate in the city of Culver City, you have to carry liability insurance. And the enforcement power comes with the fact that the chief of police in their city does not issue, or does not approve the permit unless you have it. And if it comes to their attention that you don't have it, then it can be revoked. I think that something like that could probably be fairly easily implemented. And it's going to probably fit in, I'm looking at attachment two to our July 26th report. So Section 5-3-801 of our code doesn't have a liability insurance requirement. So I, you know, we'd probably fit it in there anyway. And my understanding is that it's already, the license is issued, the permit is issued by community development with concurrence from the police chief. I think that that's a relatively low labor, low labor cost to our, to our city employees and something that we could do. And quite frankly, if you're going to operate a gun store, you should have liability insurance. I don't think that that's too much to ask. And I don't think that, I don't even think that many of them would disagree. And that's an easy win for the community. I'll put that on, yeah, that should be on the list of the quick, quick and easy. Okay. All right. Got some good direction. Everybody else caught up?
Received.
Okay. Note and file. Thank you all. Thank you for doing the work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. To, where are we? Number seven. Where are we at? Okay. Final report, final report this evening. Adoption of a resolution opposing the California Business Roundtable State Ballot Measure. Mrs. Viviana Garzone, Administration of Analysts and City Manager's Office, please present the report.
Good evening Vice, good evening Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz and members of the City Council. Viviana Garzone, Administration of Analysts with the City Manager's Office. I'm going to try to be brief because it's 11:30 and I know everyone's tired. So on January 4th, the California Business Roundtable, which they're a nonpartisan organization composed of chief executive officers of leading businesses in the state, filed the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act or Initiative 21-0042A1. And then this year on February 1st, this initiative qualified for the November 2024 general election ballot. CalCities, which the city of Burbank is a member of, along with a broad coalition of local governments, labor and public safety leaders, infrastructure advocates and businesses strongly opposes this initiative. Local government revenue raising authority is currently already restricted by states, including the voter-approved Prop 13, Prop 218 and Prop 26. If passed, this initiative would amend the California Constitution with provision that limit the voter's authority and input and also adopt new and stricter rules for raising taxes. For example, two-thirds voter approval for all new special tax increases and a retroactive voting of all state and local taxes adopted after January 1st, 2022, if they do not align with the provisions of the initiative. And it would also make it more difficult to impose fines. It would make it more difficult for the city to impose fines and penalties for violation of state and local laws. And then under the, this initiative, fees such as commercial charges, commercial franchise fees, nuisance abatement charges, parking fees, facility use charges and more would be subject to new standards and limitations. And CalCities did a financial study and they estimate that a total of $2 billion per year, that's per year, of a local government fee and charge revenues would be at stake if this initiative were passed. Under this initiative, voter-approved measures approved after January 1st, 2022 will cease a year after the effective date of this initiative, reducing local public services funded by these measures unless the tax is resubmitted for voter approval. And as you know, many cities use these measures to fund public safety, crime prevention program, homeless prevention services, parks and recreation services, library programs, et cetera. So this initiative is not good for local governments. It definitely restricts the ability of local voters, local governments and state elected officials to fund critical community services and programs. And so far, 136 cities throughout the state have expressed opposition already. A few of our neighboring cities, including city of Beverly Hills, West Hollywood, Long Beach, Azusa and Buena Park have expressed our opposition. And CalCities, as you know, they're very, very active. They've placed a call for action and other cities will be joining the coalition opposing this initiative in the next coming months. So the City Council adopts a legislative platform each year to serve as a framework for advocacy efforts. And adopting the attached resolution opposing this initiative is in line with the 2023 ledge platform that you approved a couple of months ago, which outlines the opposition to laws that remove local control and decision-making authority. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garzone. Any public comment? Anyone? Anyone? Okay. All right. This is, what are we doing? We're moving to motion. Adopt a resolution. Okay, sorry. It's pretty late. This is some real nonsense. I mean, they could have gone to the ballot to try to lower taxes, but no, they didn't do that. They just want to end all new taxes. So it's such a, anyway, I'm very upset. I would like to move forward with this. We can, can we skip a second step on this or no? We, we got to go through the whole thing? So we're just adopting, Mr. Mayor?
You're just adopting, you can just approve to adopt a resolution.
Great. Great. I'll take a motion. Take a motion. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution of the Burbank City Council opposing the California Business Roundtable Measure.
I'll second.
There you go. Vice Mayor Schultz, and second by Perez.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Takahashi?
Boy, howdy, yes.
Vice Mayor Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Anthony?
Yabba dabba doo.
Thank you.
Okay. That's a yes. Okay. Yes, that's right. All right. So, okay. Thank you. Thank you. This is the time for council members to report on their council committee assignments. Who wants to go first? Committee assignments, real quick. Where's my list? I'd like to go last, but I can go because I had it all queued up, Mr. Mayor, if that helps. So committee assignments, Wednesday, March 15th, Police Commission. I'll actually let Councilmember Mullins speak to that. I don't know that there was anything too much to report. Thursday, March 16th, I attended the CalCities Environmental Quality Policy Committee. We gave guidance on several environmental measures that are pending. We usually do an end of year wrap report, so I can forward that to the council to review what the CalCities position ultimately ended up being. Monday, March 20th, I'll allow you to report it out, Mr. Mayor, but I just want to mention that we had our first quarterly meeting with the school board leadership. And then that evening, I also attended the Transportation Commission, the no reportable action out of there. And lastly, this morning, I had an American Public Power Association policymakers council call, updates on federal legislation, and we're preparing for the fly-in in July where we'll be back in DC to continue our lobbying efforts. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. Council, committee assignments? Councilmember Mullins?
Sure. Go Police Commission. They talked, it was traffic. It was very interesting discussion about jaywalking and the traffic impact on the community. Also, looking at our diverse workplace and how do we be more proactive and better in recruiting diverse police force? Transportation Commission, they talked about the Civic Center project. Ms. Goldman came in and made a presentation. So it was nice and short. And the Senior Citizen Board, they talked about Media City District. It was a presentation by the Planning Department.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Councilmember Perez.
All right. So along with Councilmember Takahashi, I attended the Sustainable Burbank Commission meeting on Monday. And then on Thursday, we also attended the Valley Economic Alliance Board of Directors meeting. I can talk about the commission a little bit. They, they talked about, you know, in response to the Plastics Ordinance that came before us, there was some great feedback there. And they also talked about the exciting news that they will be now having their meetings here in our seats. So that'll be great for them.
Yeah. And they're also going to record it, having audio recording, not, not video recording, but audio recording so that the entire meeting will be on record, which helps them go back and look at the presentations and discussions about these, these issues. Another thing they discussed too, which I thought was interesting is, is how they can best be an advisory commission for us and how they can give their input on, because they talked about the, the input, like kind of strategy that went into plastics. And so looking at more effective ways that they can- ways that they can provide us as a council input as an advisory commission on these issues. And so they're going to discuss that moving forward about better, from their position, a better way to relay that information to us. So that was kind of exciting.
Is that it? Oh, yeah, I want to just go back over the March 20th meeting. So the City Council approved a subcommittee with the school board, and the school board approved their end. And on March 20th, we had our first official meeting. It went really great. We talked about some really big issues, including the, what's going on right now with the school district and their young folks with a lot of sexual assault issues. And they're tackling that head-on. So they're taking the charge on that. Now is the time for attendance on conferences, regional meetings, community events. I'm already talking, so I'll go quick. We were all at the Wonder Woman statue unveiling. It was real fun. It was really great. It was really great. The California Nevada Hawaii Kiwanis District Convention was held right here in Burbank at the Marriott. And I went down there to talk to those folks. That was at 7:30 in the morning on a Saturday. Those Kiwanis, man, they get it done. That was a lovely, a lovely presentation. I attended after that, there was a fundraiser for the people of Artsoc. It was a tennis event here at the Burbank Tennis Center. The number 14 player in the world showed up. He's Armenian. And he did this thing where he played tennis against people who had donated money to play tennis against him. And so, I mean, I mean, he was mopping the floor with them. But hey, they paid to get their butts whipped. So it was great. It was a great event. It was really great. A bunch of people showed up. The, there was a bunch of ribbon cuttings, the, oh, here's the one. On last, this recent Saturday, the Armenian Business Corner had a grand opening. This is cool. So there's a spot right here on Tahunga. This guy opened it up, and his name is Mikhail. And basically, it's a sort of a brokerage space for businesses in Armenia that want to sell and do business with folks in the US. And he has these sort of like cubby spaces where you can come and like show your wares or talk to people. And he does all of the sort of intermediary stuff of like, well, here's how you pay taxes, and here's the permits and fees, and here's the licensing. And so he like gets this connection on how to get people, you know, halfway across the world, working together. It's a wonderful, wonderful program. Armenian Business Corner. All right, that was me. Who's next?
I attended a Quake kit handout at Jocelyn Center. I want to give a shout out to Steve Oakley. He's the co-executive director of Quake, Safer for Seniors. He actually purchased 100 backpacks, so it was filled with emergency Quake kits. So we passed them out to 100 seniors.
Are you saying quake, like earthquake?
Earthquake. Yeah, I know, quake kit, that sounds really funny. But yes, for earthquakes. So the seniors attended a presentation by him, and each one of them got a backpack on the way out. It's very, very helpful for them. They really appreciated it. Had also met with Rabbi Shamiel Cornfield, just as an introduction to the temple and get to know them better. Attended the Muse Expo Lifetime Achievement Luncheon on Monday with the Vice Mayor. And I want to give a shout out to our staff from Community Development. And Simone McFarlane and her staff did a great job, obviously, organizing the event. We also attended the dinner that they've had on Wednesday. And I have to say that every single person we talked to at the event said, oh, my God, we did not know about the Castaway. We're definitely coming back. We love this area. We love the restaurant. So that brings more business to our city. And also attended the Magnolia Park Merchants Association with Councilmember Perez. Heard from the merchants on Magnolia. So we're moving forward with a feasibility study to look at the bid. And so this is exciting. Hopefully, they move through with it and it becomes successful. Met with Lori Bligh from Family Services and other quick meetings that I had, SCAD, and then also attended the temporary BTAC Gala, attending the Magic of Kiwanis Gala. So this is, this is the season, lots of gala events that we attended. That was Be it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Next.
Yeah, busy couple weeks. Let's see. Some things were already mentioned. I also attended, on March 18th, I went to the Burbank Coordinating Council Annual Pancake Breakfast with, Vice Mayor was there, and who else was there? Somebody else was there? Was Nikki right?
Abby.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I know. You were there. Yeah, I thought you were there. Okay. Yeah, the three of us went and had, yeah, that was, actually, that was some of the best pancakes I've had at pancake breakfast. There's some sort of magic they put in them. I don't know what it was. And I'm not a big pancake fan, so, but I liked it. And then on the 21st, I did a training with National League of Cities, their Real Leadership Session. Did you guys, have you guys done that yet?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was really impressed by it. And I'm happy to hear that this, the, you know, we are getting all trained in it. A lot of staff is getting trained in it. Basically, it's racial equity and, what's it all stand for? Racial equity?
Justice.
And leadership, maybe, yeah. And the way that they, the way that they presented it was just so, I don't know, it was just really well-presented. And I'm glad that that's going through the city right now, the training. You haven't done it yet?
Next week.
Next week, good, okay. And then that same night, I went to the Muse Expo International Media Person of the Year Dinner. And Ms. Councilmember Mullins was kind of underplaying about how like dramatic that was, because she and I were given the task to introduce the Mamie Coleman, Mamie Coleman is who won the award. And so we got called up earlier than we thought we were. So Ms. Mullins and I were like going through all of our stuff, trying to find our script and run up there. And so she was able to get kind of her wits about her and went, okay, you know, clearly, because they actually introduced Vice Mayor. They asked, introduced Nick Schultz. So we run up there and she says, well, clearly we're not Nick Schultz. And then she said, and Tamela's clearly not Nick Schultz. And then literally, right when she said that, Vice Mayor leaps up the stairs and goes, I am. It was really, it was really fun. It couldn't have been planned better.
That's funny.
So that was, I think that was probably the star performance of our Vice Mayor so far this year. You knocked them, I mean, and you were, you had your notes in front of you, but you winged it mostly. And everyone was so impressed with you. So it was pretty funny. I wish we had videotaped it. It was really awesome. And then the BTAC Gala, that was super fun. I'm super bummed I missed the Kiwanis Gala. I had some family things I had to attend to, and I couldn't make it. It looked so, so much fun. I was really looking forward to that. And one of the ribbon cuttings we did, which I want to point out, was Saturday morning, there were a few of us there. The Tierra del Sol Thrift Shop Grand Opening. I love ribbon cuttings in general, but that one's just, it's like triple cool, because it's a thrift shop, which is awesome. It's on Burbank, near Ugly Mug, which is awesome. And the benefits all go to, what's the organization called?
Oh, my gosh.
It's something Tierra del Sol. It's like...
They have a facility in Santa Clarita.
Uh huh.
And it, it helps folks with developmental disabilities.
Right.
And it's like a, it's like a, you know, a place to go for independent living services and teaching and training. And it's just a great community.
Yeah. So it's just a, it's just a triple awesome place. I encourage everyone to go down there. I bought the scarf, actually.
So these reports are getting really long.
Sorry, I'm so excited. Aren't you excited about my scarf?
I am, but I'm worried for our length of our reports.
All right.
All right. That's it. Thank you.
Who hasn't gone?
All right, I'll be quick.
All right.
So along with the things that my colleagues also mentioned, I did a tour of the Burbank Housing Corporation and the very fun BWP Water Treatment Center tour. That's really cool, if you haven't done it yet. And I got a great meeting with Parks and Rec as well to learn more about what's going on there. I also went to the Tierra del Sol opening, and of course, the galas, 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 and BTAC Kiwanis. And I went to the Human Rights Campaign Gala with, and I got to, that one was really cool. I got to walk the red carpet and talk about the work we're doing for our LGBTQ youth in Burbank, along with Rob Rodriguez from the Social Impact Center. So we had a great time, and we're now on Getty Images walking the red carpet together.
Nice.
I'll be even shorter. I did most of the things that they did, not everything. Thank you both for stepping up. I got to tell you, I was coming from North Hollywood, and I thought I was early. And it was just due to Simone McFarlane, who was telling me to round third plate, basically, that I just happened to get on stage with perfect timing. So thank you both for being ready to pinch-hit there. The only other thing I'd mention is today I had a great meeting with our Water and Power employees, just to talk about their thoughts on recruitment and retention issues, which is, of course, a city council priority. That's all I have.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Now's the time for an introduction of additional agenda items. Does anybody have, yes, I see one on the end here?
I would like to introduce an agenda item to have a first-step report on making Cesar Chavez Day a citywide holiday.
Oh, all right.
I don't know if this is actually a new item. Mr. Mayor, it's a question for the city manager. The Neighborhood Protection Plan for Rancho Providencia, when are we due to get some kind of a progress report back on that?
I was trying to find that out earlier. I don't have an answer for you, but I'll get, I'll send you guys all an email.
Is it fair to say it is coming back at some point?
Yes. It is definitely on the list. I want to say summer, but don't commit me to it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, great. We now adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, April 4th, 2023, for a joint meeting in the council chamber, 275 East Olive Avenue, second floor. You can always at home leave an e-comment on the city webpage, burbankca.gov/ecomments, or email us directly, citycouncil@burbankca.gov. Thank you and good night.